All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I'd like to call this meeting to order for June 24th, 2025, meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, with a clerk please call roll call.
Certainly Chair Supervisor De Serafa. President Cummings.
Here.
Martinez.
President Koenig.
Here.
And Hernandez.
Here. Next, we'd like to see if any of the board members would like to recognize the moment of silence Supervisor Cummings?
Yeah, I want to, I'd like to dedicate today's moment of silence to Mike Rockin, who passed away on June 18th, 2025. For more than 50 years, Mike was a catalyst for progressive change in Santa Cruz. Joining UCS's Community Studies faculty in 1969, teaching Marxist theory and experiential learning that bridged the university and our community. He served an unparalleled five terms as mayor of the city of Santa Cruz, nearly 25 years on the Santa Cruz City Council. As a Community Studies professor, Mike consistently opened the door for civic engagement. He invited students into local government work, demonstrating his belief in real world learning and his support for expanding civic awareness among new generations. I was always glad to answer his calls to speak to his students over the years. Mike was a relentless advocate for social services, public transportation, affordable housing, labor rights, civil liberties, and public education. He championed Garfield Park Library, served as a volunteer at Pride for 50 years, escorted young people to play in parenthood, and in his early years repeatedly risked arrest in the name of justice. Mike's life exemplified public service, rooted in compassion, action, and partnership. And his efforts shaped Santa Cruz's identity as a center of community-driven activism, and his spirit will live on in the halls of local government and in our community, always insisting, "I'll be brief." Mike Rockin was 79 years old.
Supervisor De Serafa.
Thank you. In addition to the wonderful Mike Rockin, I'd like to acknowledge that we lost an Aptos resident, a young man named Trenton Black, victim of violence recently in the Moss Landing Harbor, and our hearts go out to his family. So, thank you.
Thank you for today's dedications. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the county CEO, Palacios, if there's any late additions or deletions to the regular or consent agenda today?
Yes, Chair Hernandez and members of the board, we do have one correction. This is on the consent agenda. Item number 16, there's additional materials. There's a revised attachment packet, page 357, which is replaced, page 4 of 61025, 2025 Last Day Budget Meeting Minutes, replaced to correct I's from item number 10. That concludes the corrections.
Thank you. Would any board members like to remove any items from consent?
Chair, I'd like to pull items 27 and item 39.
27, 39. Supervisor Martinez?
Chair, I'd like to pull items 45 and 48. They're the Metro nominations and ask that they be joined and heard as item 6.1 immediately after the consent.
Say the numbers again, please?
45 and 48, combined as 6.1.
Forty-six.
Forty.
Forty-six and forty-nine.
Thank you. We have an updated agenda, 46 and 49. No? We have, I have the correct one. Supervisor Koenig.
Okay, so it's back to 48 and 49. Correct? Forty-five. And that'll be 6.1?
Yes, please.
Okay, and Supervisor Cummings, 27 and 39? Will now be 6.2 and 6.3, correct? Okay. Two. And seven, eight, nine. Okay, we'll now move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak regarding items not on the agenda, items on consent agenda, or if you'd like to speak to us regarding items on the regular agenda, please note that you'll be able to, you won't be able to speak a second time, and if you could please speak on the item as opposed to speaking on the general public comment. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning. It's late June in 2025. You know, I kind of wonder why people pledge allegiance to the corporate maritime pirate flag. It's a brand-new flag from my buddy who works at the post office. I wouldn't want to disrupt the meeting by suggesting that it be placed where it should be, but outside this building and outside other buildings, there are the flags for the United States and for the people of California. You know what to say, you know, at the end of May, the southern part of the Silk Road was opened up. That's a rail line from Turkey that goes through Iran and goes into China. You know, the bankers are gonna, or have the potential of losing trillions of dollars in oil because of the Silk Road. You know, we're heading towards a normal cooling practice right now. So I'm just gonna read this. Iran once had democracy, the West destroyed it. Every time Western leaders talk about freedom and democracy in Iran, they don't know history, or they hope you don't. Iran had democracy until the CIA and MI6 overthrew it. Why? Because Iran dared to nationalize its own oil. That was 1953. The elected Prime Minister Mohammed Mosaddegh was toppled by Operation Ajax. Why? British Petroleum, yes, BP, didn't want to lose control. So let's stop pretending the West ever cared about the Iranian people. It's always been about oil and imperial control, and those parroting freedom today without context are sadly useful idiots of empire. And it's suggested read The Devil's Chessboard by David Talbot tells the full story of the Dulles Brothers, how they weaponized the CIA. It's probably enough for now. Why are people pledging allegiance to the corporate maritime pirate flag? I gotta ask.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Heath, Mr. Palacios, and Clerk of the Board. I am Juan Perez Alvarez, your Parks Open Space and Cultural Services Administrative Services Manager. I'm here with my colleagues and Gray County Park Friend Partners. We are excited to celebrate something pretty special. July is Parks and Recreation Month, or Parks Make Life Better. It's a time to recognize the spaces, programs, and people who help make our community not just livable, but lovable. As we all know, parks are more than just grass and playgrounds. They're where toddlers take their first steps, where children make memories and friendships on summer afternoons, and where adults go to breathe deeply, stretch their legs, and take a break from the chaos of everyday life.
Good morning, Kathy DeWilde, Arts Program Coordinator for the Parks Department. Research tells us what many of us already feel in our bones. Being in nature makes us healthier mentally and physically, whether it's walking a trail, playing a pickup game, joining an aquatic aerobics class, or just sitting under a shady tree. Parks give us space to reconnect with ourselves and each other. But Parks and Recreation is more than just places. It's the people behind the scenes that make it all happen. It's the staff who show up early to prep for summer camp, who teach kids to swim, who fix the broken bench without someone asking, and who make sure our programs stay accessible, inclusive, and fun. They do it because they care, and it shows.
Good morning. I'm Garrett Smart. I'm a Recreation Supervisor. Parks also support our environment, clean air, green spaces, pollinators, wildlife, you name it, and they also help build stronger neighborhoods by increasing property values, supporting local economies, and giving people a reason to love where they live. And when things get tough, when disasters strike, or we face challenges as a community, our parks are there. They become places of refuge, places to gather, and even places to heal, and that's not something to take for granted.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez and Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your service. Mariah Roberts, Executive Director of the nonprofit Partner to Our County Parks Department, County Park Friends. So today, we want to thank our incredible Park and Rec staff. We want to thank all the dedicated volunteers, and we want to thank you, this board, for your continued support. Because of you, our parks truly are making life better for everyone. Let's celebrate. July is Parks and Rec Month with pride, with gratitude, and of course, with plenty of time outdoors. We look forward to seeing you at one of your county parks, at the swim center, or at your favorite program or beach this summer. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Whitney Barnes. I'm a supervisor with Santa Cruz County Adult Protective Services. On behalf of the entire Adult Protective Services team with the County of Santa Cruz Human Services Department, I would like to thank the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors for proclaiming June Elder Abuse Awareness Month. The APS team investigates allegations of abuse, neglect, self-neglect, and exploitation of older and dependent adults throughout the county of Santa Cruz. We strive to reduce risk and improve safety among all older and dependent adults in our community. The issue of elder abuse is significant, not just in scale, but impact. According to the National Council on Aging, about 10% of Americans over the age of 60 have experienced some form of abuse. Additional research suggests that self-neglect adversely affects close to 1 in 5 older adults in America. Here in Santa Cruz County, our intake team regularly manages over 300 calls to our intake line every month. Research also tells us that for every allegation of abuse or neglect that's reported, there are 24 more experiences of abuse or neglect that are not reported. That statistic is why it's so important that entities like the County of Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors recognize and proclaim June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month to increase awareness, reduce stigma, and help our community be safer. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for the people from the Parks and Rec that came today. I love the parks, so thanks for coming and speaking out. Thank, thank you for all that you do for the parks. Good morning. My name is Carol Bjorn. I'm here to request that the board enact a moratorium on the proposed best lithium sites here in the county. Our parks would be ruined with the toxic fumes after a fire occurs from that, so that's one thing to think about. Electric Power Research Institute, EPRI, everybody go to that website. It's the research arm of the power industry, and it actually keeps a database of the best failures. Their own data shows 91 failures since the first best facilities were installed 13 years ago. However, this count is likely underestimated because it only collects data from what has been reported in the media. Further, according to this EPRI data, the average time of failure from 2020 to 2023 was 1.8 years. So why would the county even consider moving forward with these best facilities when the best facilities are gonna self-destruct within two years? Does that make any sense to create a solution that's gonna self-destruct? Hopefully, you all go and look at this database. Just in California alone, it's a worldwide database, but hopefully you've heard about all these fires that occurred in California, Moss Landing. Also, Escondido was on September 5th, 2024, and all of these resulted in evacuations from toxic fumes. Also, Santa Ana Energy Storage Facility, July 17th, 2024. Also, in Otay Mesa, May 15th, 2024, and so on. The list literally goes on. So we need to stop this unreasonable risk today. I don't know why we would implement a solution that's only gonna last for about two years. We need sustainable solutions that last 50 years, and we need safe solutions. Thank you.
My name is Judy Rosella Myers. I've been a member of this community since 1974. Moved to Santa Cruz on purpose because it's such a wonderful environment, including all the wonderful parks. And I'm so glad that you're here, actually, especially with the stuff that's going on in the one big beautiful bill that is supposed to take over public lands, which hopefully we don't allow. But it's so important, as Carol said, to protect this environment as much as we possibly can. And I want to really acknowledge Manu for, you know, trying, after the Moss Landing, trying to actually put the moratorium on this decision until they figure out what the heck went wrong. And so if we could possibly wait until they come up with their analysis, but there's so much out there already that says these are not safe. And so I really plead with you all to create ordinance or approve an ordinance that has safety as the major priority, not just for the land, but also for the people who live here. And please, please, take all these information pieces that we all are bringing into consideration for the environment and the long-term productivity and healthiness of this environment. It has been such a great community. Let's not spoil it. And there's a meeting tomorrow night. It's a workshop here in this particular room at 5 o'clock to 8 o'clock. That is, a lot of that information will be revealed publicly about what is good and what is bad, about proceeding in the ways that we've already tried to move towards. So please come and listen and hear what they have to say. Thank you so much. And thank you all for having an open mind and trying to create a safer community.
Chair Hernandez, members of the board, Tammy Weigel, Information Services Director. Today, I'm here to honor Stacy Lake on the occasion of her retirement. We're gonna get a little bit cled because I've been working with Stacy for 26 years. Stacy Lake faithfully served the County of Santa Cruz Information Services Department for over four decades, exactly 45 years, beginning her career as a data processing control technician. In her dedication and technical excellence, Stacy advanced to become a senior mainframe operator, offering invaluable guidance and support to her colleagues in ISC operations. And when the county retired its mainframe systems, Stacy embraced the challenges of new technologies. She returned to Cabrillo College to further her education in service systems and ultimately became the county's first database administrator. She continued her professional growth. She served as distinction as the system administrator supervisor for seven years and culminating her career as the first manager three of the Technical Services Division, leading teams through transformable changes in virtualization, cloud services, and information security. Throughout her career, Stacy has been a trusted mentor, a steady leader, and a model of dedication, adaptability, setting the standard for professionalism and public service within the Information Services Department. And her institutional knowledge, her collaborative spirit, and unwavering commitment to the county's mission has left a lasting impact on our department and the department that we serve. So therefore, I'd like to take this time to congratulate Stacy on her 45 years of public service and congratulate her on her retirement.
Thank you. I don't have much to say because I'm gonna cry, but I've really loved working with the county, at the county, for the county, and everybody I work with forever. I love this place, and thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Morning, Board. Kevin Huer with Community Foundation, Santa Cruz County. Here today with some good news and some gratitude. In January, you reaffirmed a commitment to protect, serve, and support LGBTQ+ individuals and directed the CIO to work with county departments and community partners. The goal you set was to identify opportunities to ensure LGBTQ+ individuals got access to the services they need to lead healthy, happy lives free of the fear of retaliation and discrimination. Health service agencies Monica Morales and Lun Wong worked with us to take $10,000 in county funding, braided with grants from an endowment for LGBT causes at the Community Foundation to make a landmark investment for LGBT youth in this county. Together, we supported the work of Gay Straight Alliance, Pride, and Rainbow Clubs across 24 schools in every district of the county. At Aptos High, students can now host more Pride Club meetings and school-wide events to strengthen the visibility of queer students and their allies on campus. Santa Cruz High has the money to bus everyone to the Tri-County LGBT Student Summit. Rolling Hills Middle is able to send a big message during next year's Day of No Silence and National Coming Out Day. Scotts Valley High is able to collaborate for workshops with the Diversity Center and took part in the 50th Santa Cruz Pride. And Shoreline Middle is able to support students' fears and concerns before extended school breaks with help from mental health professionals. Those are just a few of the highlights, but Branson 40 Middle School's principal, Debbie Puente, wrote in to say, "This grant from the County of Santa Cruz and the Community Foundation will directly support our efforts to create safe, inclusive space where all students feel seen, valued, and empowered. The Muska Queer Club continues to be a source of strength and pride at our school, and your support means the world to our students and staff," end quote. So the credit for these great accomplishments and spaces being created belongs to these students, their advisors, their principals, and the school communities, but also to organizations like the Queer Youth Task Force, Safe Schools Projects, and the Diversity Center. Thank you very much for your support.
Hi, my name is Stuart Rosenstein, and I am the Director of the Queer Youth Task Force. Our two largest programs include the Safe Schools Project, Rainbow Conference, and the Annual Queer Youth Leadership Awards. I'm here because I am terrified of the executive orders and fund cuts that will directly impact our queer and trans youth and their access to gender-affirming care and to mental health services. This will impact the entire community. I also want to say thank you for standing up, all of you I've worked with. Thank you for standing up, for being visible for our queer and trans youth in multiple ways, attending the Queer Youth Leadership Awards, creating proclamations for all of the nominees and awardees. This is very meaningful to the student leaders and their families. And thank you for the 200,000 you allocated to immigrant community and to the queer and trans youth community. We received a portion of those funds. I'm here to ask for your help. We are asking for increased funding to help defray the attacks from our federal government towards queer and trans youth, especially our trans and non-binary students. We are extremely fearful and terrified of these funds being cut to gender-affirming care and mental health, and it's happening in real time and in the coming months and year ahead. So this is happening now. Our Queer Trans Youth Council is planning a youth-led panel this fall, spearheaded by two recent QILA awardees to help inform healthcare workers, community leaders, and school officials of the direct impact of the executive orders and the funding cuts. We invite you to support and attend this youth panel to hear firsthand about the real impacts this is having on our queer and trans youth. We also ask you to help support our annual Rainbow Conference of September 27th at Watsonville High School. This spring and summer, y'all celebrated with us together, and we're asking for your help to continue this. We're very worried about the queer and trans youth this fall. Thank you so much.
I'm a little short. Good morning, y'all. One thing is, congrats to Miss Stacy. I was so heartwarming that. But like Stuart just mentioned, I'd like to start off thanking y'all for the comprehensive support you've shown my community, both as child of immigrants, a queer person, person of color. But of course, that kind of also draws me to point out a necessity for this furthered support in the near future because due to your unwavering kindness towards my community, you know, this presidential administration has chosen to punish you, which is horrible. And we're all aware that my community, both Latin and queer, have struggled extensively with our mental health. But without furthered investment into our youths, it can get remarkably worse. I recently went through a depressive episode. I'm 17 years old. I go to Watsonville High. And it took the admins at my school five months to begin asking questions about what was going on with me. And I had been missing school every single day. It was horrible. And that level of inattentiveness is very common, according to all of my acquaintances and friends all over the Santa Cruz County regarding queer kids and their mental health issues, or just any child struggling with some sort of depressive episode. And I know this not simply because we converse about it, but because we have to go to one another for this support. Now, the infrastructure is in place because of all of your guys' support over the many years that you've, sorry, been helping us. But if someone is struggling mentally, they don't necessarily have the accessibility to go to these places. And mental illness is a chronic disease. If left untreated, the results can be disastrous. You know, in light of recent student suicides, I'd like to hopefully remind you all that if we are not to continue funding these services, the situation can get so much worse, and it's not gonna stop at a few people. It could have been me. It could be some of my friends. So please, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez and fellow board members. Jeff Caffney, your Director for Parks Open Space and Cultural Services. As you heard earlier, July is an exciting month for us. It's also a little bittersweet. I'm having Margaret Ingram sitting next to me, standing next to me. I'm gonna read a few things about her career and her retirement that's happening, unfortunately, and fortunately for her. She's made a lasting difference in our department and community. She's retiring after 27 years of service with the county. She started with us back in 1998 at the Simpkins Swim Center, just as it was being built. From the beginning, she brought energy, dedication, and strong commitment to public service. She helped shape our aquatics program and trained countless lifeguards and instructors, setting the tone for safety and excellence that continues today. Over the years, Margaret grew into a leadership role as program coordinator, where she took the position far beyond its original scope. She's been a driving force behind volunteer programs, bringing AmeriCorps teams, securing resources that have directly benefited our Parks and Community efforts, literally millions of dollars in labor that she's gotten for all the volunteer work that's been done. Her ability to create meaningful, rewarding opportunities has brought in thousands of volunteer hours each year. But what stands out the most in Mark is Margaret's heart. She's mentored and guided so many young people, many of whom have gone on to build careers in public service, thanks to the start that she gave them. We're grateful for everything Margaret has contributed, and while we'll miss her, we're excited for her to enjoy this well-earned next chapter. Thank you, Margaret, for all you've done for our team, for our parks, and for this community.
Thank you very much. In all those years, I never had to come up here and talk into the microphones. Grateful for that. It's been an amazing career. The Parks Department has been a family and and a really rewarding career. Most of all, being in the Parks Department, we really serve the community and our community. It's been incredibly rewarding. I just can't say enough. It will be hard to leave, but also we live in this rich, vibrant community, and I will be out there enjoying it and volunteering myself. So thank you all. It's been, it's been a blessing and a godsend.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I am Cheryl Frenzel. I am the Executive Director of the Diversity Center, and I have stood here before you to thank you for the safety net funding that you gave. And I also missed that time to give a special shout-out to Monica Martinez, how much it means to us that you're part of this board and what a role model you are for so many people. There's going to be a presentation that will go further into the use of those funds, but I chose to take this moment to make an exciting announcement that even Lun and her team do not know. And it's going to require leveraged funding, which part of what we receive from the county will do this. It was alluded to before, and it is definitely in our report. There was a tragic loss of life of a trans student. And we were honored to be a place that the parents chose to do a celebration of life. But it also hit us very hard, and we understood the impact of what's happening right now. And so it was after that that I was inspired, rather last minute, to apply for Born This Way is a foundation through Lady Gaga. And they wanted to find a couple, a handful of model programs to be able to launch out wider. So they put a call out to California. And guess what? Santa Cruz County has been chosen to do some of this model programming. What are we doing? Please? Well, what we are doing is, they have done deep research. They've partnered with a lot of national organizations to create a curriculum that will help teach youth will help teach youth and adults, but mostly youth, about how to be noticeable and watchful for signs of distress in their friends and their community, and what to do with that information. So, how do you prevent suicide? And it's looking like a very promising curriculum. So, I just wanted to come and let you know about that. Thank you so much for helping to fund that.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Ald. I'm a Commissioner on the IHSS Public Authority Commission, and I was asked by the Senior Counsel to come and also thank you for the Elder Abuse Awareness Month announcement. While I was reading your announcement, I thought, you know, lack of care for our seniors and disabled, not having enough providers for our seniors and disabled, is also another form of abuse. And so, I brought you, and I'll leave it at the front desk, a packet showing the different things that we need your help with on the IHSS Council Commission. You know, the IHSS represents low income, so we're talking about some of the most vulnerable people in our community. The, some of the things that you'll see in the packet that I brought you that we need help with right now is, number one, you already know that we're, the commission itself, IHSS Public Authority Commission, Advisory Commission, is down for commissioners. We need your help in making sure that we get commissioners who are proactive. I wrote you a letter as well. I left that last week at the front desk, so you probably have already seen it. We need commissioners who are proactive and dedicated to working to improve the experience of our seniors in our community. We have 268 IHSS-approved recipients right now, as of the end of March, who do not have care. The, some of the impacts, the help hurting us and getting caregivers, number one, we have background checks. They cost $70 that the providers themselves, when they apply, have to get. And so, when you look at my packet, you'll see other things that we need your help with. Thank you.
Good morning, Board, beautiful people. I like meeting like this. Just coming forward again to also, with a grateful heart, thank this Board and this entire county, all of its staff, for their love and care of LGBTQ+ people, especially in the times that we're in. It allows the Diversity Center where I work, Dusty Collier Worth, he/him, manager of outreach over there, to deliver impactful work that changes the lives of individuals. And we change the lives of individuals. We start slowly and surely changing the world. And you know, 1,001 moments from the Diversity Center's work, from seeing both ends of both a retro Rainbow's prom for our senior community to have the prom and experience the joy that they never got to as youth, to an actual youth prom, Rainbow Realms, where we see our youth of today leaning into their identities and shining very brightly, including one young trans youth that I had a very vibrant suit that I was extremely jealous of. To moments like Cheryl mentioned of the center being a space for grief to be shared amongst community, but also in that same center, an opportunity for a 60-year-old to come in on National Coming Out Day and, for the first time in their lives, feel seen and safe to actually come out to other people. So, again, all these small but magical moments that come together to increase the vibrancy that makes Santa Cruz County amazing. So, thank you for your continued investment in the LGBTQ+ community and also the work of places like the Diversity Center.
Morning, Chair Hernandez and members of the Board. Thank you for your service. My name is Dan Hayfley, and I'd like to thank Supervisor Cummings for item number 46, which is the Unified Local Government Response on Offshore Oil. Third District Supervisor Gary Patton actually first did this in 1979. Richard Charter was hired, and he kept local governments and citizen groups engaged as he and then Congressman Leon Panetta went to work. They actually instituted something known as the Annual Moratorium on Offshore Oil Funding, so you couldn't operate the Xerox machines, or travel, or get paid if you were working on offshore leasing. And this was successful for many, many years. Richard has continued his ocean protection work since that time, and so he would be rehired, and this program would be relaunched. I just also want to note that Save Our Shores also undertook a program of the city of Santa Cruz to get 26 communities to pass onshore facilities for offshore oil ordinances. You had to get a vote of the people to approve an onshore facility for offshore oil, difficult to do. And this was a successful strategy as well that worked in parallel with this local government coordination program. Save Our Shores is now investigating funding for restarting their program. So, the two of those things in parallel should be very effective. So, I want to thank you again, and thank you for leading the way on this effort.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. I'm Kate Hindenkamp, District One. As a parent of a trans kid, I'm really grateful to all of you for your support of the $100,000 to support the LGBTQ+ community. As the Program Director at the Community Action Board Immigration Project, I'm here today to thank you as well for the $100,000 that you allocated to support. I want to read the right wording. Legal Defense Services and Community Support to Undocumented Immigrants Throughout the County, and that went to both to the CAB Immigration Project, as well as Watsonville Law Center and Catholic Charities. And I, you know, and I particularly want to thank Wang from the county staff and her team for her support in making us successful. As you all know, this is a tough time for the immigrant community. And this, I just want you to know that your support is really having an impact. You know, you know what's going on out there. Some of the things we've heard from CAB participants, "I've lived here 20 years and still don't feel like I belong." "I live in constant fear of being separated from my children." This stuff is very, very, very real, but there is, there are things we can do, right? CAB and our partners provide community education. We're educating people about our rights, and we're hearing stories in the news. We're hearing horrible stories in the news, but we're also hearing impact where it really makes a difference and where people speak up for their rights and have their rights respected. So, it's really important, as well as the immigration legal services we provide, so people can know what their options are. So, just again, thank you. I know we'll continue to partner into the future, and we appreciate you.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez and Board members. Thank you for your service. My name is Alex Operas Hernandez, and I'm a recent graduate of Harbor High School. And I have served as a Young Outdoor Leader for the County Park Friends for two years. I will be attending San Jose State University in the fall. And then, today I'm here in support of the Consent Agenda Item 92, the Greyhound Rock Operating Agreement. Places like Greyhound Rock are important for all of us to access, because it could be a learning and meaningful experience for anyone of any age. As a Young Outdoor Leader, I have completed certification through the Outdoor Youth Connection Program of California State Parks. I want others to gain these skills, because I felt more safe while camping out, and want everyone else to feel more safe and confident while away from home. This operating agreement is an important step towards our shared vision of increased access to activities, places, and despite being so close to home, have been close to the public, especially to underserved communities. And with approving Consent Agenda Item 92, you can help more families and communities learn, grow, and enjoy their time at parks. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez and Board members. Thank you for your service. My name is Genevieve Melassio. I am an upcoming junior at Harbor High School and served as a Young Outdoor Leader with County Park Friends for two years. Today, I'm here in support of Consent Item 92, the Greyhound Rock Operating Agreement. Places like Greyhound Park are important for all of us to access, because they give people the chance to enjoy nature, relax, and experience the beauty of the ocean, while also reminding us why it's important to protect the environment. As a Young Outdoor Leader, I have completed certification through the Outdoor Youth Connection Program of California State Parks. I want others to gain these skills, because these skills will help you become confident, learn how to work as a team, understand how important it is to take care of our nature. This operating agreement is an important step towards our shared vision of increased access to activities and places. Despite being so close to home, have been close to the public, especially to underserved communities. It shows how we are working to make sure everyone has a chance to enjoy these spaces and feel welcome to the outdoors. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for your service. My name is Yadira Flores Martinez, and I am a colleague of the Young Outdoor Leaders YOL, for short. As you may know, a few years ago, we were fortunate to receive the Outdoor Equity Grant, and through this grant, we were able to allocate gear for the community, such as camping gear. This was part of the brilliant mind of my colleague, Annika Canas-Milan, who were able to secure camping to serve 30-plus people. These include tents, bags, sleeping bags, you name it. Now that the OEP is ending, we won't be able to serve our young outdoor leaders from the live book community at the same capacity. This is where we turn to our partners to do exactly that, partner with us and help activate Greyhound Rock as a space to continue serving our diverse communities. If they are granted access to the facility, to the facilities, we ask that they prioritize these communities. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Hernandez, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning. My name's Tracy Weiss. I'm a District One Resident and Commissioner and Executive Director with the O'Neill Sea Odyssey, and I'm here to express strong support for Consent Item Number 46, the launch of a renewed coordinated local response to oppose offshore oil drilling and defend the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary. The sanctuary is more than a protected zone for us all. It sustains biodiversity, supports tourism, fishing economies, and serves as our living classroom for thousands of young people every year. And we've been here before. In the 1980s, local activists up and down the coast came together to create a similar proposal. They organized, advocated, and persevered, and ultimately helped to create one of the largest sanctuaries in our world, in the United States. The same spirit of leadership is needed now, and I commend Supervisor Cummings for bringing this forward. Offshore drilling has no place near our sanctuary waters. Protecting our Monterey Bay Sanctuary isn't just about environmental stewardship, it's about justice and sustainability and defending the community's long-term health and resilience. The renewed threat of offshore drilling puts everything at risk, our marine life, our coastline, our economy, and our children's future. Please support this initiative and engage experienced leaders like Richard Charter. Santa Cruz County is stepping up again where we need it most. Thank you.
Morning, Supervisors. My name is Katie Thompson. I'm Executive Director of Save Our Shores, and I'm also here today to voice strong support for the county's leadership in launching a coordinated anti-offshore drilling effort among California communities, Consent Item 46. The threat of new offshore oil and gas leasing has reemerged under the current federal administration, which is signaling a return to expanded fossil fuel extraction along our coasts. That means the California coast could once again be in the crosshairs. We cannot allow that. Oil drilling is a direct threat to our local economy, our climate, and our marine sanctuary. As stewards of Monterey Bay for nearly 50 years, Save Our Shores has seen how hard communities have fought to protect these waters. And speaking with community members today, it is clear that now is no different. We know from experience that local leadership from here in Santa Cruz County and coordination across jurisdictions work. We saw this model of collaboration work 46 years ago, and it can work again today. This proposed coordination effort is more than symbolic. It's a critical step toward defending our coastline and maintaining pressure on federal decision-makers. We urge you to move forward with this effort, and thank you for standing with our coast. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Pauline Seals. I represent Santa Cruz Climate Action Network. I'd like to speak about Item 46. We've already heard quite a bit about that. Strong support. I've personally been a volunteer at the Marine Sanctuary Exploration Center since it opened 13 years ago, so I'm very familiar with that. And yeah, we should be fighting oil drilling along the whole coast, not just the Marine Sanctuary, although most of the coastline is part of one Marine Sanctuary or another at this point, because we don't need the oil, it's bad for the environment, we don't need pollution on the beaches, and there are, yeah, enough on that one. I need to say something else. Item 47. Yes, please, support Polluters Pay Climate Superfund Bills. This is very important. If we can get this through the California legislature this year, it will be a giant step forward, and so greatly appreciate your support on that. And I also want to thank you for supporting LGBTQ and immigrants and a lot of the people who are being negatively affected by this administration. Thank you.
Hello, good morning. I'm Gregory Audino. I live in Amesti, about two miles from 90 Minto Road. I am here this morning to ask the question about safe, safer, safest. What is safe when it comes to best facilities? The failure rate of LFP is and has been documented by EPRI numerous times. We heard about EPRI earlier this morning. How green is this when they fail? The LFP system proposed for here at 90 Minto Road is this same technology. Do we have to be the guinea pig, the guinea pigs for this industry like Moss Landing was for the older system? The industry, New Leaf Energy, is a private business selling a product. They are not regulated by the CPUC. They can sell what they have and tell you anything they want. Of course, they will tell you it is the next-gen technology and tell you it is safer when they can't really prove it, and the information is showing that it's not safe. The proof is that it's not safe. The failure rate of LFP is documented. Do we have to put this technology in the middle of our farms, orchards, and berryfields, only to have safe technology show up in a few years' time? Newer safe technology is close at hand. Sodium ion is being developed now for best usage. We need to take time to allow it. Let's not make Minto Road our experiment gone bad. Let's be an example of a smart way to do this. Pass an emergency ordinance moratorium on this. Do it for your families, your children, your grandchildren. What legacy are we leaving for them? What legacy are you leaving in Santa Cruz County when we truly, when we have truly green alternatives? How come New Leaf Energy is the only option at this moment? Thank you. Have a good day.
Hi, good morning, Board. My name's Elizabeth Byrd, and I'm the Managing Director of Holistic Defense at the Public Defender's Office. So, on behalf of the Santa Cruz County Public Defender's Office, we would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing June as Fatherhood and Father Involvement Month. This recognition underscores the critical role fathers play in the lives of their children and the broader community. We proudly stand with this campaign and are committed to taking meaningful action to uplift and promote father engagement throughout our work. Our office is dedicated not only to providing high-quality legal defense and representation, but also to supporting the well-being of families, especially those impacted by the criminal legal system. We actively support fatherhood engagement by helping clients navigate complex legal and family dynamics, advocating for alternatives to incarceration, and prioritizing family dynamics, advocating for alternatives to incarceration, and prioritizing family unity. Connecting fathers with local support services, parenting programs, and reentry resources. Through our holistic defense model, we work to ensure that fathers are empowered to remain involved in their children's life, even in the face of legal challenges. Thank you again to the Board of Supervisors for your leadership and recognizing the importance of engaged and supportive fatherhood in Santa Cruz County.
Good morning, Board. Elisa Benson, Assistant County Executive Officer. I'm here today to say a few words about our outgoing General Services Director, Michael Beaton, as his supervisor and his colleague. Michael's not here with us today. He's listening in because he's flying back from a national athletic competition that I will talk about in a moment. Um, today's one of those moments that is full of pride, a little sadness, and a whole lot of appreciation. At the end of July, Michael is heading to Monterey County as their new Assistant County Administrative Officer after nearly thirteen years with County of Santa Cruz. And while we're excited for him, we're also feeling the loss because Michael is quite simply one of the best. Michael brings drive, creative creativity, heart, and grit to everything he does. His one-team, one-direction philosophy isn't something he just says, it's how he leads. Whether it's during a crisis or at a Tuesday staff meeting in the warehouse, he shows up ready to support his team, build trust, and get stuff done. I asked him what he's most proud of, and he said it was being director in the E O C during the C Z U lightning fire complex, where he led our, our E O C through one of the most harrowing disasters in our county's history. He was calm, he was clear-headed, he was compassionate, and this was smack in the middle of COVID. He's also helped secure long-term funding for county fire and led the development of the County Fire Master Plan. He's driven the county's shift away from fossil fuels, modernizing our fleet with hybrids and E Vs that are safer, cleaner, and more efficient. But Michael's impact goes beyond that. Before he was G S D Director, he served as Admin Service Director and Assistant Acting Director at H S A from twenty twelve to twenty seventeen. In that role, he was instrumental in bringing critical behavioral health facilities to our county. The new Behavioral Health Building at Freedom, the B H U Mid County, and most recently soon to be open, our crisis, our Children's Crisis and Stabilization Center, a project he has watched over like a father hawk. His devotion to serving the most vulnerable residents shows in every square foot of those buildings. On top of that, Michael is a lifelong learner to the extreme. He's earned certifications in emergency, in emergency management, finance, medical, our mental health leadership, firefighting, E M T training, medical coding, started law school, all while working for, full-time and starting a family. I mean, this just shows, and we weren't just tired, we get tired just listening to the list, and it's just who he is. And did I mention, here it is, he's a national competitive internationally ranked in Scottish Games. Yes. That's where he was this last weekend, competing to go to the International Scottish Games. To our sister county to the south, Monterey, you are gaining a powerhouse. Michael, we will miss you. We, we will cheer you on, and we're so proud of what you done, you've done. And all that's ahead. So congratulation, my friend, Michael Beaton.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez and Honorable Board of Supervisors. I'm Dave Sanford, your Ag Commissioner for the county. And with respect to item seventy-five today, I just want to say a few words about the significance of agriculture to our local economy. Last Friday, we released a report titled "The Economic Contributions of Santa Cruz County Agriculture." The last time this study was completed in our county was in twenty thirteen. And this year, after over a decade, we revisited that work. We updated the report with new data regarding agri, what agriculture truly means to our local economy. The annual crop report my office puts out on production values of ag commodities in the county tell only part of that story. This report, and I brought you all copies again, um, goes far beyond that to understand the complete picture of how ag contributes to our economy and to local employment. The direct value of ag production and processing is over a billion dollars, up more than fifteen percent from twenty thirteen when we last did the, the study. If you add multiplier effects, agriculture contributes more than one point five billion annually to the county economy and supports directly and indirectly twelve thousand jobs here. This clearly demonstrates the strength of agriculture in our county, even during these times of economic uncertainty. New in this study is a look at agriculture's benefits extending beyond traditional economics. Working lands in Santa Cruz County can have provided between two hundred and five hundred and eighty million ecosystem services such as carbon storage, flood and erosion mitigation, and habitat protection. And to the question of what has changed in the twelve years since we last did this study? Well, you might say the biggest finding isn't what has changed, but really what hasn't. Agriculture remains a critical cornerstone of the county's economic strength. The story of agriculture in Santa Cruz County is not only one about production, but about people. Our growers, agribusiness leaders, and most importantly, the workers that make it all possible. Our farms and farm workers are an essential part of our diverse and resilient economy, and thank you very much for your time.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez, Honorable Board of Supervisors, and Dr. Fernando De Paulis, a senior researcher at the consulting company that Commissioner Sanford mentioned. I'm a co-author of the economic study he described. Commissioner Sanford had provided a high-level overview of our study, including some of the key findings. In the next minute or so, I'd like to supplement his high-level overview with a few details. How much did agriculture contribute to the Santa Cruz County economy in twenty twenty-three, which is the most recent year for which we have complete data? Answering that question entails measuring five things. If it helps, you can think of them as five pieces to a puzzle. The first piece of the puzzle is farm production. That number, six hundred and fifty-five million dollars, closely tracks the number from the county's annual crop report. The second puzzle piece is locally sourced value-added processing. Local processing of raw agricultural products added another three hundred and ninety-six million dollars to the global economy. The third puzzle piece is a type of multiplier effect called indirect effects. Indirect effects refer to the dollars that agricultural producers and processors spend on supplies and services within the county. Ag companies spent two hundred and ninety-two million dollars on tractors, fuel, fertilizer, and water insurance, and trucks, and dozens of other things. The fourth piece of another multiplier effect called induced effects, which are the dollars that employees of ag companies and their suppliers spend within the county. Ag employees bought groceries and clothing and got haircuts and went to the movies and paid rent and taxes and many other things to a value of two hundred and fifteen million dollars. When combined, these four pieces added to more than one point five billion dollars and supported nearly twelve thousand jobs. I mentioned that there were five pieces to the puzzle, and for the fifth and final piece, I'd like to turn it to my colleague, Dr. Jeff Langholtz. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez and Honorable Board of Supervisors. I'm Jeff Langholtz, co-author of the new economic study that Commissioner Sanford and Dr. De Paulis just described. I'll pick up where Fernando left off on the fifth and final puzzle piece of the economics of agriculture and then make two other points. Santa Cruz County's working lands do more than produce food. They also provide scenic beauty, open space, carbon sequestration, wildlife habitat, flood mitigation, and more than a dozen other benefits. The estimated annual value of these non-market benefits for Santa Cruz County residents was between two hundred and six million and five hundred and eighty-three million dollars. Second, as the previous speakers emphasized, the new report shows that agriculture is woven into the economic, social, and environmental fabric of Santa Cruz County. Agriculture's continued strength and resilience are crucial for our shared prosperity and quality of life. And when I say our shared prosperity and our quality of life, that includes my own family. My kids attended elementary and middle school in Watsonville. They both graduated from Aptos High School. My family eats fresh berries from the Pajaro Valley every week and enjoys delicious giz-ditch pies on holidays. Over the past twelve years, Dr. De Paulis and I have completed studies like this for over twenty California counties, from the state's far northern reaches to the southern border with Mexico. And in the coming weeks and months, we'll complete similar studies for five more counties. But the report we're discussing today is special. Santa Cruz County is our own backyard. The third and final point I'd like to make is about not missing the forest for the trees. Our report is loaded with facts and figures. It contains dozens of numbers across twenty-four pages. But the main point, the one message I'd encourage you to keep in mind is this. When people drive around Santa Cruz County, they can't help but notice that agriculture must be pretty important to the local economy. Well, it's even more important than they realized. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Susan Cavalieri. I also want to voice my support for item forty-six.
Speak into the mic.
For item forty-six, I support no offshore drilling. We have a right to protect our coast and the waters, and we have a right to a livable climate. Fossil fuel extraction and greed must end for our survival. And as we've seen recently, climate change is proceeding at a very rapid rate. Also, I want to thank you for supporting the Make Polluters Pay Climate Superfund Act. If polluters pay, hopefully it will limit their desire to drill. Thank you.
Before we move to online, I just want to make note that we have a scheduled item at ten forty-five, one at one thirty, and a session that's going to last about an hour and fifteen minutes, and we have three additional items on our agenda. So I'll be moving the online comments to one minute.
Maria Elena, your microphone's now available.
Good morning. This is Maria Elena de la Garza, and I am the CEO to the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County, and I just want to thank you for line item twenty-five, uh, item twenty-five. Thank you for your support of the LGBTQ plus community and the immigrant community in our county. CAB celebrates sixty years of service this year, and you know, we need to continue to work together. It is not business as usual. Our immigrant community is living in fear. Our LGBTQ community is living in fear. And we need to step up and do better for our community. I want to thank our county partners for your support in this work. But I have a call to action, and my call to action is we need to complete one thousand child safety plans by September thirtieth in, for our county. And so I'm asking if you have been trained to do child safety plans, if you're bilingual and bicultural and you want to be trained and/or you are an indigenous language speaker and you want to be trained, please get ahold of CAB so we can meet this important challenge at this time. Thank you so much.
Tim, your microphone's now available.
Thank you so much for all your hard work. I really appreciate it. So, straight to the point. Food, water, energy, and communication. Those are the four pillars of civilian and military society. Okay, and that will combine, you know, water a little bit with land. Because as we all know, when land's poisoned and it rains, your water's poisoned, right? So the whole issue here is I just don't get this concept here when Trump is involved with the potential shooting wars here. And uh, then you're sending ICE out to go after the migrant community and everything all across the entire country that are working all of our dirty jobs, including producing food, toilets, washing toilets, kitchen, steel, concrete, demolition, everything. It doesn't make sense from a military perspective. So I just wanted to say that. I hope that helps everybody. Thank you so much. You have a fine day.
Call and use your one. Your microphone is now available. Call and use your one as a reminder. It's star six to mute or unmute yourself.
Feels like we're living in a police state. And those who profit from this system are polluting us to death. That's what it seems like to me. I heard many excellent speakers about no offshore oil drilling. There are a lot of impacts to the ocean, including microplastics, chemicals, pesticides, fallout from the Moss Landing fire, shell towers on the ocean floor, a rocket testing at Vandenberg and the contamination from that. Sonar testing, here's something that needs to be incorporated in your protection of the ocean. She received a letter from Nina Beatty asking you to please oppose the high-decibel survey offshore of Santa Cruz from June twenty-third to Jul-
Amber, your microphone's now available.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Amber Jones, former chair of Surf Rider Foundation Santa Cruz Chapter. The threat to our environment and coastal communities is real. California's coastal ecosystems, marine wildlife, and the economic livelihoods of communities depend on a healthy ocean. Protecting our oceans is not only an ecological necessity, but also an economic imperative. Communities must unite, and Santa Cruz should lead the way. History shows our Board of Supervisors have been champions and leaders in local coordination efforts of anti-offshore drilling. Forty-six years ago, Santa Cruz County Supervisor Gary Patton launched a successful outer continental shelf local government coordination program. In two thousand and fourteen, our Board of Supervisors amended the general plan to prohibit all facilities for oil and gas exploration and development within the unincorporated county, becoming the first county in Santa Cruz to, in California, to ban fracking. Santa Cruz has a strong track record of taking initiative and leading local efforts amongst local communities in California. We've united back then, and we need to unite once again today. I urge you to approve the launching of anti-offshore drilling local coordination efforts. Thank you.
Paige, your microphone is now available.
Good morning, Supervisors. Uh, my name is Paige Gordon, District One, and I'm the co-chair of the Santa Cruz Women's Commission. Although this morning I'm dialing in from Hawaii, so that's fun. Uh, but I'm here to speak in support of the C D A L recommendations that were an action item on today's agenda, number thirty-nine, but I do see that it was pulled for further discussion, so that's really good to hear. I just wanted to say these recommendations reflect months of research, community input, and a commitment for equality for all women and girls in our county, and we're really hopeful the board will take this opportunity to affirm support for gender equality and move forward with these recommendations. Thank you.
Call and use your one six two eight. Your microphone is now available.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Richard Buckingham. I'd like to read a little bit about the ingredients in vaccines from Leon Kenrose's book, The Unfortunate Truth About Vaccines. He's a local author here. Okay, vaccine ingredients, there are more than sixty chemicals in vaccines, many of which have been proven toxic to the human body. To make matters worse, the damage caused when these ingredients are combined magnifies the deleterious effects. The major toxins found in vaccines are summarized as follows. Aluminum. Aluminum is a heavy metal used in vaccines that has been linked to symptoms associated with inflammation of the brain, autoimmune disorders, and neurological diseases, including chronic fatigue, dementia, autism, macrophagic myelitis, Alzheimer's, Lou Gehrig's disease, lateral, uh, tropic laterosclerosis, herpes, multiple sclerosis, and Parkinson's disease. In the nineteen seventies, children got only four vaccines containing aluminum in the first fifteen months.
Mondo, your microphone's now available. Mondo, if you're- Mondo, if you're speaking, we're not able to hear you.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, aloha, my friends and neighbors in Santa Cruz. My name is Mondo Morales, and I am currently in the state of Hawaii doing real estate photo shoots. And I've observed something really interesting that I wanted to bring home as we move forward with trying to to help our housing crisis in Santa Cruz. Currently in Hawaii, where the land is more expensive than Santa Cruz County, the materials to build are more expensive in Santa Cruz County, and labor is just as scarce, if not more expensive. I'm shocked to find out that even on the most expensive island here in Hawaii, the median home price is only eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is something that we have to fix. As we move forward, trying to fix our housing policy, we have to find ways to lower the cost of our construction, to lower the cost of living so that we stop hemorrhaging our best people. And as we move forward, I'm hoping that we reduce the burdens, the cost of bills, the regulations, so we can bring our prices in line with the rest of the country. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the board.
Chair, I'm so sorry. We've had one additional speaker raise their hand.
Well, we're going to be moving on. So I do want to remind the board that we do have a scheduled, at least two scheduled items, one at ten forty-five, one at one thirty. And we do have a rather long lunch for one hour per closed session. So it's going to be a long and tight schedule. And we probably won't even reach our regular agenda items till after ten forty-five. So if we could continue, and I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments on the agenda, on the consent agenda. Supervisors Martinez.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to all the guests who are joining us this morning. It's nice to hear your comments and congratulations to everybody who's celebrating retirements and transitions today in this month. I want to start off by sharing that I'll be abstaining from item seventy-one today on the consent agenda because that's relative to a contract with Encompass Community Services. On item number twenty-five, accept and file an update on efforts to protect and support the immigrant LGBTQ plus communities in our county. I want to thank the staff for the report back on this item and thank the CBOs who have been working really hard to support those who are most vulnerable in our community. I think we heard during some of the public comment and also just by watching the news in our local community throughout the state and nation that there's a tremendous amount of fear and heartache happening. And this effort that our county put forward, even though it's a small amount, it does make a difference. And so, you know, I appreciate folks who are coming forward to share what other needs there are and where there are spaces for our county to step up. You know, I think we are committed to serving those communities that are under attack. And I would love to be a supportive partner in that. There was also one note in that staff report about the sharing of Medicaid and Medicare services information with the Department of Homeland Services. And that is incredibly scary. And I appreciate the CEO's office for keeping us up to date on that. And we'll continue to look for ways that we can respond appropriately where possible. On item number thirty-four, this was a recommendation to approve the contract with Cal Fire for fire protection services. I just want to take a moment to thank Cal Fire for your partnership and your support to protect our county where we rely on you and we partner with you in so many different ways. And so thank you for your services, and I'm very supportive of that item. On item number forty-two, I just wanted to point this out because I found it interesting. It's authorizing the Personnel Department Risk Management Division to purchase insurance policies. You know, it's the variety package of insurance policies that our county has to purchase. But I just want to note that given the in the challenging claims environment in California and across the nations for public entities, for CBOs, we're seeing incredible increases in these costs. I was really struck that we're seeing a forty-three percent increase in general liability insurance, twenty percent increase in property insurance, seventeen percent in workers' compensation insurance. And I think this is, you know, it's shared with, you know, throughout the county and throughout our partners, just this, these rising costs. And so it's something for us to watch really closely because these costs, you know, we don't have a lot of control over them, but we have to account for them. And so as the county is making big decisions about our budget and where we can and can't invest, I just think it's worth lifting up that we have these type of, you know, cost of doing business that that is in our budget and and we need to continue to monitor. So thanks for that report. And the last item I'll share or I'll talk about for consent is item number fifty-seven, which is approving an agreement with the Santa Cruz Public Libraries for a term of three years to support community resiliency during extreme weather and post-disaster events. You know, we have three different libraries in my district that are going to be set up as these resiliency centers. What that means is that they're a place where people can come and access power, cooling, air conditioning, warmth in the event of, you know, a cold event, and and can partner with OR three and the other services available in our county when disaster strikes. And so this is the sort of upfront preparedness and proactive activities that our county is leaning into as we anticipate future disasters. I'm really thankful to the library system for partnering with our county in this way. I'm thankful to OR three for helping move these contracts forward. And my office will continue to support the development of resiliency centers when disaster strikes. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Koenig.
Thank you, Chair. On item seventy-two, approving the use of five hundred K in measure, five hundred thousand dollars in measure K funds to assist housing matters with the acquisition of the Santa Cruz Inn for uses of behavioral health bridge housing resource. I want to thank our Housing for Health Division for helping with this. And also just point out, it was about four years ago, shortly after taking office, that Supervisor Koenert and I introduced an action, this board approved action to ensure that the, that all parts of our county were doing their part to house people experiencing homelessness. And we've made tremendous progress with that commitment, and this is just continuing with it. And I think it's an excellent use of our measure K funds to really help one of our partners in addressing homelessness, housing matters, to get an asset that will continue to serve over many years as opposed to, you know, using those same funds, just paying leases and, you know, ultimately, you know, continuing to battle just too few resources for too big of a problem. So I think this will be a great investment and glad to see it in the first district. On item eighty-seven, authorizing the Community Development and Infrastructure Department to submit applications to the Regional Transportation Commission for the twenty twenty-five consolidated, consolidated regional transportation grants program for up to ten million dollars. I want to thank CDI for preparing this list. I know it wasn't easy, it easily could have been twice as long. I think it was longer the last time we spoke, but I think it's been pared down, you know, related to some essential projects. And I think it's, you've done a good job balancing safety and infrastructure maintenance. You know, you, with some of the first, the first district projects proposed, the East Cliff pedestrian pathway between Ninth and Twelfth. I mean, we've had at least over six accidents there this year. People, you know, running into telephone poles, and it's a pretty dangerous spot for pedestrians who access the beach. And then also with maintenance on SoCal San Jose Road between Olive Springs Road and Summit, that would really help to improve a major arterial that sees over fifteen thousand cars a day. So I know it's going to be very competitive for these funds at the RTC. There's a lot of transportation needs in in our community, but thank you for, for getting it down to the essentials here. And just finally, on item ninety-three, the agreement with Environmental Science Associates to provide consulting services for the Santa Cruz Coastal Lagoons and East Cliff Drive Resiliency Plan feasibility study. Just excited to see this move forward. Every winter, we see flooding at Schwann, Schwann Lagoon, Corcoran Lagoon, and Moran Lagoon. And everyone asks when we're going to build bridges there. This is not building those bridges, but at least it's starting to look at what we're going to do in those low-lying areas. I'm excited for this to move forward and particularly some of the public outreach involved with that. So just thank you, Parks and CDI for working on this. Those are all my comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Cummings.
Thank you, Chair. Well, first, I want to start by congratulating our staff members who are retiring. You know, forty-five years of commitment to this county, has a lot of years of service. And so just want to thank both of the members of our staff who are retiring and wish them well into their retirement. Also want to thank Michael Beaton for his service to the county as well. I actually ran into him at the Scottish Highland Games a couple of years ago, and so it was interesting to see a familiar face there. But really hope that he's, he's competing well and just, you know, want to thank him again for being such an amazing partner with here with our, with our county. Item number twenty-five, accepting file update on efforts to protect and support immigrant and LGBTQ plus communities. Just want to continue to thank our board for their support for this funding and for our partners in the county who are providing these services. I would note, though, that when this comes back again, or if this comes back again, I think it would be good to have numbers of the number of people who have been served. I think there's some CBOs that did provide, you know, how many people that they had reached. But I think it'd be good for us to understand across the board of these organizations, how many people are receiving these funds so that, you know, when an ask comes back, we can actually justify based on the need that's demonstrated in the number of folks that were served by those resources. So just hope that we can have that be consistent across the NGOs moving forward. Next item, item number forty-six, approve the launching of an anti-offshore oil drilling local coordination effort. I just want to thank members of the community who, who brought this item to our attention. And, and we'd been paying attention to this as well, just given the Trump administration. But having, you know, community support for us to move forward with this, I think, is a really great opportunity for us to relaunch an effort that had been launched back in the eighties that was successful at helping us prevent offshore oil here in California. I did want to add one minor adjustment that I apologize that I didn't include. But in addition to it saying anti-offshore oil drilling, anti offshore oil and mineral drilling. Because the, on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty twenty-five, the Unleashing America's Offshore Critical Mineral and Resources Act, that was the executive order that was issued by the president, also includes offshore deep sea mining. And I think it's important that if we're going to launch this effort on oil, we're also going to have the same message moving forward with mineral extraction because those activities are very destructive to our environment. And then item number forty-seven, this is related to the Polluters Pay Climate Superfund Act. This is a similar bill to the one that was, an assembly bill that's moving through those written by Don Addis, but this one was in the assembly. And just want to thank Supervisor De Cerpa for joining me again on bringing this to the board's attention for support. My apologies. Item number seventy-six, I believe, is the Ag Report. Seventy-five, just want to thank our Ag Commissioner for bringing this forward. It's great to see, you know, how much and have the community understand, you know, how important Ag is in our community and how much revenue it generates. I do hope that maybe by the end of the year, so maybe before, on or before the last meeting in December, that maybe we can get a report on how the ICE activities have impacted agriculture here locally, if that's possible. We see that there's, you know, reports of ICE agents in other parts of California that are chasing people through fields, and it's really discouraging people to want to go work. And so I think it'd be really important for us to understand, you know, if these activities, even if they're not occurring in Santa Cruz, they could still be having an impact on people and their willingness to work. And so I think it'd be really good if we could get a report back on that before the end of the year. At number seventy-two, this is the use of five hundred thousand dollars in magic cave funds to assist housing matters with the acquisition of the Santa Cruz Inn. Just want to thank the City of Santa Cruz and Housing Matters for their partnership in this. I think as Supervisor Koenig was saying, you know, this money would have likely been allocated towards paying people's, paying for hotel rooms for people who are experiencing homelessness. And the fact that rather than just kind of having that money bleed out slowly over time, that we can invest in a property that we will have control over, it's just a much better use of our tax dollars. And also provides an opportunity in the future if we want to put a bigger facility on that site. We'll already have site control, which we can leverage then with other partners in order to be able to build more facilities. And so just want to appreciate the partnership that that we were able to achieve with Housing Matters in the City of Santa Cruz to make this acquisition happen. And then finally, item number ninety-two, I just want to appreciate Parks and Rec Department for continuing to work on acquiring Greyhound Rock. This is a large property coast that the county had been managing for about sixty years. And there's an opportunity for us to acquire that coastal property that will be a park within my district. And it will allow for us to also have onsite low-cost accommodations for school groups to be able to visit. And so just want to thank you all for your work on that. And then I do have some additional direction later on a separate item. But just want to appreciate all the work of Parks on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor De Cerpa.
Thank you. We've got a packed agenda today, so I'll try to keep it brief. But I wanted to congratulate again all the retirees. It's amazing to hear that somebody has worked here for forty-five years and done such a good job and still loves her, you know, loves what she does. So congrats to all the retirees today. Congratulations to Eva Driscoll, Fernando Geraldo, for their unwavering support in their positions. We'll be honoring them, honoring them a little later. I wanted to thank Heidi Kelson and Julie Lambert, who have agreed to be appointed to First Five Commission and EEOC respectively. Item twenty-five, again, the, the extra two hundred thousand dollars that we allocated for assisting people in the GLBTQ plus community. I was really happy to hear that that money was able to match and braid and pull down extra funds to support. And so congratulations to the groups that are really helping. And in terms of helping the youth, there's already a lot of help specifically in the Paharo Valley for kids. And it just warms my heart to know that we've even provided more. So thank you very much. And to the hundred thousand dollars that was provided to help with legal expenses and legal work for our immigrant community. I wish we could, you know, increase that amount at some point. So hopefully we'll be looking at that as ICE activities likely come to our county. Item forty-seven, thank you to Supervisor Cummings for inviting me to participate in the Polluters Pay. Very happy to sign on to that letter of support. Item sixty-five, we were able to find money to continue providing support for MH Can. I would like to give direction again that, that they come back with a plan at some point, which talks about the ways they're going to help people in Mid and South County, not just in Santa Cruz. And thank you to the City of Santa Cruz for providing the hundred thousand dollars that will assist us in continuing that critical program. Item seventy-two, again, Housing Matters, five hundred thousand to purchase the Santa Cruz Inn property. And I agree with Supervisor Cummings that in the future, I'd like to see some type of bigger structure there because I think at this point it could support maybe twenty rooms. And I think that's an amazing property for this kind of thing, transitional housing or housing for people. And, and I think we could do better by building a larger building there. Items eighty-four and eighty-seven, those are roads that are in need of repair. Thank you to CDI Roads for helping us pull that all together. I was very grateful to Dan Weisner and Matt Machado for driving around in District Two with me so we could see with our own eyes some of the areas that need repair. And we're going to even do it again because we didn't hit them all. And item, that's the last one. Continuing with item eighty-seven, that is an application to the RTC for competitive grants for some monies that we hopefully will get back to do some much-needed repairs in all of our districts. So I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Give Supervisors De Cerpa, I would just like to echo my colleagues' comments on items twenty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven, and I guess eighty-three, some of the, some of those roads I get calls for. So thank you for that. And I'd like to thank all the Park staff that was here, that's here for National Parks Day, Parks and Recreation Day. But I want to thank you for all the hard work that you guys have been doing throughout the year. A lot of exciting and new things that are coming up, as you've seen some of the public comment today. I'd also like to thank the Friends of Parks for being the, the support mechanism for our. for being the, the support mechanism for our Parks and Recreation Department as well. The other thing is, I would also like to thank all the retirees that we have today. Some of them have come up already, uh, from Stacy Lake and we heard about Michael Beaton and the others. But thank you on your long, uh, hard work and dedication to the county. The other thing is I'd like to, uh, thank David Sanford for doing the, uh, report, the economic report on agriculture as well. Uh, you know, I think it's really important to, for our county to look at this information because it's often overlooked when you talk about agriculture, what is it that it does, uh, for our communities? And but just as my colleague Supervisor Cummings said, that we do have an economic backbone here that's the workforce. So we have to look at that too as well, because as a community, there are assets. And the next thing is, I want to make sure that people heard some of the public comment about, uh, the, the Commission on the Environment. I know I want to thank the Board Chair and, uh, of course my supervisor, my, uh, Commissioners, Maria Perez and Bob Culbertson. They're going to be hosting tomorrow, I believe, here at the Board, um, from five to seven here at the Board. They're going to be hosting presentations on the implementation of the County Climate Action Plan. And also a presentation on SB two eighty-three regarding battery energy storage systems. So it'll be a good discussion. I think it's the first public discussion as one of our committees that does it. So thank you to the Board Chair and my Commissioners, uh, on the climate action, on the Commission on the Environment. And lastly, oh, that's it. We just have to make sure that we continue the meeting moving. We do have in fifteen, ten minute, in eleven minutes, a scheduled item, but we will try to finish through item six point one, six point two, six point three. Starting out with item number six point one.
So you have to approve consent first?
Oh, yes. Looking for a motion from, uh, the Board.
I'll move consent and, and, um, we'll just add for item number twenty-six, that's anti offshore oil and mineral drilling.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Cummings and a second from Supervisor De Sera with a clarification on, what is it, forty-six or forty-seven, forty-six, to add minerals.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye, with an abstention on seventy-one.
Cummings?
Aye.
De Sera?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now, now we'll move to item six point one, which was items forty-eight and forty-five and forty-eight, if I'm correct. Plotting to one.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. So the reason why I pulled these two items is one, I want to start off by saying that I was happy to see that there are two nominations for the Metro seat. And I'll be supporting these two nominations. However, when the Board called for nominations at our last meeting, I have found that two weeks wasn't sufficient time to identify and vet nominees. As the Board Representatives of the Metro Supervisor Koenig and I have been trying to meet together with qualified candidates for this open seat to identify the right fit for the Metro itself. And we just need a little bit more time to continue with those interviews. And the intent would be that we would be submitting a joint nomination to this Board for review at the, um, next meeting in August. So if my colleagues are in agreement, I'd like to extend the nominations period to August fifth and then extend the appointment day to August nineteenth. This would essentially just result in a two week extension of the appointment process, so that way we can get our work completed. And so after taking public comment and answering any questions about this, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the nominations of both Larry Pagler and Elizabeth Madrigal for appointment to the Metro Board. But with additional direction to extend the nomination period for this open seat to August fifth and extend the appointment day to August nineteenth.
For clarification, uh, this committee, is it part of the Metro? Or is it part of the Board? Because this appointment is, uh, at large for Santa Cruz County Board of Trustees, correct? Or is it Metro?
Metro.
Metro makes the decision.
No, no, uh, there, there is no committee, for one thing. The, the Board doesn't have a subcommittee on this. It's just two supervisors who are working, uh, together on something. But, um, this Board designates this seat, this open seat for Metro.
Correct. I'm saying this Board designates it for Metro. Not Metro designates it for Metro. True. Okay.
And the reason, just to clarify, the reason why Supervisor Koenig and I are working together because, is because we are the two Board members who have been appointed to the Metro Board. So we both sit on the Metro Board, um, have a good sense of what the needs are of Metro today. And so in order to make a recommendation to the rest of us on who might make a good fit for our Board nomination, we've chosen to work together, um, to submit a nomination or two.
Okay. And during this process, are you guys going to be using sort of like the, uh, Santa Cruz like me kind of model that has been, that we've been working on as part of their strategic planning?
So absolutely, we are taking a strong consideration to make sure we have bevers voices. And I would, uh, remind our Board that as, as was highlighted in, um, the memo on our last agenda, this seat, we, we by our own resolution should go to someone who lives with a disability, um, or ha- has, um, helped work with the disability community. So that is definitely something that, uh, is foremost in our minds, uh, as we interview applicants. And, and of course, again, this is not a formal subcommittee or committee of this Board. We just, um, a- and the Board may not choose to ultimately appoint anyone who Monica and I, Supervisor Martinez and I suggest, uh, but we just wanted to provide a little bit, um, extra, uh, process here. Specifically because Metro is, um, going through a lot of changes right now. And we just wanted to make sure that people sort of knew what they're getting into as well. And it could be very well that, um, ultimately we don't need to bring forward another nomination because either it was Madrigal or Mr. Pagler, as we feel is best for the top tip.
Okay. There's any other, uh, questions or comments? I'll take it out to the Board. I'll, I'll take it out to public comment, I mean. See none in public? Anyone online?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
And I'll bring it back to the Board. Supervisor.
Can I ask a question? Clarifying question. So I, I heard what you just said about, um, potentially, um, trying to accommodate or find somebody who is a member of the disability community. Is that because there's not currently somebody with a disability that is serving on the Metro?
Well, that's true as far as Board members, but also, um, this, I believe it was nineteen ninety-four, uh, or so, that, uh, the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution saying that, um, at least one of our, uh, at-large public member appointments to the Metro Board would be someone who lives with a disability and who, who actually uses Metro as their primary form of transportation. And then a little bit later on, this was actually recently, it was twenty nineteen, we added, um, you know, to that general framework that it could al- alternatively be someone who, um, has worked to, um, create, work, work with the community, uh, including supporting the creation of infrastructure, uh, to support daily needs.
Okay, that's great. Um, I've worked with, uh, um, disabled community, um, physically challenged community for many years. And I would appreciate this extra time to maybe recruit a couple of very good people. So I will reach out and see if they'll, um, put their names in under consideration. Thank you.
And maybe that's a good point Supervisor De Sera. We are continuing to seek applications. We are currently doing interviews and have, you know, um, a little time to continue. But those, um, the, the position is open online and people can submit an application and that will go to all of us. And then Supervisor Koenig and I have been doing these interviews.
And this is not to say that, you know, any, any one of us can't do those, their own interviews as well. Obviously, just more than two of us cannot meet to conduct at the same time. And, and ultimately, of course, uh, the additional couple of weeks that, um, we're asking for here, really, the, the Metro meets on the fourth Friday of the month. And so it won't delay an appointment, um, for the August Metro meeting.
Okay. Do you need a motion or?
Sure. I'll go forward with the motion. I move to approve the nominations of Larry Pagler and Elizabeth Madrigal for appointment to the Metro Board. But with additional direction to extend the nomination period for this open seat to August fifth and extend the appointment date to August nineteenth.
Second.
We have motion from Supervisor Martinez and second from Supervisor Koenig. We take roll call vote.
Supervisor De Sera?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have item six point two. Supervisor Cummings?
Thank you, Chair. This is, um, approve final, final county operational plan for fiscal years twenty-five to twenty-seven and take related actions. As I was reading through, um, the staff report, one of the things that I realized as it relates to Sharkfin Cove parking, it states by June twenty twenty-seven, the Community Development and Infrastructure Department's Transportation Division will identify funds, funding sources to design permit and build the Sharkfin Cove parking lot along Highway One. I just want to remind the Board, and because this is, the reason I pulled this, because this is a little bit different, from the direction that we provided on this item. The direction that was provided on May sixth was direct community development and infrastructure to prepare as soon as possible feasibility study for controlled parking area on Highway One adjacent to Sharkfin Cove Beach in collaboration with Caltrans State Parks and the Regional Transportation Commission and Direct CDI to apply to the Coastal Conservancy for a planning grant to complete the study. And so I just want to make sure that the language here is, is consistent with the direction that we provided. Because as it states right now in the operational plan, it really is just for them to go find funding. And given that we've allocated a hundred thousand dollars in last year's budget and this year's budget, the objective should be to complete the study and to seek other sources of funding. And so I don't know if this can be spoken to, but I think, I think it's really important for my office that the language, if that's an objective, that the objective needs to reflect, um, the intent.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, um, Matt Machado, CDI Director. So just so, uh, for some clarity, that project is in a Caltrans right of way. And so the Caltrans process is, uh, what they call that first step is project initiation. And that's where we'll identify the, the need for the project. And then we'll do a project initiation document, a PIT document. And then we form a PDT, a project development team. And then we have the project set for programming, which is that funding element. And so what we're proposing is, is what you're asking for, but the terminology is different because we're using the, uh, Caltrans vernacular for the project initiation, which will, what we'll get out of it is really that PIT document, that, that project initiation document. And we will try to program the project with those, uh, funding sources, which is why we left that objective with that conclusion. Because that's the last step of this first phase of this project development. The next step will be, uh, a design, uh, environmental and construction. And so this is the true first step of doing a project in the Caltrans right of way. Uh, it will, it will flush out, um, those objectives that you want, like, you know, the different ideas and alternatives, because we'll be working with Caltrans on that, uh, that PIT document. So I think we're in alignment, but the terminology is different. So, um, happy to, uh, expand that objective to include all those steps that Caltrans requires, which will get to your, uh, your desire, I think.
I think that'd be helpful. Okay, we can do that. Thank you. Thank you. The other thing too is that, um, you know, our office has been working really closely with the Parks Department. And, um, as we just took action on with this two-year operating agreement, and given that this is, you know, twenty-five to twenty-seven, um, objective plan, I'd like to add an objective, um, that by June twenty twenty-seven, Parks Department will have completed the transfer of Greyhound Rock and identified funding for operations and maintenance. And given that this is an objective, you know, we're going to, you know, we're aspirational, we're going to try to get there. I think as, again, since it's a two-year operating agreement, we, if it hasn't been transferred, then we're going to have to revisit that agreement anyway. So I think that it's a logical objective for us to include in this plan, given the timeframe. And so I'd like to add that as well.
Yeah, we're more than happy to add an objective and we'll work with the Parks Department in your office to make sure the language meets, um, your interest. And so after this meeting, once the Board approves the final plan, we're going to be updating the website and making any further revisions that are needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the break.
Public comment and then, oh, there's no public comment.
Any public, any public comment on these items pulled from the agenda? See none? Anyone online?
I see no speakers online for item six point two.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the Board.
Thank you. Um, I just had a couple of comments, so they were going to say they were for consent agenda, but since you pulled the item, I saved them. Just to say, to thank the staff for bringing forward the updated operational plan based on our feedback at the last meeting. Um, and I do just want to highlight that there was an update to some of the, um, behavioral health services and health agency, objectives and deliverables. Um, that was something that I asked for at the last one, and you shared that they were in progress. And so it was nice to see those. And I think that, um, what's proposed is a real step in the right direction to help us expand services in a timely manner for those who are seeking behavioral health services. So I just wanted to appreciate you for bringing that forward.
So I'll move the item, um, with the additional, um, direction to, uh, expand on the Sharkfin Cove parking lot language, as it was stated by CDI, and to add the new objective by twenty, by June twenty twenty-seven, have the Parks Department have completed the transfer of Greyhound Rock and identified funding for operations and maintenance.
One second.
So we have a mo- motion and second, but really quick to clarify, so you combined six point two and six point three together? No? Okay. So we do have a motion in a second?
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cummings? De Sera?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So we do have a schedule, scheduled item for ten forty-five, it is ten fifty. We will now move to the scheduled item, which is ten forty-five. Consider reporting organizational assessment of the permit center and take all related actions.
Ready for us?
Yes.
All right. Uh, good morning, everyone. Elisa Benson, Assistant CEO. I am here with Jocelyn Drake and Matt Machado and Julie Newbold. Your presenting team, but we have the, the whole core team from planning, from CEO, from Baker Tilly, here to speak with you today about the on-the-ground progress, uh, since our study session on permitting improvement processes and, and really our recommendation on where we go from here. So with that, I'm going to kick us off when I'm doing this. Okay. So very quickly, um, this, today's information is really in five parts with plenty of space for question. We know that the staff memo and report and attachments were pretty dense. Today, we hope to provide a broad update with some key highlights of what we think are really important aspects of the progress today and then what's ahead. Um, I'm going to do a quick, quick overview. I think everyone's pretty well aware of the problems that, that, that you all have identified and the, and the public concerns around our permit processing work around timelines and, and also around CZU development, uh, redevelopment. We are going, this, this work is really premised on an organizational assessment. We started about a year ago, I want to say, with Baker Tilly, where they went through a very, um, extensive, uh, method with interviews, thirty in-depth plus, thirty-plus in-depth interviews, employee surveys, stakeholder groups, and came forward with what you see before you today in terms of really key themes, observations and recommendations. And we've organized them in these three buckets. Sources of complexity, CX, you're going to see these things later in the report, process improvement, and then really organizational culture, service excellence. And really gave us, um, recommendations and findings in each of these areas. So that is, we've tried to stay true to those, those ways of framing the issues ahead, because it because it helps, that helps make sense. So keep those in mind, and I'm going to now pass it to Jocelyn to talk about the last, really about the last 90 days.
Thank you. So Jocelyn Drake, I'm here to report on our progress on the 30, 60, 90 day improvements as well as the board initiated, initiated process improvements from back in March. So as you'll recall, in March, staff brought forward a list of quick win process improvements that we identified in response to early feedback we were receiving from our customers and our staff as well as Baker Tilly's findings. So again, I'm not going to report on all of the 30, 60, 90 day initiatives. You have that information in the packet, as was mentioned, but I wanted to highlight a couple of those today. I also wanted to state that we've pretty much completed or nearly have completed all of the 30, 30, 60, 90 day initiatives, which is awesome. So the two that I wanted to highlight today are our walk-in hours and some customer service surveys we've implemented. So the first one is walk-in hours. Our customers have been giving us feedback for a while now on the fact that there's a need for walk-in service, especially for contractors and our owner builders who are looking to pull last-minute permits, over-the-counter permits or get quick questions answered before they go out to the field for the day. So in response, we have implemented walk-in hours, Monday through Thursday, from eight to nine. And that started in mid-May, and they have been very popular, too popular on some days. We've also added an additional service on Wednesdays, which is the ability to walk in and meet with our senior inspector to get questions answered around inspections and construction, you know, detailed construction information, and those are gaining popularity as well. And I just wanted to note that, you know, we're monitoring the volume of walk-in hours. And as you know, the board approved two additional permit tech positions as part of our budget. So we'll be looking at expanding walk-in hours as we move forward, if we see a need for that. We want to optimize our counter service, of course. So that's the status update on walk-in hours. The other key improvement that we have implemented is we've launched two customer service surveys as of May. The first one is a post-counter appointment customer survey, which is emailed, we send an emailed link to our customers after the appointment, and we've received pretty good response back on that survey and really very positive feedback. And Matt's going to present more of a detailed slide on that later. The second survey is a post-permit issuance survey that is going out when we are issuing the permit. And that's aimed at getting feedback on our entire permit process from submittal to review to issuance. And we haven't received a whole lot of feedback through that survey. We're looking at disseminating that survey in a different way. But we're looking forward to receiving the survey results from both surveys to inform process improvements moving forward. That's sort of the key to these surveys is getting the information from the public, finding out how we're doing and looking at where we can make improvements to our processes. And also as we implement all these process improvements, seeing if they are hitting the mark or not. Next slide, please. So in addition to the quick win process improvements, as you recall, the board directed us to implement additional process improvements. And again, this is not a full list of those process improvements that were directed by the board. We have detailed progress reports, reports on each one of these in your packet. But I wanted to highlight a couple of key initiatives. And so I'm going to do that. The first one is we have received feedback from the public that sometimes our correction comments from all of our review divisions, not just from building, aren't always tied to a code citation. And so as of May 15th, county review staff are mandated to clearly tie all review comments to a policy or regulation. And also to make sure they provide their direct contact information so that they can be contacted to discuss those correction comments. In addition, the board and our public have provided feedback over the past year or more around the lack of transparency related to building permit metrics. And the board requested that the department create a public-facing building permit dashboard. So we've done that, and we're pretty excited to show you that dashboard. And we have Julie here, she's going to go over the details of it a little later in the presentation. All right, next slide, please. So just taking a little bit of a deeper dive into one of the initiatives that I touched on just now, aimed at reducing the rounds of review on building permits. I just wanted to go over some additional process improvements that we've made. So I think as, as, as we've heard from the public, you know, each additional round of building permit review adds cost to the application and also time. And so the goal is to reduce the number of rounds of review to the extent possible. And we're hitting that goal in a variety of ways. Looking at making improvements to our pre-application materials and procedures, citing, doing a better job of citing the code and being clear about the correction comments and looking for consistency across the board in those correction comments from our staff. And also, we've implemented this new procedure, which is that at third round, at the third round correction comment stage, the reviewer, and this applies to all of our divisional reviewers, our county reviewers, not just building staff, but all county divisions, that a staff person at the third round correction stage is required to meet with the applicant to go over the correction comments. And the goal there is to look for solutions, to help make sure they understand the correction comments, look for solutions and, you know, remove roadblocks where feasible and possible. Ideally, of course, those comments would be resolved at the third round stage. However, if they get to a fourth round correction comment stage, the division manager is then required to meet with the applicant to look at removing roadblocks and look at solutions. And so far, we're seeing some good success with this new process improvement. I wanted to state, though, that in addition to this new procedure, another one that we've implemented, which has really been very illuminating, is on a monthly basis, we compile all, Amy is compiling all of the third round correction comments, third, fourth and beyond, and putting them in a spreadsheet. And the division manager for each section is required to review those correction comments and look for themes and look for process improvements. So do we need more training? Do we, are applicants consistently missing the mark on an application requirement that they are not understanding that we can go back and improve our application materials? So this, this process is to inform targeted process improvements moving forward. And I'll say, we reviewed the June correction comments, and we have already identified a couple of areas where we can make process improvements. And we actually have two work programs that came out of that. So I think that, you know, we're well on our way to getting towards the first round review in addition to some of the other items that are in the packet. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Matt Machado, the CDI Director, who's going to take a deep dive into metrics.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Good morning. So key reporting and performance metrics is really central to evaluating the effectiveness of process improvement. These performance insights will be periodically shared with the board in the form of tools like this, a scorecard. And so this slide and the next slide will provide some examples of data that we will be using to develop these scorecards and will be shared with you and the community as we go forward. The slide in front of you is an example of a key metric that is regularly monitored. It's our on-time plan check review. Comparing this metric to the number of total plan checks under review at any given time really shows a clear relationship between on-time performance, workload and process improvement. You can see the change over time and how we're monitoring this. Additionally, on-time performance is a county strategic plan objective, which further enforces the importance of this metric. And so as you can see on this slide, as of June 17th, we were 96% on time with building permit reviews. So some great strides in that area. Next slide. This slide, we have the results shown from the post-appointment customer service surveys. And this was since early May. And so we're looking at different ways to distribute surveys for the post-survey results. We haven't gotten those yet, but we're trying to get to the people and get some responses. But in both cases, we've developed some simple questions, only just three to four, with open-ended feedback to conclude the survey. And customer service surveys, customer service surveys, almost a tongue twister there, is a part of our 30-day quick win and part of the board-directed improvements. And as you can see on this slide with the Word Cloud, it really does express how our customers feel about our staff, helpful, knowledgeable. And when you look at the results of the counter appointment surveys, I'll let you know that the five stars is very satisfied and the four stars is satisfied. And so the conclusion there is that 96% of our customers at this point are satisfied. And so that's some good news, but we'll continue to report this scorecard and others to you and the community. And so next, we're going to look at the permit dashboard, and I'm going to turn it over to Julie.
Good morning. Julie Newbold, Senior Departmental Administrative Analyst for CDI Planning. I'd like to start by thanking Darlene Samakis and Yan Sang for NISD for their collaboration with the dashboard project. This will be a fast overview, and we're using screenshots to illustrate some of the features of the dashboard. We invite you to explore the website for greater detail. The Permit Center dashboards can be found on the county's Vision Santa Cruz webpage or can be accessed from About Us on the CDI website. The data presented is generated from the Planning Division Permit Tracking System info and the dashboards refresh Monday mornings. This is the landing page, and the visuals at the top show an overview of the Permit Center activity, including the median review time for residential building permits at 80. This does not include over-the-counter permits. The total issued permit volume, including all building permits at over 10,000, building permit planning, plan check staffing level at six, and the number of building applications in review now at 468. The bottom section of the webpage has cards that link to dashboards with more information about the above visuals. At the bottom, the green share your feedback link includes a post-response pop-up to give quick access to the Unified Permit Center website and the Appointment scheduler. Next slide, please. Clicking on the O1 card takes us to this dashboard with a two-year history of residential permits for common project types. This shows the total permits issued at 627, the median approval days at 79 days for the county, median routings at two, and median fees. Permits that have no reviews are not included. The review days represent the total time from initial application to permit issuance and include time when the applicant is preparing their response to county comments. The permit type selector on the left allows the user to see the data for specific residential permit types, such as accessory dwelling units or ADUs or remodels. The graphs at the bottom are a quick way to see the approval days and permit fees for all of these residential permit types. Next slide, please. On this slide, we drill down to get a little more information on a specific permit type. There are 119 different permit types. For the purposes of these dashboards, we've created 20 permit type groups based on the general project type. Using the permit type selector, we've selected residential remodel, mostly because it has the most permits issued in the last 24 months. And the visuals at the top call out the total permits issued at 149, the median review days, which is 98 for the county, routings three, and the fees at $9,000. The graphs in the bottom are now filtered to show the same review metrics and fees as is represented above. Next slide, please. Clicking on the O2 card takes us to this dashboard displaying in-process applications and which agencies are reviewing those applications. This does not include permit types that have no review, such as over-the-counter permits. This reveals the workload for each reviewing agency and the specific types of applications in process now. There are approximately 471 applications routing now and are reviewed by multiple agencies depending on the location and the complexity of the project. Some agency groups have multiple types of reviews. For example, in the bottom left, you see Public Works has 739 reviews. That is because Public Works has nine review types, including encroachments, stormwater, transportation and various sanitation reviews. Not included in this image, at the bottom of the dashboard, you can toggle to a second page that lists the agencies and their multiple review types. As with the other dashboard, selectors are available to drill down to specific agencies and permit types. In green at the top right, we've included a link to the Camino Guide for project planning and another link for people who want to know the status of their own submitted application. Next slide, please. Using the permit type selector, we've selected the same residential remodel, addition remodel as we viewed in the issued building permit dashboard. This shows that there are 39 addition remodel applications in process now and that a total of 316 reviews of these applications are in process. The review agency selector drills down to the workload for each agency. Next slide, please. This is the last dashboard, and it is linked to the O3 card. This shows issued over-the-counter and easy permit information over the last two years. While these permits do not require routing or plan check, they do require inspections and often involve interaction with Permit Center staff. Using the permits type selector here will drill down to specific over-the-counter permit types. It'll show the number of permits and the median permit fee. At the top in green, we've included easy permit links so the viewer can see if their project qualifies for this expedited path. The four dashboards work together to show the two-year history of residential building permits as well as what's in process now to help applicants develop a realistic timeline for their project. The links within the dashboards give quick access to further resources. There's a lot in these dashboards, and we invite you to explore further.
Thank you, Julie. And I also just want to mention, we had the third meeting of the stakeholder group on June 12th, and there's a summary of that in the staff memo. But we've also invited them to give us feedback on this dashboard. These are works in progress, and I just want to just applaud the work of Julie and the ISD team to really try and make this accessible. These are, there's a lot of information here. This is the start, and we expect this to continue to evolve. So feedback is absolutely welcome. We aren't going to be changing these overnight. They are a lot of work, but we want to be able to update them and continue to make them more and more useful for the public and for anyone who's interested in our business processes. All right, we are two-thirds through. We're going to move on to the work plan. Okay, Development Services Process Improvement Work Plan, Streamline Santa Cruz County. We decided Primo Pie or DSPIW were just too much of a mouthful. So we are hoping you all will approve our rebranding and simplifying of this work as Streamline Santa Cruz County. And I'm excited to share our recommended work plan with all of you. We want to start with the why. We really need this to be a better experience for everyone. Our applicants need to have clear expectations and timelines and benchmarks and responsive service. Our staff need less rework. They need to be able to get through this more quickly, be trained, have things be straightforward. And that is going to give them clarity on their roles, what's other people's roles and just really more time for value added work. And of course, most importantly, our outcomes for the public. This is about more housing, more economic development and really to try and turn the tide and the perception of this very forward facing agency from that we heard culture of no to the culture of yes. And I've seen this team really lean into that. So I just, this is the why. Okay, what if we don't do it? This is the cost of innovation efficiency. We already know. Long review view cycles. We saw the the new grand jury report. This just adds time and money and and a poor experience to our residents' experience and and really pushes us away from meeting our housing and our economic development goals. And again, that that idea of so many frustrated members of the public, none of us want that. Staff doesn't want that. You don't want that. And and just that then becomes something that becomes associated with us as a larger organization. And and this is a regulatory space that's hard, but we 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 want to be a place where we're meeting our larger policy goals. Again, that that multiple rounds of 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 review. I mean, this staff are tired. I mean, they need the opportunity to do better work. And then there's really again, that public policy side of it. If we can't do this better, we're missing out on tax revenue, jobs, you know, recovery from from our community members who are struggling still post CZU. There, there's a lot to lose if we don't move forward. And you'll hear a lot in in when Matt starts talking about the work plan itself. We know California is a complex place to build. And we know Santa Cruz County is an even more complex, complex place to build. And that complexity of that code that has happened over decades is really at the root of many of these issues and that increases those review times frustrated community members. And that's when they decide not to permit. They're just like, I'm going to take the risk. So we wanted to be really, really clear about what are we, what are we trying to avoid? What are we trying to 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 fix? So with that, I think I'm going to pass it to Matt to talk about the work plan projects.
Thank you, Lisa. So the next two slides will be that work plan and line items. So the proposed work plan does include 14 key projects, many of which are interdependent. The top two, which we highlighted here in in bold are the projects that have some of the biggest lifts and some of the biggest rewards. And so this is where we see most of our development service improvements going to be happening right there in those two. And then I'll highlight the the one at the bottom, project number seven. It's a critical one as well as they all are, but it's proposed as collaboration across building permit dependent services and processes, which include items like septic system approval, fire requirements and reviews, soils, geologic, geotechnical and biotic reporting. And again, here, those acronyms at the top right. That's the complexity. That's the process improvement and that's organizational culture and customer experience. And so those are the areas that we see improvement with these these work projects. Next slide. And so this is the second half of the list of projects. All of the projects are detailed in in our attachments today and a part of your board report. In addition to initial details for each project, we've also included a summary table in those attachments showing our projected timeline for each project and who the lead staff will be. And so creating these expectations and showing accountability will lead to success. And so we'll be tracking this very closely. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Alisa for the next slide.
I wanted to take a moment to talk about the last 90 days. And really, as I will now say, a core team, I think when we started this coming out of this of the study session in March. It was, that was a long session. There's a lot of critique. And what I want to just acknowledge is what I've seen this group from CDI, from CEO, from Baker Tilly is really being more and more comfortable and able to engage in hard questions and dialogue, listening to each other, listening to different perspectives and 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 having really robust conversation. And and I think that's a really important aspect of of us moving forward with a learning mindset. And we are going deep around what is the barrier to resistance? What is, is it code? Is it training? Is it, what are those things and what can we do about it? We're really trying to get underneath the symptoms and to cause. Other thing, meaningful action. I know some of these steps might seem small, but they're they're actionable steps and they're not just ideas and we're moving forward even when it's messy and uncomfortable. We are building trust within our cross departmental team. And then that's really around transparency and follow through and just keeping going, even when there's disagreement. And lastly, it's really growing leadership at all levels. We're all leaning in from where we participate. We have great frontline staff participating. We have everyone stepping up with ideas and ownership and accountability. And I just, that's the only way we're going to pull this off is with that level of of trust and support and risk taking within these key staff members. And I just want to say incredible thank you to Jocelyn and Matt and Julie and Dan and Brian and Peter and Sam and our Baker Tilly folks. Because everyone is, we have been meeting multiple times weekly to keep this work moving forward and really looking towards the future. And and that's, that's how this stuff gets done. Okay, next. And then what's, what's next for implementation? We are applying a pretty standard, but rigorous project management approach to this. As as Matt said, we have project managers for each work program. We will be further developing the work, the detailed work programs. You'll see key tasks in the attachment, but really sort of how that's going to play out with clarity around rules, budgets, milestones. We will continue having monthly progress reports. We're going to expand communication and outreach to the public, to our stakeholder group, to the planning commission, to whoever you all think we need to be talking to. And as you saw in the dashboard and the scorecards that we're working on, we are going to be accountable. I mean, hopefully we'll have great results every month, but sometimes we might be flat. Sometimes we might go the other direction and that's going to be the opportunity for this team to say, what is going on? What happened? And it's that kind of conversation that's going to keep us going. We are planning to come back to the board in December for with a progress report and an overall progress report. And you'll notice in the work plan, there's a couple of specific items who will be coming back on earlier than that. So that's really how we're going to keep this structured and moving forward. I want to just say, I think this is a question people have been wondering, all right. How is this different? How is this, how is this time different? There's Matt and I and a handful of us here were present for Primo Pie. We started this work in 2018, 19. What did we learn? How is it different? And I got to say, I think it is what I just described. It's going to be applying that much more rigorous project management framework to keep people accountable, those metrics that we had frontline staff involved in Primo Pie, but I think our our move now to have more customer voice in a more systematic way is a difference than than what we did in 2018. And I think the other thing is we are really pushing towards action over analysis. And even if it's small steps, because we need to demonstrate we can make change. And I'm going to pass it to Matt because he's got to talk about this too.
Thank you. And so I'm going to attempt to align this effort with some other successful efforts of the county. And so, you know, the greatest success that we've seen is when we are really pushing transparency and accountability. And so a couple of examples that come to my mind are the county's strategic plan, which included measurable objectives, which resulted in matching deliverables with expectations. And also the county's online budget, which creates extreme transparency, which builds trust and confidence between the community, your board and staff. And so we view this effort in that same light with transparency and accountability, which we think will lead to success. I'm going to highlight the bottom bullet here, which is increased county investment, ongoing board support and engagement. And so this is really critical beyond words and therefore I do want to leave you with that thought as we transition to the next slide. And so this is purposely a repeat of a slide earlier. This is the why. We do, we do see this as where we're headed. This is our goal. This is our vision, where applicants will have clear expectations, transparent timelines, responsive service, where staff will have less rework, clear roles, more time for value added work and where our community will will get more housing, economic development and trust in government. And so we'll leave you on that. And then next slide is our recommendations. And so today we are asking your board to accept and file the report on the progress to approve the Development Service Process Improvement Work Plan and to direct staff to return on or before December 16th with a report on progress made on this work plan. And we can answer any questions that you may have. And remember, our, our, our title here is Streamline Santa Cruz County. That's our, that's our vision. Thank you for your, thank you for your attention.
Thank you for the presentation. I'd like to thank all of you guys, Alisa Benson, Assistant County Executive Officer, Matt Machado, Deputy County Executive Officer, Director of Community Development and Infrastructure and Jocelyn Drake, Assistant Director and Julie Newbold, Senior Department Administrative Analyst, Analyst for the presentation and for all the work that you, that you guys have done within CDI to make this happen. I know that anytime there's change, it's difficult. And when there's change in the culture within the organization, it's always difficult and sometimes painful. But I know that everything that we're working towards, pretty much everyone from the top down will agree with. And I think that that will make it a lot much better in the long run once we accomplish the Streamline Santa Cruz County project. With that, I would like to take it out to the public to see if anyone would like to address us on this item.
Hello, my name is Sally Lucier. My home is on Clear Creek Road in Brookdale, which is in District Five. Before the CZU fire, there was a two story main house, three cabins, two of which were rentals and a laundry room. This is seven tenths of a mile uphill from the Brookdale Lodge. So on August 20th, 2020, my family lost all the buildings. It'll be five years this August, which is 1,769 days that I have not been able to live at home. In order to apply for a building permit, there have to be four departmental clearances on the preliminary site plan. And we hope to have those four clearances this week. We've had recent support from CDI and the Recovery Permit Center. And I want to thank the strong personal support of Matt Machado and Bailey Kirkland. They've been very helpful in getting us down the road. I want to urge the Board of Supervisors and CDI to continue to make this easier and a more affordable process, particularly for CZU victims. I didn't see those numbers separated out. It has been 1,769 days. Thank you very much and thank you for your support.
Good morning of Cove Britain, Matt's Britain Architects. This is very hopeful of this work. The work is appreciated. But where the rubber meets the road is still very much a failure. You're in federal court for not following the Permit Streamlining Act. Be very simple to follow it. It's straightforward. This I partly put towards legal counsel. I think legal counsel should become much more engaged than what is legally appropriate. Your code is rife with loss and continue to be more and more of issues. The code's ancient. That's part of the problem of 1610, 16, Chapter 16, period. Needs revamping as soon as possible. Respectfully to like the planning commission, we've got two planning commissioners with really good qualifications. And I, this is not meant as a criticism. This is volunteer work, but three of the commissioners probably need more information and more training about what the role is and what are technical and legal issues. Again, I look to legal counsel to be more forthright and to look at what best practice is, not what you can get away with. What's best practice? And you're going to see a couple of these today, ADUs and also SB9. And we've got other things coming through of that sort. And the county is not following best practice. They're seeing how they can avoid doing these things. That's a cultural problem. And that's something that I've looked to the senior staff as being part of that cultural problem. So this is hopeful, but where the rubber meets the road needs to be happening now, not 10 years from now, not a year from now, but now. Thank you.
Morning. I've been a resident here for two years. I purchased a house in Live Oak. I'm in Manu's territory. We've met. My experience has, this sounds great. My experience has been in line with what the last speaker said. After having a near murder incident outside my bedroom window on a Saturday night, I came into the planning office with a scheduled appointment, which took two weeks to get to ask about a permit to put up an eight foot fence on the side of my property. The code is six. I was told that the county doesn't want to grant permits. I asked for a piece of scrap paper. The guy wouldn't give it to me. I was just in the recorder's office. They have scrap paper available for everybody. There's a cultural difference in different parts of the government here. Manu and I have talked about this problem. As long as you have people like the district's attorney looking at his phone during these public meetings, sixth highest paid executive in the county, I don't think the county is taking this stuff seriously. The old timers in the neighborhood tell me not to trust the county. It's a vindictive group of people, in particular, the planning department. These problems run deep and it's intractable. And for a public that has been told, we just had robust public comment on the rezoning problem, which if anything was robust is not an appropriate word to use with what happened in disclosing the plans for the big rezoning. I, as a property owner with less than 0.4 acres of land, have no choice. And there's going to be 11 three story buildings within 300 feet of my house within a few years, right? This is a complete failure on the part of leadership in the county to dictate what needs to happen and to make sure that culturally the organizations follow. There's an intractable problem in this county. I come from a different county where none of these things happened. There's an intractable problem in this county that's a legacy of history that needs to be cleaned up. Thank you.
Is there anyone online?
Yes, true. Tim, your microphone's now available.
Hello. Thank you so much. Well, it's interesting hearing these comments. It's the these kinds, these sorts of things are happening in other states too, just so you know. So I I've experienced these things in multiple counties. So I'm not sure how to go about this, but for me, being always a high altitude resident, you know, it's thorny development on my property. So you know, process wise, folks should also look at that in terms of folks that are in unincorporated areas that are lands, on lands that are sensitive and a little bit challenging to develop and where it impacts people downstream. So, you know, anytime I have work done on any So, you know, anytime I have work done on any of my homes, I explain to contractors that I have a very short building season and folks need to know what they're doing, including permitting offices. And they need, everyone needs to be swift. So once I tear something down, whatever it is, whether it's unpermitted or permitted, because the land is disturbed, things need to be built quickly and land needs to be covered up immediately. So this way it protects everybody downstream and it also protects my investments. Another angle is fire insurance and elder care. So that also caused me to put off development on my property because, you know, I have all these legal issues being hurled at me. And then you have fire insurance and I'm kind of thinking, well, I'll just fix and maintain my property more and keep all my money in the bank in case the place burns down or I get ripped off by state or county government or whatever is going on or insurance companies. At least I have money and I have power to fix things in the future. So there's a lot of little angles here that I think that people need to be thinking about. Anyways, thank you so much. Take it easy.
Fondo, your microphone's now available.
Okay, I'm speaking so hopefully that this board can not make the same mistakes of the previous boards. Five years ago, I approached the board and Carlos is the only person still in the room. And I said, if we do not allow local, small mom and pop builders to build like ADUs or lot splits, et cetera, not only will we not build enough housing for the future, but what's even worse is we won't even be able to maintain what we already have. And unfortunately, five years later in a fire, that proved devastatingly correct. Now, we're going to be talking about SB9 coming up here and that's a bill that a bunch of us worked together at the state level that would allow housing to be split in half and four units to be built on each one. At $1.3 million, a lot, you think that these projects will be popping up everywhere, but they're not. And the reason is we have so many restrictive barriers to building costs all down the pipeline that nobody wants to do it. And this bill passed three, four, five years ago. And so it's an honest question for, for you, Matt, Matt Machado. This bill's been on the books for three years. How many SB9 units or lot splits have been done using this? And the, the answer is going to be very, very few. I'd like to know what the exact number is. But my critique to you, to your board is we now have a scenario where if you want to add a bedroom or a bathroom, it costs $150,000 to upgrade your septic system. And that sort of barrier is in every stretch of our building process. And frankly, you know, it doesn't, that, that cost is so prohibitive, the fact that we're looking to start changes and faces if we can't fix this problem. Thank you, guys.
I see no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring you back to the board for any comments. Supervisor Cummings.
First, I just want to start by saying, great work. It's really just great to see all of this come together and, you know, it's, it's, it's step, it's a stepwise process where, you know, we're going to try new things. And over time, we'll be able to refine and make adjustments. But this is a really good first step in being able to see, you know, the, the, how fast permits are getting processed and, you know, and so people can also get a sense of where things are in the queue. I think it's really helpful so that people kind of know how the permit is moving along and the permitting process is moving along. The one question I did have, I have two questions, two quick questions. One, I know in the presentation, the median days for review was like 79 days. Do we have any sense of how that compares to other counties of a similar size?
You know, we don't. I don't have those numbers, but I mean, we can certainly look into that a bit and have that as part of our report when we come back.
Good. That sounds good. And then the la, the last question I have is just, I'm curious how environmental health kind of fits into this as well, because, you know, in terms of their, you know, them needing to go out and do soil testing or what have you, I'm just wondering how that's being incorporated into this because we know that, I know that for the folks who are rebuilding after the CZU fires, getting environmental health to come out was actually one of the bigger barriers that they encountered. And I know that it's in historically around septic, it's been an issue too for some property owners.
I'm going to start and Matt's going to chime in. Our project seven is where we're looking at that cross-agency, cross-departmental work. We did reference in the memo, sort of the on-the-ground work in terms of staff capacity and some data management system work that environmental health already has underway. I know our, our colleagues in environmental health are listening right now. We've met with them. Project in project seven is we're really going to try and bring this work all together and bring them into this work, which was really UPC focused. But so Supervisor Cummings, that's the intention, is to really bring them in as an equal partner in this, in, in project seven specifically moving forward. But I actually, I know from working with this team that EH is already part of the conversations that they're having in their monthly meetings. So I just want to let Matt or Jocelyn speak to sort of the shifts that are already underway.
Yeah, I'll add on to that. I know that environmental health has been actively interviewing and researching different options and different modifications to the lamp. And what they're trying to do is create more options and choices for people so that they're not so restricted in some of these septic options, which then drives the cost up. And so they've been actively working on this for, for some time. And I hope that their research will result in some changes to the lamp, which actually, you know, has to go through the state process, but will result in more options and more flexibility for our homeowners. So that's going well and we'll report on that as well as we go forward.
Great. Thanks.
Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you. Well, let me just start off by giving a sincere thank you to the team for your work. It's clear that you've been really taking this seriously and it's great to see the progress since the March presentation. I particularly appreciate the dashboards and the focus on data. I think that tells a different story that, you know, across the county isn't a familiar story yet. So I love to be able to look at the data and the progress. I think that's really helpful. You know, just as a reminder, this challenge that our county faces related to permitting and, you know, the planning department is something that we all, yeah, agree with. We've heard it and this board has really made a choice to prioritize addressing this in a variety of places, right? We've commissioned this consultant and this project to move things forward in the last budget cycle, which was very difficult financially. We did add two new building texts. And so I think that just shows that this is something that we're all taking very seriously. And I'm hopeful and optimistic that these investments and this prioritization that we're seeing from you and partnership with the board and, you know, throughout the county will get us where we need to go. Because, you know, it's, it's really, it feels like it's not optional, right? We have to make progress for all of the reasons that you set forward in your presentation. So, so thank you for that. It's not easy to undo 50 years' worth of barriers, which is what you're trying to do with this reform effort. And we'll get there, but we have to keep pushing. I appreciate the progress on the quick wins, you know, the 30, 60, 90. Thank you for taking action where action is possible. I also appreciate your willingness to incorporate the board direction that you got in March. And there were some things that were directed that were doable, like great idea. And there were other things that we saw in your report is, you know, you were educating us what the challenges are. For example, to assign a single building permit person, I don't know the technical name, per project, right? There's reasons with staffing and vacations and challenges that that might actually slow down the process. So I think that's what process improvement is. It's the sharing of ideas. It's trying things. It's taking a growth mindset to evolve. And so I really appreciate you taking the board direction and then telling us why some of the board direction wasn't as well suited as, you know, what, what you could do and, and proposing alternative solutions, which you did. So, so thank you for that. I want to echo what Supervisor Cummings said related to environmental health. And also, you know, there's fire clearance and a number of other areas. The bummer is that regardless how good of a job we do with this slice of the permitting process, if those other slices, as other clearances are experienced barriers, our public doesn't know the difference. Right? So I really urge you to expedite the folding in of improvements to environmental health. I want to see them here. I want to see them at the table. Because you guys could do a stellar job. And then if there's a barrier with septics or something related to environmental health, you guys are going to get blamed and the county is going to get blamed and it really won't help us meet our goals. So I feel like that's really important. I have a few questions, you know, one, I do want to go back to the March presentation. And I asked for the additional direction to really fold the CZU rebuilding process into this effort and to present recommendations. I saw that you're hoping to come back to us perhaps in December, October, with October, with, with additional recommendations. And I was just kind of wondering if you could say more about what we might expect. You know, the five-year anniversary is coming up in August. That's really an important milestone for, you know, our county and for our districts. And so what are you working on? What do you see happening for that progress? You want to talk first?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll start by sharing that, you know, we're, we are trying to scope that out with the needed changes for that. And as we do, we're reflecting back on what has been done. And so we know that about 40% of the victims have rebuilt. We know that about 30% of the parcels have been sold to non-victim new owners. We know that about 15% are stuck in pre-clearance. And the majority of those stuck in pre-clearance is because they want to build more than in-kind. And so that's, that's put them in a situation where new requirements are required. And then we know about 15% are a mixed bag of people that just don't have the funds to rebuild because they didn't have enough insurance or that they've already rebuilt without permits. So the point of that is, is that we're trying to dig into that deeper to see where can we help unstick some of these? You know, the ones that haven't rebuilt, where can we help? And so we haven't quite scoped that out, but we, we're working on that. And when we come back, we'll have a clear scope and an implementation plan.
I think Matt really, you know, made the, the key points of the work ahead clear. We really need to, to segment, segment our families and our, and the parcels and understand what is going on with each of, each of those, those, those groups that Matt just walked through because the solutions are different. And I just want to say, I mean, we've stressed the challenge of our existing code. And what I appreciate in the team is they're going to try and do what they can within the discretion and authority that they have. But I anticipate what we will be coming back to in, in October is this is what we can do within the discretion of the code. And we want to make sure y'all are okay with that. We did some of that when we did CZU recovery around geological hazards and stuff. We did some of that work before. But we're also going to come forward and say, you know, this is how it's written. And, and so that's where, as Matt said, when we were talking about sort of what's different, to really solve some of these issues, you all are going to be provided the opportunity to make some changes and not everyone's going to be happy with those changes. So we do anticipate, our intention is to come back in October, building on what Matt just said. What can we do? What can we not do? And I think the other thing that I just want to stress with that is in some, in some conversations with, with Supervisor Martinez, you know, we also want to take the opportunity to go is what did, what actually worked, right? We do know we have folks with complex geology. How did they make it through? And then you are going to have that interesting opportunity where this is not rebuilding in kind. This is a different build and right now that we've had a different standard for that. They have to go through sort of the, the regular traditional process. And that is a decision that the board in 2020 made. So I just, we will come back with, with a hearty policy conversation with, for you all in October.
I appreciate that. And I encourage you to look at the options and the flexibility possible and to stretch. Because, you know, we still have hundreds of folks who hope to rebuild and time is running out and want to rebuild. So I do think if there's code improvements that can be recommended, you know, I, I look forward to seeing those and, and being able to support people who are trying to rebuild. And I also encourage you to, you know, bring the same focus on numbers and data. I loved the sort of breakdown, loose percentages there, Director Machado, that's helpful for us to know. But even getting more, getting really into the details of, you know, how many parcels, how many households are left and what can we do? That'll help us be accountable to the improvement that needs to be done. Building off of that, on the work plan, project number 14, it's also related to CZ building. It just, it stood out to me that the success criteria in that was described as receiving positive feedback from CZU property owners about the rebuilding path as opposed to more homes rebuilt. Is there a reason why we went one direction versus the other?
I think we can add that. I mean, I think that's a, that's a simple measurable metric that, that, that can be part of, it should be part of that success criteria.
Great. Thank you. And then finally, you know, going back to my, how I started this, which is, you know, this plan is a representation of our board's commitment to improvement. And in the development plan, or losing all the language, the work plan, you're, you're laying out kind of three years and more probably worth of progress. What costs do you imagine you will be asking us to invest? You know, what is the overall picture as it relates to the financial investment? Is some of this just using the same resources and doing things differently? Or is it, are you going to be coming back to us with budget changes for improvement?
Yeah, that's a good question. And so I'll start by saying that we've already invested significant time just to get to this point where we've tried to scope out some of these needs. We know that the implementation of these projects will be even more significant. We did build into our budget that you approved, some of this need, some of this resources. We anticipate using some consultants to help us implement some of these projects because our current staff, you know, they're busy with the day job too. You know, we have to keep the day, the day work going. So we do know that there's going to be significant investment. I can use some examples, but we don't have all the details yet. What we envision is when we come back for these updates, you know, October, December, we can further scope out these projects and have those costs to date, what we spent today and what we anticipate in the next, say, year or two. But I will say that some of these are very significant, like the code update. You know, we heard that today, you know, from ourselves and from others, that that is a significant effort. And we know that will have a large cost that will have to be borne in future budgets.
I'm going to speak to that a little bit as well. As Matt said, and as we highlight in the memo, for the two top priorities around code modernization and technology integration, though, we know those will be costly and we don't have those dollars completely. We mostly don't have those dollars. So that needs to be part of what we report back on. We know for a homegrown mission integration technology project, just sort of the, the first blush ISD-related cost was, you know, over $200,000. Now, in technology land, that's not a lot of money. But, but we also know, we want to make sure we're really clearly evaluating the alternatives to build the platform of the future, not just improve the one we have. So those are some things that we'll be bringing back to you. It, and as, as Matt said, we will do a better job. I have to say, I have not been tracking my time specifically to this project, but it is meaning your, your staff is, is prioritizing this over other things. Because that's what you Because that's what you've directed us to do. And, um, but, but it, this will be a significant investment for this county to make, make the changes that you're asking be made.
Thank you for that. Um, and, you know, I, I appreciate the transparency and the information. You know, are, as, as I shared, you know, the board has really stated that this is a priority because, you know, it's this fifty year breakdown of progress. And, you know, I want to, for the public, put it in the context that there are a lot of challenges that the county is facing related to Health and Human Services, Public Safety, Rose, there, there are so many trade-offs. Um, and so I appreciate you bringing forward kind of the, the, the costs and the, the, the realistic, um, restraints that we might have related to the, the full implementation of the work plan. So that way we can have a dialogue and a conversation about where to prioritize our finite resources. So thank you very much.
Supervisor Koenig.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you to the whole CDI team. I know you guys have been working really hard. The, the effort here is tangible. And I will say, it does seem like there's been a cultural shift. Uh, and it's a tectonic shift, right? Just the fact that we're here talking about customer satisfaction is a great step in the right direction. I mean, and, and a lot of it is very positive, right? And so I think it's clear this, this is, um, not something to be afraid of. It's not a change to be afraid of. It's something that we should keep leaning into. The, uh, you know, thank you Julie for the, the updated dashboard. I think that's also really fantastic. I mean, this is, I think, exactly the data that I would want to see as an applicant, right? How long, uh, is this project going to take and how much is it going to cost me? That's really great information to, to have on hand when, when you're going into it. So, um, and, and just, um, a, a couple of questions actually on, on both of those things. So on the dashboard, um, well, on, on everything, it feels like we're moving in the right direction. I, I wish I could say definitively that we are. But like the dashboard, I don't see any change over time, right? So like, it'd be great to see how, how are we doing now ninety days later compared to before this effort, right? And, or how are we going to be doing thirty days from now or sixty days from now? And I think, you know, that, that feedback, um, will be helpful, not only for the board, but for those of you working on this every day. So some, some time element to see, you know, permits issued over time, median approval days over time for the different, uh, permits, I think is, is essential to add to this. Another thing while we're on data is, um, I, I, I think that the three kind of best practice data, um, points to measure are, I mean, we're, we've got a couple of them here, right? Uh, median number of routings, total permits issued, we're doing those. But what I am, I'm not seeing is the percent of, of applications that are submitted complete. If it's possible to measure that, um, I, because I know our next phase of this effort is really to, again, try to simplify the process and remove barriers in the application phase. And we'll kind of know if that's successful, if we're seeing more applications being submitted complete. If there's some other way that you, as, as a department would prefer to measure it, you know, certainly open to that feedback. But I think we need to be able to measure our progress on that front. There's so much of, you know, what feels like, you know, the, the positive momentum here is just talking more with our customers too, right? I mean, it's great to see how much, uh, the walk-in hours have been utilized. Um, and that you're, um, you're even moving towards offering an additional time, right? The, um, nine to ten, I think I said that was with, uh, our inspection team. Is there, are we, uh, have we, are we maxed out in terms of that offering? Would we ever consider expanding those hours a little bit more?
Um, so far we've been able to handle the volume, um, and we're looking, we're still training our new staff. So I don't think we're quite at the point where we're going to expand or need to expand those. But I see in the future that we, we may. But right now we're, we've been able to handle the walk-in volume. Because we can slot people in between appointments. It's not like at nine AM, we, we, we turn people away and we're like, sorry, like that's it for the day. We've been able to handle the volume. But I know, uh, Brian, our UPC manager is working closely with Bailey to monitor. And we can add as, as we add staff too.
Great. I think it's worth mentioning that, uh, in the budget that your board approved included two new permit texts, which I think Jocelyn mentioned in her remarks earlier, that as needed, we could add more resources to those, uh, walk-in hours with that new resource that we've got. Now we have to recruit and add those bodies, but I think that's the future as, as that grows, as that, that need grows.
Right. Yeah, that's great. You know, again, on the theme of communication, um, it seems like, um, you know, making sure that the, uh, permit tech and planners, contact information is included with the comments is really helpful, um, and appreciated. I just wanted, uh, and that is lines up with feedback I've heard, um, from applicants are, are, um, is staff including their phone number as well or is it just email address? I, I know that just sometimes being able to have a conversation, I mean, and granted, as, as someone who receives more phone calls than I can get back to, I understand it's a balance. But yeah, for, for staff, including any, a, a phone number.
They are, yes. Um, I would, they are, yes. We've mandated that requirement for all of our reviewers. I think people find that email is the quickest way to reach us. But yeah, contact information is consistently required across the board.
Okay, great. That's fantastic. You know, maybe even offering the people the opportunity to pay a little bit extra to come in for like some, uh, you know, in face consultation with their, their planners, another suggestion I've just, I've heard from the community. Because having a conversation can, you know, help kind of, I get through some of those roadblocks. And I just, just a option to consider throwing it out there. On the, um, on the surveys, um, again, fantastic, we've had such positive, um, feedback from folks. And I think it's because these, um, uh, appointments have been so, so, uh, so positive and staff has been so helpful. It would be good, I, I'm eager to see how people feel like at the end of the process, not just sort of at the highlight. It's my understanding, based on reading the material, are we, so far we've only sent out the sort of, uh, end of, you know, or permit issuance survey by paper?
I believe so. We have Brian here to speak to, um, that particular survey and the things they're looking at doing.
Uh, hi, everybody. Um, yes, the post-permit approval letter includes a QR link and a direct link to the website where they can do the, um, permit approval response. We're looking at, right now, we haven't got much success in that. So now we're looking at maybe emailing that as an option. We're also looking at possibly integrating that into e-plans, that the account holder gets that immediately when they get their permit card and their downloaded documents as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, it'd be good to move forward with those steps. I think that, I mean, yeah, it's hard to, hard to interact with paper. I'm glad that a QR code has been included. That's, you know, a, a good step, but.
Yeah, we've already identified the issue there and we're looking at other options. So.
Great. Happy to hear it. Okay, I think those are, um, most of my comments. I do, uh, you know, I do agree with this, these kind of general comments about complexity. I mean, even in the ADU item that we'll hear later today, I mean, it's compared to many of the, the different code sections, like relatively easier. And yet you still just have a subsection after subsection and then all these layers of state agencies providing their input multiple. And, and it's, it's no wonder why it's so complex and so expensive to build in our state. And so I am eager to see, uh, sooner rather than later, any suggestions, um, that staff has, uh, on code updates that could help begin to unwind some of those. Oh, one, one last comment, um, and then I'll, I'll, um, hand it over. I, I do really appreciate we, we did go in and look at, um, the comments that staff are leaving and really appreciated to see that they are in fact being excited to encode pretty much very consistently in the planning division. And actually, the only opportunity we saw for improvement was in other divisions, uh, environmental planning, um, environmental health. I mean, public work is a little bit more of a gray area. There's not always things that are necessarily in county code. But I think just, um, making sure that there's an understanding that that directive applies to everyone, not just the planning division and that, um, you know, all divisions are held to the same standards. But really want to applaud the planning division for doing that. I think it's, uh, really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSerphe.
Thank you. Um, so I agree with, you know, much of what my colleagues have said, so I won't belabor, um, those points. Thank you to staff for embracing, um, what, uh, is, is long overdue in terms of, um, changing to help our community get more done and have better satisfaction doing it. Is there anybody here today from Baker Tilling?
Yes, we have Al Zelenka, who's our, our resident community development expert.
That's great. Al, can you step up to the podium if you would? I just have a question for Al real quick. Is it Alan or Al?
It's Al Zelenka.
Hi. Thanks for being here today. So, I mean, you've heard the report, you've seen some progress, you heard the board essentially direct staff with eight additional recommendations based on our, you know, feedback that we've heard from reliable sources in the community that, that use this process all the time. Is there any other recommendation that we haven't adopted that you think is pertinent here or would be helpful?
That is a extremely, uh, important question, Supervisor. I would say there's a lot of recommendations that we're formulating. As Elisa noted, um, this team is really starting to congeal in a, you know, the, the old mid nineteen sixties psychologist, uh, Edward, um, Talkman, who developed that model of teams where you form, storm, norm, perform. This team is in that, uh, kind of the norm, getting ready to perform stage like in a big way. It, as Elisa said, it, it wasn't easy at the front end. But this team is really working well together now. So there are recommendations. I don't want to just, uh, as a consultant, I don't want to just throw them out. But, but I will say there are, um, dimensions to, let's say, the lamp or the code that, um, are worthy of making modifications to make things easier. We heard at the June twelfth stakeholder meeting, for instance, that there are human bridges holding together technology. So there's manual processes that connect from one technology used to another for the permitting process to operate. So the more and staff is with IT, people are all in on figuring out, how do we integrate these technologies? How do we make that more seamless? Cause hearing, uh, the member of the public say that they've not been living in their house for seventeen hundred days is heartbreaking to everyone in this room, uh, including, including staff. And so there is a real, um, focus on making things better. And, um, I've seen just since, you know, I'm the outsider here. One of, by the way, one of the whys that Elisa missed is, one of the whys you're doing this is because you don't want to hire people like me anymore. You, you want to, you want to be able to have this, um, just increasingly be part of the DNA of the, the culture. And so, but, but I, I think to staff, there's a lot of observations with recommendations that are developing. But I don't want to just shoot from the hip here because it wouldn't be fair to the team.
Sure.
As we're working hard together. But I think it's an important question that needs to continuously be asked. What else can we do? What else can we do? What else can we do?
Have you seen anything in, in your work with other counties that could be adopted here? And I understand your respect for the team. We're all working together on this.
I mean, there are, there are counties around the state that have, um, much less complex lamps or provide more alternatives in their lamps. There are, you know, the Business and Professions Code defines what a qualified professional is with respect to reviewing and, um, and, and preparing the plans for septic systems. The Business and Professions Code also allows local counties to amend that definition and add to it in the lamps. I think we really have to look at that, well, because you, the county of Santa Cruz has amended and made, um, what a qualified professional is. Go, go through some more training and, and credentialing. I think we have to look at that and, and, and be, uh, inquisitive about it. If, if there's a, a, a true fundamental reason why those extra requirements for qualified professionals exist in the county. There may be very good reason if there, but if those reasons can be accomplished in other means, through other means, then maybe we reduce that barrier. And, um, but again, it, um, there, there are things in other counties that, that counties are doing. And, um, I also think that we're just at a point now where, I mean, I know I have a list of questions and I think this whole team has a list of questions. We have to take those questions to some peer counties and see what they're doing in response to those questions. Just like the, uh, the, the supervisor Koenig asked, how does this compare to other counties in terms of numbers? I think we really have to, um, uh, ask some peer counties. How, how are you doing and how are you addressing these various, um, topics? I know I'm not being as specific as you probably want me to, but it's, it's really out of, um, I, I, I want to give good, good information, not shoot from the hip information.
It's been helpful. Thank you. Um, okay. I think that's sufficient. And then with the grand jury just came out with a report that echoes much of what I think this board has seen. I, am I allowed to talk about any of that right now? Because we haven't talked about it as a board yet, the grand jury report that just came out. There's just some recommendations on there. I just wanted to.
It's, it's, it's public.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, just, yeah, thanks. So one of the recommendations, uh, from the grand jury was an ombudsman to help people sort of shepherd things through if they had complaints. I think what you're seeing now is that this board is, is serving as your ombudsman. Like we, we get the complaints, we send them to Matt. I, I worry that Matt can't do his actual job because he's dealing with so many complaints from the board members. But, uh, you know, I know our budget is very lean. I'm guessing that it's not something that we could budget for now in ombudsman. But have, have, have any of you seen that in other counties or we, have we ever done that here before?
Well, you know, I don't know what other counties have, but I do know that our UPC manager, Brian Rubin, is that ombudsman. I mean, he really is. And, and, uh, depending on the, the type of complaint, um, that either I or Jocelyn or, or Stephanie Hanson receives, we forward them to Brian or depends on what the topic is, but, uh, we have that. We feel like we have a lot of that in play right now. I think the grand jury report commented that it's too big a job for say, the UPC manager to do their day job and the ombudsman. But I don't know that we've seen that. And, and now that we have, uh, more full staff, uh, there was a time where we didn't have, um, a chief building official. There was a time we didn't have a front counter supervisor. So then Brian was way too, spread way too thin. Jocelyn was spread too thin, but now that we've staffed those positions, uh, we feel like we are probably in a good position to provide that service at a greater depth.
That's great. And do you feel like overall you have enough staff in the department to meet all the needs at this point?
I think the addition of the two permit texts is a great add. And I think as we implement these, uh, work plan projects, we'll know if it, if it'll lead to, uh, more staff needs. But today I would say no. But I do know that, I do know that one of the greatest needs that everybody has is, is more communication. And I'll say like more handholding. And we don't know the extent of that yet with these process improvements. Um, I could see in the future where that handholding could get to a next level where we may need more staff. A great example was our four-leaf contract. And we know what kind of handholding they did and it was fabulous, but it was at a cost. And so I think I've shared those numbers in the past. We're not there yet. We think we're, we're absolutely where we need to be today as we kick off these projects. And, uh, and maybe with technology, we can streamline and with process improvement, we can streamline where our existing staff will transition into these different functions without needing more staff. So that really is our hope that these other improvements with technology and process will, will help, uh, support the existing staff.
Thank you.
Can I add one more?
Yeah.
I, I take your question around the need from ombudsman as really an invitation. I take your question around the need from ombudsmen as really an invitation as we develop these scorecards. Like, what would we be tracking to understand whether we have sufficient capacity or not? So I don't know what that looks like, but I'm just, that's what that sort of prompted for me, that the team can talk about. Okay, you know, how would we know? So let us, let us think about it and about how can we actually measure something that is an indicator of whether, how we're resolving these things in a timely way or just the complaints going down. That would be a great one.
Thank you very much, and thank you to staff. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work as well. You know, I do like all the graphs, the visual graphs, the dashboards, the quick wins visuals. You know, it'd be good to see if we can also add things like, you know, one of the callers mentioned, ADUs, ADUs that got done in this dashboard, subdivisions, permits processed and completed, like Supervisor Conig was saying. Another great one would be probably every six months for five years to see how, like a, sort of like a barometer update on our arena numbers, see how we're completing those every six months, every six months, every year, to see how we're doing on that, just to kind of make it as more like a goals oriented, like a carrot, right? But yeah, I think those kinds of things are really great that you guys are providing today. And I think there's more opportunities with that. Two quick questions. I remember before hearing that there's going to be a South County permitting office in the future. Is that going to happen in the near future?
You know, when we, when we did the remodel at 500 West Ridge, we did build into a flexible counter space that we could transition and provide certain services. We started to talk about that now that 500 West Ridge is in full effect and being used. And so we're starting those conversations if we can have the space there, if we can put enough staff there to manage it. It's a conversation. So it's an active conversation and we can add that into our reports as we go forward.
Definitely, definitely. And the other question is, you know, Supervisor De Sera was saying that we kind of serve as this ombudsman where we get the emails, we get the people in our offices. And I was wondering, with this new software that is going to be purchased, are we going to be able, as our supervisors' offices, to be able to look into these cases and see exactly where the bottleneck is from our office?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, the software, the technology that we're really looking into is really to to join our existing tools together. Today, we have great tools, but they act very independently. And so when we're trying to use them together, there's a lot of physical, you know, copy and paste or connectivity, and that's inefficient. And so the technology we're talking about is really to join those existing systems together. I would say that in order, like even today, if you want to check status of anything, you actually have that capability today. And I think what we can do is we can coordinate with your office and show you how to get to those permit statuses and understand where applicants are stuck. So we can do that or.
So we'll know what office to call or what person?
Sure.
To get an update from that?
We, yes.
Like on those, based on the software, the lookup, the search, we're able to find out, like you said, where it's at in the process and who to call?
I think, yes. But what I would say, I mean, you can see who's reviewing what today on the GIS, actually. You can look and say, oh, you know, Public Works Drainage is complete, zoning is complete, and maybe it's under building review. And you can say, oh, so they're not stuck, but they're at the building review comment point. And so with that knowledge, we do know who to call. And that's where we probably need to communicate and coordinate. And then we could, you know, inform you on who to call or, you know, that most of it actually would probably go through Brian, to be honest. And so he carries quite a load. I'm not trying to throw him out there because I don't want him to get completely inundated. But the truth of it is, is he manages, he manages all of these types of issues. And he is very quick and efficient about figuring out where a project is and providing a status. And we've done that amongst ourselves here where we email back and say, well, the status of the project is here. But we can do more of that if you're, if you would like.
Okay. Well, that concludes my comments. For the sake of time, with that, I'll bring you back to the board to entertain a motion.
I'll move the recommended actions.
Second, we have a motion from Supervisor Cummings and a second from Hernandez.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment. I just, I feel like we're making great progress here. I'm just not ready to take our foot off the gas with, you know, the full six months. And even the staff, you were suggesting that maybe it would be October and not December. So I just, I would suggest that as a friendly amendment, that we direct staff to return on or before September 29th with a report on progress, updated metrics, and including detail on code updates, specifically near-term code updates that incorporates feedback from planners, permit texts, and Baker Tilly.
Well, you guys are going to come back October anyways?
We were going to come back on CZU in October.
Can we, do you want to mention, lend them?
Sure, that could be.
Okay. Can you repeat?
Sure. Mostly just asking for the next reporting update on this to be at the end of September, so three months rather than.
So we can get the update with CZU and then that can.
If that, if, is it okay if we do it in October?
We have the schedule for, the scheduled date for.
I don't know if we have the scheduled date.
Probably in October.
First half of October. How about that?
Okay, first half of October.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second and amendment. Motion from Supervisor Cummings, second from Hernandez.
Supervisor De Sera. I. Cummings.
I.
Martinez.
I.
Conig.
I.
And Hernandez.
I. Motion passes unanimously. So we do have a scheduled item for 1:30. And we do have a closed session that's going to be over an hour. And I just want to remind our board that we have not even completely finished consent agenda yet. Then we finished item 6.3 in less than two minutes. Supervisor Martinez?
It's me.
He pulled it. Let's see what he's got for us.
Okay, let's do it.
All right, so item number 39 paper was accept notice and of and consider the Women's Commission's Recommended Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. This is something that, based on the general report and just from talking to some of the members of the women's commission that they've been working on. And I just feel like having this on consent, if we were to approve it today, wouldn't really give us an opportunity to have a discussion about the different recommendations from the Women's Commission. And I just think that, you know, really wanting to be respectful of our commissioners and the time that they're putting in. I think it really is worth us inviting the, you know, whether it's the chair, the vice chair, or their recommendees to come and give a presentation on these items. Because while there are some that may be costly that we can't implement now, there, I was looking through, and there are a few that seem like, you know, that we could move forward with sooner than later. For example, looking at pay disparities between women and men, you know, and county workers. Like, that doesn't seem like that's that huge of a lift. But if we were to prove this on consent today, this would kind of just go off onto some shelf somewhere we might not ever revisit it. So I'm going to propose that we bring this item back, that we continue the item to the second meeting in August and invite the chair, vice chair, or two designees to come present the recommendations and have it on our regular agenda so we can discuss what recommendations were provided and then, you know, whether there are opportunities for us to move forward on those recommendations.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone online?
I see no speakers online.
I'll bring you back to the board.
So we continue this item to the second meeting in August and invite the chair and vice chair or two designees to present the recommendations to the board as a regularly scheduled agenda item.
Second, we have a motion for Supervisor Cummings and a second from Hernandez. Can we take roll call vote?
Supervisor Conig.
I.
Martinez.
I.
Cummings.
I.
De Sera.
I.
And Hernandez.
I. Motion passes unanimously. Sorry about that. I just really wanted to make sure we get at a consent agenda before 2:00. We do have a regularly scheduled item at 1:45. We'll come back at this 1:30, sorry, 1:30, not 1:35. 1:30 and we'll go into closed session now. Is there anything to report on closed session? No. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Good afternoon. For those of you joining us online, we'll be preparing to resume the meeting shortly. Thank you.
I think we'll begin right now. We have corn. Thank you for being here for the scheduled item for 1:30. Next on the item, agenda number 13, considering authorized the issuance of a proclamation honoring Chief Probation Officer Fernando Giraldo on his retirement to be signed by all members of the board. I'll begin by reading the proclamation. And they put the writing really small. I have to put on my glasses here. So much information. Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors proclaimed honoring Chief Fernando Giraldo on his occasion of his retirement, whereas Chief Fernando Giraldo will officially retire on July 25, 2025, including his ex. Oh, thank you. Much needed coffee. County Board of Supervisors, county administrator of office and presiding judge of Superior Court entrusted Chief Giraldo to oversee and modernize the county's probation department, supervision practices, initiatives, and to lead a multidisciplinary team of dedicated staff. A servant, a leader, Chief Giraldo cultivated an exclusive leadership pipeline, prioritized workforce development and advanced organizational performance through strategic planning, data-driven evaluation, and a commitment to partnership. Under Chief Giraldo's stewardship, Santa Cruz County became one of the first sites in California to implement the blueprint for shared safety, placing crime survivors, healing, and prevention at the center of justice strategies, while also launching a $2 million racial equity-focused community grant-making process and increasing support for culturally responsive nonprofit partners. Chief Giraldo was instrumental in reducing local youth detention by over 75% through evidence-based alternatives, including development of Luna Evening Center in 2005, the creation of two probation success centers, and the implementation of restorative practices and diversion programs that build public safety through opportunity rather than punishment. A respected national leader, Chief Giraldo chaired Santa Cruz County's model site practices with over 100 jurisdictions through ANE, AC Foundation, and National Institute of Corrections, and provided technical assistance in cultural competency, racial disparity reduction, probation transformation, and cognitive behavioral therapy for which he introduced the Thinking for Change program in Santa Cruz County. Chief Giraldo's contributions have been recognized with numerous honors, including Santa Cruz County Employee of the Year, the 2013 Community Hero Award, United Way's Lifetime Achievement Award, and the California Visionary Probation Chief of the Year Award in 2024, each affirming the breadth and depth of his influence and knowledge. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Chief Giraldo chaired the California Sex Offenders Management Board, which served 10 years on the United Way Board, including five years as chair. Co-founded the Santa Cruz County Youth Violence Prevention Task Force and led his voice statewide, planning initiatives that centered around justice with compassion and integrity. Now, therefore, the members of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize and commend Chief Fernando Giraldo on his exemplary career, his bold leadership in transforming public safety and tireless dedication to justice, equity, and community wellness, and extend our deepest appreciation, admiration, and congratulations on this well-earned retirement. But all that, and he also plays in the band. I don't know if you guys people know that. He's in the rock band, too. Jumping the gun here. Okay. We'll take it out to a public comment. If anyone would like to address us on today's item? The electeds?
Well, I, as a former county supervisor, I really miss you guys, really. Yeah, really. I just want to say that Fernando's been the probation officer, chief probation officer, much of my career in the county government. And his predecessor was really known statewide, nationwide for innovation and really good things that could happen to make these people, they're mostly youngsters, really get their act together and get back. And how can anybody match that? Well, Fernando has, and he's done so much, as we know. I attended a session back in Philadelphia early on. And I remember that that time, Vance Jones and Newt Gingrich were talking to each other about these kinds of things, about, you know, helping people and so getting them back on the right track. And Fernando was there to follow up on that. He has been really phenomenal with the things that you have mentioned of what he has done, the innovation in this day and age, in a very changing world. But thanks to Fernando and, you know, his staff, too. They're phenomenal. We worked really hard on the Graham Hill facility as well. He is just a champion, I think, of, in the probation profession. And he, I hate to see him go in Santa Cruz County government. And all I can say is that I'm lucky that I, he was here when I was a board member. Fernando Giraldo is an outstanding probation officer. Santa Cruz County is very lucky to have had him for so many years.
Hi, good afternoon. So I'm Nicole Coburn, Assistant CEO. I currently supervise Chief Giraldo, and I just wanted to congratulate him on his retirement and to address the board today, this very special moment. I started 12 years ago. I've been with the county for the whole time that Fernando has been chief. And it's been an absolute honor and pleasure to work with him first as his analyst and then as his supervisor. He's really one of our most innovative and forward-thinking department heads in terms of thinking of the outcomes from the work that the county is doing. He never hesitates to collaborate with other departments or partners within the community. And it's just been a real pleasure to been his partner on so many projects from the Juvenile Hall Construction to Results First was one of the first things we worked on together. And just continuing through the Community Corrections Partnership on an annual basis, trying to really invest in the best uses of our AB 109 realignment dollars for the community. So thank you and congratulations, Fernando.
Hi, everyone. My name is Elisa Murillo. I'm a field representative for Assembly Speaker Robert Rivas. And I'm here today with some of my colleagues, Kalida from Senator John Laird's office and Lizette from Assemblywoman Gail Pellerin's office. And we are here today to present this assembly resolution as resolved by the Speaker of the Assembly, Robert Rivas, Assembly Members Dawn Addis and Gail Pellerin and Senator John Laird. and Senator John Laird, that Chief Probation Officer Fernando Giraldo be commended for his long and distinguished record of public service and extend best wishes for a rewarding and active retirement.
Would anyone else like to come up to the podium and speak on this item?
I'd say a few words.
We'll check online real quick. Anyone online?
We have no speakers online, chair.
Okay, sure. Come on up.
Oh, well, this is a tremendous honor. So first of all, thank you, board. I appreciate the proclamation. Thirty years goes by super, super fast. I feel like I just started, and there's so much more to do. I am grateful for the opportunity to work for the county, to work for Carlos, Nicole. I want to thank, first of all, my family. Most of them are here right in this first aisle, my two children. I have a third that's coming, but I think she's going to be late. My wonderful wife, who's supported me. When I started here, I did not have children. I now have three children. So that's a lifetime, and they're all mostly grown-up adults now. And so it's been fascinating. I want to thank my probation team here. The leadership team is here and other staff here. Thank you for supporting me and all the amazing, amazing work that you've accomplished. The department is in really good hands. I assure you of that. We've done a lot of work to make sure of that. And so I'm grateful. See Ajita back there. It's been nice working with you, Ajita, too. So, and everyone else. Hope I did. And Bruce, thank you for coming. I really appreciate that. Very kind words. So, thank you. It's been an honor to serve, and I'll still be in the area, so I'm sure I may see you. Thank you.
But then I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you. Well, Supervisor McPherson, before you leave, we have an ADU item next, if you want to stay away in or come back for septic, so I don't know. So, Chief Giraldo, I just want to extend my deepest gratitude and appreciation. This is a new rule for me, sitting up here. My prior life has been working with you, serving our community in the community-based organization field. And I can say firsthand that many, many lives have changed as a result of your work. And so, thank you for your investment in our community, your belief in the potential of youth. And we are going to sorely miss you, but you've left a lasting legacy and impact here. So thank you so much.
Supervisor Koenig.
Just want to thank you, Fernando, for your incredible service to this county. There's never been any doubt in my mind that probation, that you were managing it just perfectly. I mean, you've been the incredible chief of second chances. I can't imagine a better man for the job. And there's that data to prove it. You know, you've been a real innovator, right up here to the end, right, to proposing a secure youth facility and even a ranch camp without a ranch, which took us a little bit of, you know, conceptual, whatever, realignment, if you will. But ultimately, I mean, it's clear that you always have the youth's best interest at heart, and really everyone who goes through the system, and that these innovative programs you've helped set up are really for the betterment of our community. And I do hope that, you know, you experience that thing in retirement where all of a sudden you realize there's all these other things you want to do and other ways that you want to stay involved, and that we'll continue to see you here in the board chambers. Thanks.
Supervisor Cummings?
Well, I just want to start by thanking you for being able to think differently. Because, you know, there's a lot of folks who come into our chambers and they talk to us about the reforms that they want to see. And oftentimes, that's based on kind of things that they've heard about in other communities throughout the country. But one of the things I've always encouraged folks to do, like, well, why don't you go and, like, you know, talk to the probation director? Or I'll make them aware of how we're doing things differently. And, you know, it's really reflective because while we'll have people come in and complain and say, you know, we have this 40-bedroom, juvenile hall, and there's only seven youth that are in there. It's like, yeah, that's a good thing, because it means that we're keeping them out of the system. I mean, if our juvenile hall was overflowing with kids, I would say like, that's a problem that we need to solve in our community. And it's a problem that you have actually taken on and been a champion at trying to figure out ways that when kids come into the system, how do we keep them out, and how do we keep them out in a way that it's going to better their lives? And I know we always talk about youth, but there's also adults that come through as well. And I know that you all have done a lot to try to help adults get on a better path towards success and trying to divert them from our criminal justice system. And I think that that's something that is reflected in the culture of your team, which is great because that means we can continue doing that good work moving forward and continue to be example for the rest of the country of how we can think differently and do things differently. So I just want to thank you for choosing Santa Cruz County and for being a role model for so many other communities out there. We're really going to miss you. But, you know, you live in Santa Cruz for a reason, so now you can be on vacation every day. So enjoy, and thank you again.
Supervisor Serba?
Thank you. You may know that I started my career in child welfare, where I met Shannon Sealy, Fernando's beautiful and talented wife. Shannon and I worked side by side, and she went on to have a private practice where she takes high-conflict couples that have children that are in the middle of two parents that are trying to break up. She does an amazing job at that, and I've sent multiple people to her over the years. So I'm going to say thank you to Shannon, right, for helping so many kids and families in our community. There's almost nobody that will take those type of cases in the community, and you're one of them. So Fernando, you're a lucky man, and I know you already know that. But in terms of your career, I mean, it's unheralded. You've done such a good job. I mean, I've said it before on the mic, your team has gotten so many accolades and so many awards for being sort of state-of-the-art and a model for the nation in terms of how to do it right. So thank you, and I feel very confident in the team that you have around you, that they're going to continue on the good work. And I'm just so impressed with everything you've done. And just selfishly, you know, since I sort of have a connection to you over all these years, it's been really nice to pick up the phone and say, hey, what's going on with whatever? And I feel like the older I'm getting, I'm sort of losing those connections. And I think that just happens naturally through attrition. But I'm really glad that you're retiring, and you've earned it. So go have a great retirement and a great life.
Supervisor Hernandez, if I could comment?
Yes.
Fernando, I just want to thank you very much for your public service. Your department is one of the departments that, at the very beginning, I was so impressed when I came to the county. And I often held your department up as a model for the rest of the county. In fact, I often spoke to people about your department and how you've been very open to new ideas, to being creative, but also measurement and seeing what works. And it's just something now that we're doing throughout the county, but you were a trailblazer in that, and I really do appreciate that. The other thing is that you've always been a very caring person about the community. And I was the city manager in Watsonville when we did have 60 kids in juvenile hall. And I know how that was and how destructive a policy that was. I also know that you've made tremendous inroads, not only in helping those youth that were formerly in the jail, but now out in the streets, but also helping their families as well. And you saw that family connection and how important that was as well. Throughout all of your work, you always had a heart for the community. You cared about people, and I really, really value that. So thank you very much, and I wish you the best in retirement. Hopefully one day, someday, I'll join you, too.
You guys can start a band together. You know, I want to thank you for everything as well, too, Fernando. You know, your department, you're always out there for all these events that we have everywhere, from, you know, the holiday toy drive, from National Night Out, to, you know, the Halloween event that we have. And like I said, it's not just your staff, but the leadership is there. You're there on the weekends, evenings, being a leader in the community, really being part of embracing the community as well. And I want to say that, how do I put this? So there's no better way to get a compliment than probably like, people there are the biggest thorns, right? To you, not to, but so one of the things that, like Justin was saying, is that I've always met with all these groups, and I've always asked, like, so what could we do better? Have you seen any counties that have done different things? And the response I always got from folks is like, no, well, he's doing all the cutting-edge innovative things, out of the box, you know, programs that he's doing. And the things they do mention to me, they're nonprofits that are doing them, not counties themselves. So I thought, well, maybe we ought to step up the nonprofit game up here. But I think I saw that, when I heard that, I saw that as like the biggest compliment that I got for you, actually, that you could take with you and go home with, that even people that have been, you know, consistently trying to change programs really admire everything that you've done. So thank you for that. And with that, we will bring it back to the board if there's anyone else to make an entertaining motion.
I was just going to move approval of the resolution. Second.
We got a motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from Supervisor Cummings?
Supervisor DeServa?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Will the board join me in taking in a picture with Chief Fernando? Oh, congratulations.
Thanks again. Thank you for the kind words, everyone.
You can come on this side, too. You're going to have to give us a schedule for the band.
Yeah, that's my retirement plan, I think. Supervisor saw me playing one day and was like, oh.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is number 14, considered authorized the issuance of a proclamation honoring Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Edith Driscoll on her retirement to be signed by all members of the board. And I'll begin this presentation by reading the proclamation. Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors here proclaim honoring Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Edith Driscoll on the occasion of her retirement. Edith Driscoll was elected Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector in 2016, and has served with integrity, dedication, and distinction in safeguarding the public resources and advancing financial transparency, transparency, and accountability for the county. Edith has dedicated 29 years as the Auditor's Controller's office and has played a key role in implementing a Y2K-compliant countywide accounting system early in her career as a county internal auditor, before moving on to serve as County Audit and Systems Manager and Chief Deputy Auditor. Edith has led an office responsible for managing over $760 million annually in property and special taxes, including transient occupancy tax, cannabis business tax, and single-use cup tax, ensuring responsible fiscal stewardship and transparency in public finance. Under Edith's leadership, the county investment pool grew from $687 million to over $1.4 billion, managed with a steadfast commitment to the principles of safety, liquidity, and yield, ensuring the responsible stewardship of public funds and supporting financial stability of numerous local agencies. Edith played a critical role managing disaster-related funding during wildfires, floods, and the COVID-19 pandemic, demonstrating exceptional financial leadership during times of crisis and hardship. Edith also championed improved access to county services by opening a second office in Watsonville. Edith secured significant revenue agreements with vacation rental platforms to improve the collection of $14 million in annual transient occupancy tax revenue, further supporting essential community services. After nearly three decades of service, marked by financial acumen, innovation, and commitment to public accountability, Edith Driscoll would retire, leaving behind a legacy of excellence and impactful service to the people of Santa Cruz County. Therefore, the members of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors extend their deepest gratitude and commendation to Edith Driscoll for her 29 years of distinguished service, visionary leadership, and unwavering dedication to the fiscal health and well-being of Santa Cruz County. So with that, I would like to see if anyone from the public can address us on today's item. Come on up.
My name is Mary Jo Walker. You don't know me, and I don't know any of you. But I was Edith's boss for 10 years. I was the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. Was the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer. Demanding service from you is because I moved to Marin County four years ago. Otherwise, I'd be down here bugging you. The county has always been fortunate to have good Auditor, Controllers. I'll mention that because I know the Auditor, Controller side, the history of that side, more than the Treasurer, Tax Collector side. My predecessor, Gary Knudsen, did that job for 19 years, almost 20 years, and I was his chief deputy. And, you know, he did a great job, including hiring me, hiring Edith, and hiring Laura. He hired all three of us. So he knew a good thing when he saw it. He really did. And then there was me. I was proud to serve the county, and I think I did a good job. And one of the best things that I did was ask Edith Driscoll to be my chief deputy. And I think she was my chief deputy for five or six or seven years, something. Well, I was there for 10 years, but I don't know that you were right from the beginning. But anyway. And I spent 30 years in local government, you know, most of my career. And I think I have a pretty good idea what a local government chief financial officer needed. And Edith had all of that stuff, all the things that you've already mentioned. And of course, the technical skills, that goes without saying, you know, the old saying, it don't mean a thing if you ain't got that swing. Well, that's the way it is with technical skills. You know, she has to have that. And then all the soft skills, you know, she's pleasant, she's a team player, she's a good manager. You can't be a good executive without being a good manager. But I think I would have to say her most outstanding skill was her organizational skills. It was, I mean, just imagine trying to run that office through COVID. And many other things I could go on to say, but I see that my time has run out. She has, of course, has the
Let you speak.
Has the, of course, she has the respect of her peers in other counties, and she represented the county of Santa Cruz well on a statewide basis. And I always felt that the greatest pleasure, the greatest honor, was the respect of your peers, you know, because they know what kind of job you pleasure, the greatest um, honor was the respect of your peers, you know, because they know what kind of job you do. So um, I know Laura's gonna do a great job. I know Edith did a great job because she was a terrific employee when I was here. Thank you very much and welcome to Persland.
Uh, excuse me for uh, hi, uh, logging the mic again, but I just want to say, uh, timing is everything. And Edith, did you have any idea? Two thousand sixteen, we were gonna have eight federally declared disaster areas. Uh, and then she had to see us through that as auditor, controller, and yada, 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 those other six things that she does and does them so well. And uh, I was on the visit Santa Cruz Board as well and implement that to get the tax structure going to everybody was, was really on the same page. That was fantastic. And then we had the cannabis tax. So she's been through some things that uh, no other auditor, controller, treasurer, tax player, blah, blah, blah. It has, has uh, not been able to uh, thankfully, it will go through. But uh, and she, she is just so precise in what she does and says, this is what we need to do and how we can do it. This is what we have. Let's get real people. Um, so and with the county's tax structure, the way it is, it's challenging to begin with. But then try to put something new together as she has done under some of the most trying circumstances and really keep um, Santa Cruz County uh, in the black. It's really, really important. Uh, as you all know, uh, it's not easy to do. Uh, you, and uh, she is uh, one that we can trust to say, this is the right way to do this and get our credit rating the, the best we can. She's done it all. And I just can't tell you how much I appreciate her being uh, auditor, controller on uh, my eight years or well, eight of twelve years on the Board of Supervisors, uh, felt confident every time that we were in very good hands uh, in a financial sen- sense in Santa Cruz County. Edith Driscoll is really a special person and she served county, Santa Cruz County very well. Thank you.
Is there anyone else before, okay, there you go.
Um, on behalf of uh, Speaker Rivas and Senator Laird and Assembly Member Gail Pellerin, we also wanted to thank Edith for her service to the county and congratula- congratulations on her retirement.
Okay. So, good afternoon again, Nicole Coburn, Assistant C O. I'm here with Melisino, Deputy C E O, Lisa Benson, Assistant C E O, and Christina Mowry, our retired county budget manager. And we have all played a critical role with Edith on budget, debt financing, and all the things, financial matter related. And we just want to say thank you, Edith, for working with us and shepherding us through some very challenging bond issuances such as last year's um, disaster debt financing. Um, you've been a tremendous partner and we really appreciate all of your years of service.
Is there anyone online?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
With that, I'll bring back to the board. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Edith, for your public service to this county. When I think about what your job does, it sounds like you have one of the, the hardest jobs in our county and also one of the most complex. And I don't know how you make it look so fun all the time because your energy um, and the joy that you bring to this building and to your work um, is really palpable. And so um, I want to congratulate you on your retirement and thank you for your service. Um, and thank you for leaving us um, with such a rock solid, well, in good hands and with us such a rock solid foundation to build from because um, you really exemplify our county's values of integrity and trust. Um, and we're so fortunate. So um, you're leaving this office in, in great, in great shape and in good hands. Thank you.
Supervisor Koenig?
Yeah, thank you so much, Edith. It's been a pleasure working with you. Uh, you've taught me more than I ever wanted to know about the county budget. Um, but uh, you, you just always bring, as Supervisor Martinez said, so much energy and humor uh, to the room. It's um, really, we're just gonna miss your presence in the building. And uh, yeah, I, I do feel very confident um, in your successor, Laura Bowers. So thank you for um, teaching her so much. And uh, hope to see you around.
Supervisor Cummings?
Yeah, I just wanna um, also share my appreciation for your many, many years of dedicated service to this community. Finance is not my strong suit, so it's really nice to see people who are so dedicated to ensuring that um, not only are, is our county fiscally stable, but we're fiscally responsible. Because oftentimes, the one thing we hear from folks is, you know, they want to make sure that their tax dollars are getting spent right. And I think as the county, we want to make sure those tax dollars are actually making it to the coffers of the county. And um, you've just done a tremendous job of leading with integrity and making sure that uh, we're in a position where we're um, not only fiscally stable, but you know, when disasters do strike and we do need to, you know, um, bond for, for funding, that we're in a position where we're able to do so because of our fiscal, because of our fiscal responsibility over the years, you know, having a good credit rating means that when disaster strikes, we're gonna be able to take care of ourselves. And that has largely been due to the work that you've done and the staff that you've been able to um, have around you. And so again, I think we're in a really great position moving forward and, and um, you know, hoping that um, you and Fernando can, can kick it on the beach and enjoy these beautiful days and not have to be stuck behind these walls when, when it's uh, when it's amazing weather outside. So thank you again, and I'm sure we'll see you around.
C E O Carlos, oh.
Wait, I have something first. Um, so Edith, as you retire, I'd like to celebrate a career defined by excellence, integrity, unwavering public service. Your steady leadership as auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector has guided Santa Cruz County through both challenges and growth with transparency diligence and care. Your commitment to responsible stewardship of public resources um, has left a lasting legacy of fiscal health and trust. We thank you for your years of tireless service and wish you all the best. I'd like to underscore, like, you know, recently, and I know this is something that you do on your job, probably regularly, routinely, year, year over year, but you called me personally to let me know that someone's house was essentially going into foreclosure due to unpaid tax lanes or whatever. And and would I like the opportunity to go out and talk to those people? And I just thought your compassion around that. I, I think other um, people in your position potentially would not have done something like that. And I really appreciated your care and compassion around that issue. Um, I, you live in my district, District Two, and I hope I get to see you around there and let me know if your road needs any repair. You will get right on that. But I do look forward to seeing you relaxed and enjoying your retirement. So thank you for all the years that you've put in.
Okay, um, Edith, I want to thank you for your partnership in helping to lead uh, county government over the last um, decade for me. I know that uh, many people don't understand your role in the, in the public. They don't understand that you're the CFO for a one point four billion dollar corporation. And often, especially the narrative right now in the federal level, uh, where public servants are disparaged and not appreciated. Uh, I always think of you and the honor and the professionalism you have brought to your role and um, your partnership. Uh, we've been through some hard times together. I specifically remember um, two thousand twenty when COVID hit and the shutdown started in March and our revenues fell off a cliff. And the federal government had no plan for governments like us. We just lost uh, a big chunk of our money. And we had to take fourteen billion, fourteen million, not billion, million out of our reserves just to keep our, our county whole, solvent. And then uh, later we ended up doing other budget solutions. But I specifically remember meeting with Edith during that time and figuring out we're gonna go bankrupt. We're not gonna be able to make payroll. But we had reserves and the reserves were something that Edith has championed throughout her career and she helped us um, build up those reserves. And so, and then they came, she told the board that they were needed and why they were needed, and then they were. And they really saved us. And so I really thank you. And then in um, basically, when we had to issue the debt last year for roads, um, that was a very precarious moment as well where we have spent two hundred and fifty million dollars in, in road repairs and of responding to natural disasters. And then suddenly we realized that FEMA was not paying us very timely, to the point where we had over ninety million dollars in outstanding um, payments that were due from FEMA that we were not going to see anytime soon because of their, their own issues. FEMA has its own problems. And so again, we had another very precarious moment where we had a major crisis in government and Edith helped us solve that. I won't say that she's calm. She's not. She's very strong in voicing her opinion. But she's always incredibly creative and professional and solution oriented. And she always helped us solve our problems. And we did. And so I just thank you for the partnership. I couldn't have done it without you. And I look forward to um, again, joining you someday in retirement. Thank you.
Edith? Yeah, this is um, I, I really want to celebrate you in, in, in two ways. You know, first of all, you're, you're just amazing at your job. You've been an incredible steward of the county's finances and it's just been such a pleasure to work with you so closely over the years. We have spent hours and hours in meetings together. In the level of professionalism you brought and acuity and intelligence and it's, one only needs to Google what can go wrong in California when one doesn't have an Edith Driscoll as their CFO. It, to, to see what it would be like. And we never had to deal with that. Second thing though is you're just such a fantastic person. And I, I, you know, your empathy and your compassion, similar to what Supervisor De Sera was saying. Um, your kindness comes out in everything that you do. Uh, and I just appreciate you very much. And I'm gonna miss you. Um, miss working with you and wish you the very best in your, in your next adventures.
I'll say a few words before uh, we begin. But you know, I, I, I definitely have to say that, like someone mentioned here before, that you have one of the most difficult jobs. Uh, for me, even pronouncing your title gives me anxiety. Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Edith Driscoll. But you know, thank you so much for your hard work, your years of dedication, commitment. And you know, it like, it shows, you know, from our C E O to our legal, all your staff that has been here in the past and future, uh, all agree that, you know, they there's a lot of integrity and dedication that, that takes place in that office. So thank you for that. And thank you for the South County Center as well. You know, we have services now that will be provided from the office. Uh, you, you know, I have to say that definitely, you know, accountability, stewardship of finances is one of the strong, uh, uh, I guess, one of the stronghold possessions that you have. Uh, you know, I, I think that I'm probably one of the, one of the people in the county that submitted the most items that got denied. So thank you for the accountability. So with that, yes.
Unlike Fernando, I brought some notes. So thank you for those kind words and the proclamation. Uh, do this. Uh, I did make a few notes. You never know what's gonna be in those proclamations. Uh, I didn't know the details from my twenty eight year career, which ones would make it into the proclamation. But I can share that nineteen ninety six, I was a grad student in San Francisco working on my master's degree studying accounting and taxation. I would commute from my home in Felton, Felton, where we go, Felton, to the city. All along, listening to cassette tapes where I had pre-recorded the tax code to listen to a member. I did not anticipate in nineteen ninety six, I would be hired here as the auditor one to implement the Y two K upgrade in the accounting system. Or that later, Mary Jo Walker, who's here today, would hire me to be her chief deputy. I certainly never thought I would later oversee things like auditing the county's cannabis retail stores or collecting millions in property taxes. I didn't expect that I would be a department head during the COVID epidemic, learning alongside my fellow department heads how to lead empowering Zoom meetings, as if those things could ever exist. Uh, I also didn't expect that I would have the opportunity to work with Jason Heath during the C Z U fire. He and I led the donation site and saw many a people give so much to those who were injured and affected. Being elected to this position has given me the opportunity to work with fellow colleagues who, like myself, have selected a career in public service. When asked what my job is, the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, I summarize my four titles into one statement. I safeguard the assets of the taxpayer, but of course, I cannot do that alone. I appreciate the relationships I've had with your board and the previous board. Bruce being here today, the C E O, the previous C E O and his many staff people, including Nicole and her team. The county council and his staff, who was up there for a moment, Ruby. Each of you have helped me serve the citizens to the best of my ability and I thank you. I want to specifically state my appreciation to the amazing and skilled financial staff of the auditor, controller staff that are here pouring out into the hallway. And also, but also the many departments who have prioritized accounting and making safeguarding the assets of the county their top priority. Now, as the auditor, controller, chief deputy Laura Bowers likes to say, I provide guidance and knowledge through storytelling. In other words, I tell a lot of helpful and historical stories at work. In retirement, I will now show those, share those helpful stories with my family. I want to thank my wife Anita, who has been so supportive of me in this elected role and during all of my twenty eight years at the county. When I was elected, she took early retirement from her teaching career. Not only did she give time to raising our two sons, but as a credentialed English teacher, she has edited all my public documents and written my election items. You have all greatly benefited from her skills that I do not have. In closing, I never expected the degree I was seeking in nineteen ninety six would lead me to the position of auditor, controller, tax collector, from which I am now retiring. And again, I thank you.
With that, I'll bring it back to the board to entertain a motion.
Second?
We have a motion from Supervisor Koenig, a second from Supervisor De Sera.
Supervisor De Sera, aye. Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Will the board join me in taking a photo op?
We do.
Have we do, yeah, that ceremonial handshake. Congratulations.
Thank you all. At three o'clock, we have cake and coffee.
Yeah, see, well, there's cake and coffee, move it along.
Where's everyone going? We have A D U's to talk about.
So 11:45, number seven, Jesus. You know, wait for staff to come in. Hmm. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. We are on the first item, number seven. Next item is to consider approval of the Measure D five-year plan for fiscal year 2025-26 and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to David Carlson, Resource Planner for the presentation and.
And you've got Steve Weisner.
Yeah, Steve Weisner. I put the wrong person on there. All right. Thank you. Steve Weisner.
Good afternoon, Chair Hernandez and Board members and CEO Palacios and members of the public who are still here. My name is Steve Weisner. I'm Assistant Director in Public Works with CDI. And here with me today is Casey Carlson, our Senior Civil Engineer in charge of the County's pavement management program. And in the chambers is also Matt Machado, our Director. Mr. Carlson and I are here today to present your board with a brief, hopefully very brief, Measure D five-year plan update. And our presentation today is going to cover a brief history of Measure D, our past year's projects, this year's project that's, that's currently under construction, and the Measure D five-year plan update that you have before you today. Um, yeah. So just a brief overview to remind everybody, Measure D was a countywide sales tax measure, a half cent sales tax measure that was passed by our voters in November 2016. It's a 30 year funding source for transportation projects countywide. County road revenue estimates around $4 million this, this coming fiscal year and revenue for our portion of the Measure D program. And that the annual requirements include producing a five-year plan, which is approved in a public hearing by the Board of Supes, and that's why we're here today. Our three top priorities for this portion of this bucket of the Measure D program for neighborhood safety projects includes maintenance and repair of county roadways, neighborhood resurfacing projects, and then some safety elements as well. And also just for some context, so this, this measure was passed in November 2016. I believe we started collecting sales taxes the following year in 2017, in June 2017. And in 2018, we delivered our first project, and we've been able to deliver a project every single year since then. So I'm going to go over just very briefly some of the work that we've done since 2018. And I'll go district by district. So in District One, which is a central part of our, of our county, in 2018, we started up in the Summit area. And one of our goals is if we pick a road to, to work on, we like to choose as many as we can in that area to get it somewhat of a scale of economy. So we like to kind of do neighborhoods, if you will, together. So 2018 found us in the Summit area. The next year in 2019, we did a bunch of work down in the Live Oak area. In 2020, we were up in the Thurber area. And then in 2021, we, we were in, did several roads within the Soquel area. And then in 2022, we worked around the Seventh, Thurber, kind of Portola area. And this was oftentimes, we'll take advantage of other projects that are going on, other types of utility projects that might be working in the area. We'll combine our efforts with theirs to put projects together. In 2023, we did some, some pretty significant work on East Cliff. And then in 2024, we, we, we finished up doing a bunch of work on Portola, and this was also on the heels of a very large sanitation project as well. So moving on to District Two, I mean, again, you'll start to see this theme where we like to work like in, in neighborhoods, and we sort of start with downtown core areas, and we try to work our way out from there. So in District Two, we started with Lifts of Selva in 2018, and then in 2019, we moved on to some roads in Rio del Mar, down in the Beach Flats area. 2020, we did quite a bit of work in Sea Cliff, and this was kind of the eastern portion of the Sea Cliff neighborhood. 2021, we were able to accomplish some work down in Cora Lidos. And then 2022, back into the Rio del Mar area and also taking advantage of some other, other work on Soquel from the utility work that was happening there. And then in 2023, we, we kind of jumped around a little bit based on some of the needs, but we did some work in Sea Cliff, Ocean View, which is kind of, I think, off of San Andreas, if you will. Sometimes we're just picking up little roads as we move along, and then a fairly significant project on Green Valley Road. And then in 2024, we were back in the Rio del Mar area, sort of spreading out from some of the work we had begun there. District Three, so District Three has, I think, around 10% of the roads in the county. And so it does take a while to build up enough funds to implement a significant project. So we began in 2018 and 19 with Martin Road. We did half one year, half the next year. And then starting in 2020, we banked towards a larger, more significant project on Swanton Road. We'll talk about that later. That's actually being done this, this summer. Moving on to District Four, similar thing, you know, less than 10% of the roads in the county, but we're able to implement quite a few projects down there since the program began. 2018, we actually repaired a pretty significant bridge on Casserly Road that was damaged during the 2017 storm event. 2019 and 2020, similar thing. We did half, half of Lakeview one year, half, half the next year. And then 21, 22, and 23, we banked up enough funds so we could do some pretty significant work on Paulson Road. And then 2024, a good portion of the Measure D funds down in District Four went, went towards the Green Valley Path Multi-Use Project, which is under construction today, and it's getting very close to completion. It looks really good. I invite folks to go and take a look at it. And then last but not least, District Five. And again, sticking with our theme of starting from downtown cores and kind of working our way out, the beginning of the program, we started in Boulder Creek. The next year, we moved down to Ben Loman. And then the following year, we moved down to Felton. Those are the three fairly biggest township areas in the San Luis Valley. And then in 2021, we moved back up to Boulder Creek and started doing some more of the outskirts of Boulder Creek. Same thing in 2022, we moved back down to Ben Loman and did more of the roads on the outskirts. And then again, in 2023, keeping with that theme, we moved back down to Felton. And then in 2024, we were able to pick up, there's a small portion of unincorporated county just outside of Scotts Valley, Scotts Valley. So we picked up some of those roads and finished up a few in the downtown Felton area. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Casey. He's going to talk about the current project we have going.
Everyone. So a lot of exciting things happening this summer. I'm excited to tell you about these. Here's just kind of a map of an overview of what we're doing this summer. And each of those will, will go into more detail as I go slide by slide. So District One, what we're doing with the Measure D funding is, there was a very large utility project, the Soquel Pure Water Project that came through a lot of these streets, including Soquel Avenue, Main Street, East Walnut Park Avenue, that did, as you can kind of see in this picture, half of the road, that, that blacktop there was actually done by that project. But it left, as you can see on the left, a lot of road that was unfinished. So we had a lot of half streets completed and were able to go back and do the other half and do some striping upgrades, as well as pick up some additional roadways in the Live Oak area with this year's project for District One. District Two, we are leveraging a sanitation project in West Sea Cliff, which did a number of these streets. And we're taking sanitation funds, putting those together with Measure D funds and doing kind of a whole neighborhood project in this area. And this gets almost all of Sea Cliff after two previous Measure D projects in Sea Cliff area. District Three, very excited to bring Swanton Road into construction. They just finished digouts and base repairs as of yesterday. And we will be seeing paving over the next month or so. Large project, four and a half miles, that Steve said District Three has been saving their funds for, for a while, and very happy to be able to bring this one about. Likewise, District Four, a long wishlist item for District Four has been Murphy's Crossing, and to a lesser extent, Rogie Lane. And we were able to obtain a grant in the 2023 cycle that we're leveraging Measure D funds with to get done this summer. So we're doing a full rebuild, a full lift recycle on Murphy's Crossing. And that's going to start very soon, within the next week or so. Rogie Lane also, patchwork has been done, and we're going to be starting the next phases on that soon. So both will be completed this summer. District Five had a major unexpected landslide event on Mountain Charlie that cut off, cut access for a, a major road and cut off access for several residents. And this year, we use District Five's funding for the Mount Charlie site. And that's, that's it for this year. And back to Steve.
Great. And I will note that Mount Charlie, we're still seeking reimbursement from FEMA for the Mount Charlie work. And if we do that, then the Measure D funds will get replenished and repurposed towards projects in District Five. And just also that, you know, before we had Measure D, we had, we had no money to do any neighborhood projects or any neighborhood resurfacing. And since we've had Measure D, I think we've made a lot of significant strides in improving our neighborhoods. We work very closely with each of your board members to identify and prioritize projects within your districts. We'll continue to do that. And I just want to express my appreciation for your board's support for the program. And so with that, the recommendations that you have in front of you today, we, there we go, is to adopt the attached Measure D five-year plan for the fiscal year 25-26 and authorize Public Works to submit a copy of the approved package or package to the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission. And so we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. With that, first I'll see if anyone in the public wishes to address us on this item. Seeing none, anyone online? I'll bring it back.
No speakers online, Chair.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the board for any comments. Supervisor Martinez.
Not many comments. I just really want to thank you for your efforts. My district really appreciates kind of the spreading of the funding and so love to be able to see you continue to make progress going into the future years. And thank you for the good work on Mountain Charlie Road. Thank you.
Yeah, no significant comments. Thank you for the work. I mean, I agree. It's, it's absolutely essential work every year. And certainly, as Supervisor Martinez suggested, every, every time a neighborhood is lucky enough to get a project, they're extremely thankful. And I just appreciation to the voters for approving the sales tax measure so that we can do this good work. And, and for Public Works and executing it. Thanks.
Supervisor Cummings.
Don't have much to say in terms of the plan. Thank you all for always being available and willing to work with us on our road issues. I will say that I, you know, we said this a number of times that, you know, when we look at funding that's allocated to the different districts, you know, the fact that third and fourth district usually gets the least amount of allocation is still something that can be a little frustrating, especially since, you know, now that we have a huge, the biggest segment of the rail trail complete in the third district, you know, we're going to need additional funds over time. And maybe that's through Measure D and working with RTC to keep that maintained. And, and you know, we do have, although we may have less road miles, we do have a lot of visitors. And with the Katoni Coast area is opening, and now with the rail trail, we're likely going to see that increase. And so if there's opportunities for us to revisit how the funding model is structured, I think it'd be good to take those factors into account, especially because in Measure D, in terms of allocation to cities and counties, you know, it's for local roadway pavement repairs and operational improvements, school and neighborhood traffic safety projects, bicycle and pedestrian projects. And with the rail trail going in, I think it might be worth us incorporating that into how we're thinking about how the funding's allocated. So but as it relates to this plan, I think it's a great job and look forward to us improving Swanton Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSerpas.
Thank you to the taxpayers, first and foremost, for agreeing to support Measure D. And thank you to the Roads Crew, Steve in particular, for driving around with me. And I look forward to driving around some more because there's a bunch of roads we haven't looked at yet. But I appreciate you adding the ones in my district to the list that, and the neighbors really will appreciate it when the projects are completed. So thank you and Casey for always fielding complaints from the public on our behalf. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, just thank you for all the good work that you guys do. I noticed Holahan wasn't on there. I was pretty proud of you guys when you guys did that in 2023.
Right. So I'll mention, we do, that was federal funding that we used for Holahan Road. And so sometimes we do combine Measure D and federal funding to do projects like that. So there's a lot of other work going on there besides what's funded by Measure D. This is specific to Measure D.
Got it. All right. Well, with that, I'll.
Move the recommended actions.
Second. We have a motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from Hernandez.
Supervisor DeSerpas.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Sound like that court, they gotta get talks on the court. And next we have. Next item on the agenda is number eight, hold the public hearing, consider approving in concept in ordinance on the Board of Supervisors of County of Santa Cruz, amending Santa Cruz County Code Sections 13, 13.10.327 and 13.10.328, based on California Coastal Commission feedback allowing two-unit residential developments and urban lot split, splits in unincorporated areas of Santa Cruz County and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Mark Conley, Principal Planner, and Jacob Letts, Planner for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Hernandez. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Great to see all of you. Mark Conley, Principal Planner in CDI Policy, with me to my right this afternoon. Jacob Letts, Policy Planner in CDI. What we have for you today is the acceptance of the California Coastal Commission's modifications to Senate Bill Nine. Following board adoption in December 10th of 2024, staff has to transmit the ordinance to the Coastal Commission for their comments to certify the ordinance. And what's before you are their comments that are really relatively minor. And they work to make the ordinance inherently more clear for users. They balance the streamlining of housing with coastal protections in the Coastal Act. And so staff is recommending approval of California Coastal Commission's recommendation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Letts, who will provide a brief presentation for you.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. The first half of the presentation will be a review of the ordinance, as we thought it would be helpful to provide the background of this ordinance and how we got here, since it's been about half a year since we talked about it. We will give a brief background and simple overview of this proposed ordinance allowing two-unit residential developments and urban lot splits. We will go into some of the key qualifying criteria to be eligible for a two-unit development and urban lot split. A map of the census urban area will be provided to give an idea of where this ordinance will allow projects in the unincorporated county. We'll go over some of the scenarios and different unit configurations of what can be built through two-unit development versus an urban lot split, as the two options have different allowances between the, the two. Getting into the portion of the presentation that is new to everyone, I'll quickly highlight the adoption and certification procedures and processes we are dealing with here through this adoption and acceptance of Coastal Commission's modifications. The Coastal Commission has provided modifications to this ordinance, which are necessary to adopt it within the coastal zone. I will highlight the modifications they have made to both sections of the ordinance. To round out today's presentation, we will showcase the recommended actions for today's item. Sorry, the clicker is not working. There we go. This is a state mandated ordinance for all jurisdictions effective January 1, 2022. Local jurisdictions were allowed to either accept the state model ordinance or adopt their own ordinance for SB nine. The County of Santa Cruz has elected to prepare our own ordinance and amend our local coastal program, or LCP for short. This bill will require ministerial approval of two different project types, a two-unit residential development without using a lot split, and the second being an urban lot split. Missing middle housing types such as duplexes and triplexes will be promoted through the implementation of this ordinance. As mentioned above, this ordinance will require LCP amendment and therefore Coastal Commission certification, which is why we are here today. This ordinance has been bifurcated, meaning the board adopted this ordinance December 17, 2024, after a planning commission recommendation and two Board of Supervisors public hearings, making it effective outside of the coastal zone. after a planning commission recommendation and two board of supervisors' public hearings, making it effective outside of the coastal zone. Today's meeting is to accept California Coastal Commission's modifications, which were made on April 11th, 2025, in order to receive final certification and enact the ordinance within the coastal zone. Here's a summary of the key qualifying criteria for an SB nine development. The first level of qualification for any two-unit residential development or urban law split is that it must be wholly within the census urban area. A map of the census urban area across the county will be provided in the next slide. The project must be within a single-family residential zoning district such as R1, RA, and RR. It may also be allowed in special use or SEU zone district as long as it has a general plan residential land use classification paired with it. Starting off, the following areas are potentially allowed with mitigations and applicable setbacks being met. Coastal bluff top properties, which can meet the applicable setbacks for their proposed residence, are allowed under SB nine. A project is only allowed in prime agricultural areas and environmental hazard areas if medications can be fully met. SB nine developments are permitted on parcels that contain sensitive habitat area in both the coastal zone and outside of the coastal zone, so long as the proposed residence can be sighted outside of the sensitive habitat area and their respective buffers. As long as, as an SB nine project is located outside of a critical fire hazard area, they are permitted in all state response areas, including very high, high and moderate fire severity zones, so long as sufficient mitigation can also be met for the development. Switching gears to exclusions and prohibitions related to SB nine. SB nine is excluded on historic properties. Projects are excluded in critical fire hazard areas as mapped by the county. SB nine project seaward of coastal bluffs are excluded from eligibility. And vacation rentals are prohibited on any rental units involved in either two-unit or an urban law split, whether it's existing or new rental units. This is a map of the census urban area across the entirety of Santa Cruz County. As seen on the legend, the dash yellow markings denote the areas which are considered census urban areas. The grayed out areas are the four cities, while the USL and RSL are in blue and pink lines respectively. These are the areas SB nine projects are generally allowed. This map provides a general overview of where projects may be eligible. Eligibility is subject to many other eligibility criteria, such as zoning, sensitive areas, historic demolition. But this is the boundary of where projects could be allowed if eligibility criteria are met. And it is important to note that the project must be wholly within this boundary. This graphic represents the different ways SB nine can be implemented for property owners. The ordinance provides for a total of four units. As shown in the top of this graphic, without using a lot split, one can develop four units on a single parcel with varying combinations of two primary dwelling units and two ADUs or two AJADUs or a combination of the two. Utilizing a lot split will still give you four units total across the two parcels. The configuration options are the exact same with an urban law split, except that you can build two primary dwelling units on each lot, meaning you can build four primary dwelling units. This is a very important distinction if you choose to utilize an urban law split. And just as an important note, changes recently made by HCD at the state level has changed that tiny homes on wheels are no longer allowed to be permitted as ADUs. So that's an important distinction related to this slide. The following modifications to Code Section thirteen ten three twenty seven are relatively, relatively minor in nature and include the following. In subsection C two, it has been modified to remove the residential beach zone district from parcel eligibility, which is a relatively small zoning district. The rationale for removing the RB zone district is its overlap with areas already proposes ineligible for two-unit residential developments. Specifically parcels located within coastal hazard areas seaward of coastal bluffs. This modification ensures clarity within ordinance and reduces any potential conflict. No other zone districts have been removed from eligibility. Subsection C three D modifications have been made to the language related to coastal hazard areas. This revises the previously proposed Santa Cruz County Code Section thirteen ten three twenty seven C four B to clarify property eligibility within coastal hazard areas, a term which is defined in Title sixteen. The modifications exclude properties seaward of coastal bluffs and permits developments on bluff, bluff top properties only if the proposed residence meets specific bluff erosion stability setback requirements. The original language relied on environmental regulations in Title sixteen. The revised language strengthens the ordinance intent and supports the protection to coastal resources whilst allowing two unit developments on properties that meet the required setbacks. In subsection C three E, an additional modification updates the language regarding the sensitive habitat section to clarify that parcels that have environmentally sensitive habitat areas, or ESHA for short, within the coastal zone are still eligible, so long as the development is proposed outside of the sensitive areas and their buffers. The revised section separates ESHA from other exclusionary criteria to reduce confusion and explicitly state that an eligible site must not be located within ESHA or their buffers. That means a building, a buildable area must exist outside of those zones. This language closely mirrors the regulations that apply to areas outside of the coastal zone. The ESHA eligibility criteria is consistent with the board adopted ordinance. Neither provision excludes a parcel solely due to the presence of sensitive habitat somewhere on the parcel. Instead, eligibility depends on citing the development outside of sensitive areas and buffers. Lastly, in subsection C four C, it has been modified to, modified to apply only outside of the coastal zone as Santa Cruz County Code sixteen thirteen titled Flood Management and Regulations is not currently part of the county's local coastal program. Two-unit developments in the coastal zone are still subject to flood hazard area mitigations, but rather pursuant to state law. Additionally, the following modifications to the law split code section thirteen ten three twenty eight mirror the changes in thirteen ten three twenty seven and are also minor in nature. The previously mentioned modifications are subsumed into the eligibility requirements for urban law splits pursuant to Santa Cruz County Code thirteen ten three twenty eight D one. The only more substantial modification to urban law split section was the subsection D one A, which adds a reference to coastal hazard areas, including areas seaward of and on or adjacent to coastal bluffs as exclusionary areas for urban law splits, except that bluff top properties may still qualify if proposed building sites meet the required bluff erosion stability setbacks. The revised language strengthens the ordinance intent and supports the preservation of coastal resources while still allowing urban law splits on properties that meet the required setbacks. This brings us to the recommended actions for this item. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors hold a public hearing, adopt the resolution accepting the California Coastal Commission's amendments and directing the Director of Community Development and Infrastructure or their designee to submit the resolution to the California Coastal Commission. Approve the ordinance in concept with the deletion from the maker of the motion that the language quotes or an ADU pursuant to Santa Cruz County Code thirteen ten six eighty end quote from the section thirteen ten three twenty seven E one C. Number four, direct the clerk of the board to post the notice of proposed ordinance summary and direct the clerk of the board to schedule a second reading and adoption on August 5th, 2025. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring, I'll bring it out to the public to see if anyone would like to address us on this item. Chair, would you like the board to have a chance to look through those handouts that I just gave before I start my presentation?
Chair Hernandez, members of the board, my name is Kevin Huber. My wife Sandy and I own a very unique, partially vacant pre-coastal act lot at six two five Beach Drive in Aptos. Coastal staff and your staff in their report say that the residential areas located seaward of coastal bluffs are ineligible for SB nine because they're in coastal hazard areas. Yet, as your staff report points out, other than the RB zone, no other zone, including those zoned R1 and seaward of the bluff, were removed from eligibility. We also know that these areas still allow development as coastal permits continue to be issued with mitigations. In section C two, your staff report says the rationale for removing the RB zoning is because areas located in coastal hazard areas seaward of a bluff are defined as beach and are already ineligible. First, we disagree that this is codified into law. There is no definition of beach in your code. And since existing lots behind a seawall and which were subdivided prior to the Coastal Act have grandfathered rights and are beach fronting, not beach. Second, if this is the justification, then for consistency, why not exclude all other areas that are residentially zoned lots seaward of the bluff? Why only make RB ineligible? As depicted in my handout, there is no material difference in the physical setting or the impact on coastal resources between the beachfronting R1 zone parcels and the RB zone parcels. You can also see by the last two pictures in the handout that the vacant portion of our parcel is the definition of infill. And that is the same size as lots with homes on both sides. Nothing in the Coastal Act nor in your code says that a property within the coastal zone located seaward of an inland bluff on an existing lot of record makes that lot unable to be developed, including as two units per SB nine, provided that hazards can be mitigated. In light of your earlier discussion regarding a culture of no, I ask that you direct staff to not exclude our small existing beach.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Sandy Huber and I am a homeowner at six two five Beach Drive and applicant for an SB nine home. I'm sandwiched in five generations who enjoyed Santa Cruz County, beginning with my grandmother. My parents were able to build here in the eighties and in 2015, my husband and I purchased a home. This allows us to gather four generations together, albeit a little cramped. SB nine was written in support of second homes and infill housing. While we have a foot in two communities, here we have found our place of worship. We support tennis camps. We belong to our neighborhood library. Our boat in the harbor leads us to love and protect the Monterey Bay. We support our local parks and host fundraisers at our home. I want to tell you this to illustrate our appreciation and long-term commitment to our county. Now we have a buildable infill lot that meets every objectable, objective standard. I feel fortunate to be here today when the Board of Supervisors is reviewing the important efforts the planning department is making to streamline Santa Cruz County. What I heard today is a focused effort to shift from a culture of no to a culture of yes, to encourage robust dialogue like today and discover the roots of obstacles. A significant tangible effect the board can make today is to reject the Coastal Commission's recommendation to arbitrarily exclude only the RB zone. I'm asking that you be consistent with all other equally created beachfront homes. Thank you.
Go Britain, Matt's Britain Architects. Simply put, this is a fabrication of the Coastal Commission and its staff. There's no geologic basis for not allowing RB homes to be infill developed zero. Open up this window right here. You'll see a revetment that protects this building. It protects the city of Santa Cruz. Would you say you can't have SB nine projects here because it has a revetment protecting it? Where's the logic here? And that's where we go back to the culture of no. Respectfully, the Commissioner, Supervisor Cummings, the Coastal Commission has been roundly criticized for its anti-development issues. This road on SB nine is protected by a seawall. That seawall protects the infrastructure, also the infrastructure for public facilities. So adding a home in this area means nothing. These homes are raised. They will survive. That road is there. So it goes back to East Cliff Drive, West Cliff Drive, on and on, that if there's houses there that meet the Coastal Act, you can put a second one in. And it's a complete fallacy that duplexes aren't allowed there. They already exist there. I know, I just remodeled one. So this is a real fallacy and the people that own these homes haven't been noticed specifically. So they really have no idea that this hearing is happening. Yeah. And that goes back again to public noticing. Public noticing requires the people most impact to understand what the public notice is about. So these people think you're just doing some minor adjustment. No, it's major for them. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Mondo, your microphone's now available.
Hello, I'm proud to say that I am part of the group that helped to write this SB nine as well as promote it and get it all the way to the governor. And with that in mind, I'm going to talk about the intent of SB nine and also how it's failed us as a local community to actually get any housing built. The intent that we can subdivide property is fantastic. You know, how well we use our, our buildable resource of land is so critical to our future. And also allowing us to build more units per land, wonderful intent. And that combination of them together, that's exactly what we've been looking for and fighting for. But unfortunately, when this gets to this from the state level, it's mostly written and influenced by people from San Francisco and San Diego where they have unlimited infrastructure and tens of thousands of parcels that are all in a, in a square grid. We are a rural farming community, so it's very common for one person to have one acre lot next to somebody who's got a five acre or 10 acre lot. And so unfortunately, there are so many requirements that are being forced on us, like the property has to be within a certain area, within a certain zone. I mean, there's like 50 different things that as a result, this billing, this, this law has failed to allow us to have any buildable units. Again, ask after all this hoopla, how many of these units after three years have actually been built? So, and I say this to you as a board because we have the power to go through these individually and implement them in a way that can be actually built and on all the irregular lots that we have as a community. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring you back to the board for any comments, questions. Supervisor Cummings.
First, I just want to thank the staff for all their hard work on this. I know this has been a long road that we've been on with this and just want to appreciate all the time and effort you all put into this. And I also want to thank the Coastal Commission for their recommendations. I, everything that they have recommended seems very appropriate regarding, you know, this item moving forward and trying to do the best to protect coastal resources. I will say, so I am going to vote no on this. And it's not because of the Coast Commission recommendation. It's not because of staff's work. It's because initially when this came to us, it actually excluded parcels if they had sensitive habitat. And then there was a modification made by the board. I think myself and Supervisor Friend voted against this because we did feel that, you know, properties that have sensitive habitat, we should, we should be trying to avoid developing those sensitive areas and around those sensitive areas because there can still be impacts. So my vote today does not reflect any of the work that staff has done or the Coastal Commission. I actually agree with the recommendations here, but in being consistent with my initial vote, we have to vote no. Just because I actually think that we should be excluding properties that have sensitive habitat.
Supervisor Koenig.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, staff. There's. This is an interesting situation. I mean, the, you know, the core of the Coastal Commission's recommended changes or requests are basically to exclude residential beach, which would, you know, kind of basically already be excluded other, under other parts. other parts of our code because the hazards present. And, you know, to require anyone taking advantage of this new ordinance, you know, to also basically be able to do so without depending on existing armoring, which is also in our code in chapter 16, saying that lot splits and, you know, new building footprints need to be able to meet that standard. And so, you know, I can see how the, the exact proposal from the Coast Commissioner sort of a don't make, wouldn't make material difference unless we address those other parts of our code. And then on the other hand, you look at like the situation presented by the folks here today, you know, like, yeah, this is, I mean, every other parcel on the street is actually basically already two parcels, one on the coastal side, one on the inland side. It's really not going to make a difference to add one more home in the middle here and sort of have a, just a logical situation. Someone's trying to invest in the county. It's not the investment I would make, but they want to make it. Why are we stopping them? And so there's sort of a, you know, we, we've taken all these logical steps, but arrived at a illogical place. And so I do struggle with that a little bit. There's not a lot. It's not like this, you know, there's not a lot of these situations if you go up and down the coast. You know, we're talking about handful, maybe a couple handfuls. So, but, but there, there it is. So those are, those are my comments.
But there's any, no comments. I do have some questions. So what exactly like, can you name me all some neighborhoods that are beach zones, beach?
I believe to the comments, one of the most common RB zones is Beach Drive in the Aptos Real Del Mar Beach area. And I believe there might be one other zone further south in the Seaside area, but there's not many RB zone districts. But there could be R1 that might not be R1, but they're near, nearby.
So like East Cliff wouldn't be a beach zone. Okay. I was just saying, because I know that a lot of folks there have got ADUs and a lot of students actually, you know, live there and a lot of working folks or teachers from PVUSD actually have a lot of those ADUs and in those areas and seek in the coastal area. So they are needed as a workforce housing almost, you know, but this one item here with, with the RD zoning that we're talking, that the gentleman was talking about. So what impact would it have if, it wouldn't have much impact if there isn't much beach zones, right? And if one was allowed, or would there be any other impacts or potential developments because of this?
Right. So per our presentation, staff report and also the Coastal Commission's staff report and to what Supervisor Koenig said that the other modifications and existing LCP policies to prohibit new development and lot splits in coastal hazard areas, which would include areas seaward of coastal bluffs, would already effectively prohibit those parcels from utilizing SB nine. So the Coastal Commission found it to be prudent to take off the RB zone district just as a good planning practice to make it clear that all parcels that were already in there would have been excluded from a different modification that the Coastal Commission already made. So it wouldn't have any greater implications other than that.
Could I ask a question actually? So obviously SB nine is not the only way that someone can split their lot. It's sort of a ministerial process defined by the state. So, I mean, really, you know, kind of going back to, to this case study on Beach Drive, there was, I mean, what was really stopping a project here is section 16, right? I mean, because whether it's an SB nine lot split or, you know, whatever, traditional lot, non-ministerial lots, but an applicant's going to run into section 16. And, I mean, so to update section 16, does that have to be done like through our local coastal plan effectively? And then therefore you're talking about a process that is, you know, potentially years. It's not like we can just come back here in August with a modification of section 16 to, to change this, right? Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to kind of remind the board where we're at right now is that we as a county, need to comply with new state law. And in doing that, needed to submit our comments to the Coastal Commission and we got their feedback. And what we're trying to do is approve and adopt their feedback along with everything else that the board already approved. And so while I'm sympathetic to the case study that's before us, and this is an example of how sometimes public policy doesn't exactly get it right for every single example. And I'd love to think about how to solve that. I think for the, what's in front of us today is really, do we want to decline to accept what the Coastal Commission is asking our county to do or not? And I don't feel like that's something that I'm ready to recommend to the board. So given that, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the recommended actions and would be looking for a second.
I see Supervisor, Supervisor, any more comments?
I do, but do we need a second first before more comments are made?
A second.
Okay. So I'll just say this for the public's sake. This is not my area of expertise. So I'm new. I'm learning a lot and this is, it's a lot to learn. So I did some research because I was trying to figure out, does SB nine, do, do new state laws supersede or trump Coastal Commission policy? And I don't think it does, correct? Or am I confused on that?
No, it does not supersede the coastal act.
They don't live side by side, right? Coastal Act is sort of the law.
Yes, more or less we.
And is that being challenged at all anywhere? I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay. Did you want to say something else?
No, I was just going to say that, you know, this, this exercise that we're in is to try to best harmonize SB nine with the coastal act, but also recognizing that SB nine does not supersede or override the coastal act.
Okay. And then would there possibly be any exceptions? At all? Instead of just saying this is prohibited because it, it, it's kind of nutty. There's a house, a house, there's a lot there. You know, in between. So is there any time that there would be an exception made?
I think the time for the exception would have been through the development of the ordinance, going through the hearing process and kind of, you know, fleshing that out at that point and making some kind of a, you know, addition or change to the ordinance that therefore would have been accepted by the California Coastal Commission. And so we know now that that wouldn't be the case. So there isn't really a, a spot now without a complete reset button that would get us there. And quite frankly, I don't think we're going to get there anyway. I don't think there's a harmonizing way to, to live on both sides of this. So we've gotten to that point kind of at this point, you know?
Okay.
Hi Natalie.
County Council.
County Council's office. Um, yeah, just, you know, to put it in perspective, this is a streamlining provision to create, create greater density without public hearings and without environmental review. So the parcels that are ineligible, that doesn't mean that they can't seek the lot split or greater density through variances or through a zoning change or through other discretionary mechanisms. But it does mean that they're precluded from this by right approval without hearings and without environmental review. That's very helpful. Thank you.
All right. So if there's no further questions, we do have a motion from Supervisor Martinez and a second from Supervisor Cummings. If I might do the chair, excuse me, the maker of the motion, if we can add in the deletion of the following, that the statement or an ADU pursuant to SEC thirteen dash ten dash six eighty be removed. We can add that into the motion so we can take that out to reference that tiny homes on wheels are no longer eligible to be ADUs.
Got it. Okay. Thanks for clarifying what that was. I had no idea what you were talking about. Yes, I will make that amendment.
Okay. So really quick question before we did the roll call vote. When is the public hearing expected to happen and what happened at the Coastal Commission or expect? Oh, okay. Roll call vote then.
Supervisor, Supervisor D'Arpa. Well, I wanted to ask another question. Is it too late to ask another question? So if this, if, if this doesn't pass today, could it be sent back for, for an exception rewrite? And back to the Coastal Commission?
No, it would really be a reset. What we would be doing.
Sure. What you mean by a reset?
Yeah, we'd be starting over, not from scratch, but we'd be have to go back to the planning, to the Coastal Commission and reject their suggested modifications. And then we'd have to come up with new language and go back and forth, have lots of meetings and, and kind of go back through this process of approving it again. So it's quite a heavy lift if we have to go back at this point.
Okay.
Chair, can I make one quick comment? Yes. So, yeah, I certainly hear what you're saying. Mr. Connolly, as far as just the additional amount of work, I mean, certainly we have seen some changes on the Coastal Commission. And so there's, it's not without possibility that we could sort of renegotiate this, but I mean, I think as county council, Ms. Kirkis explained, this is really a streamlining bill. It's not like the only way that someone can seek a lot split. And as I said, while I'm absolutely sympathetic to the folks with the, the lot on Beach Drive, even if we were to throw this back to the Coastal Commission and go through all that additional work, it actually would not provide them relief because really the place to, I think, have that conversation with the Coastal Commission is in the update of our local coastal program with the vulnerability analysis or assessment that we're currently doing, which is going to update section 16. And so simply, you know, that's why I'll be supporting the motion is I believe that there is more productive ways to have that conversation and more productive ways to use our staff time. Thank you.
Okay, we have a roll call vote.
Supervisor D'Arpa.
No.
Cummings. Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes with two no votes from Supervisor Cummings and Supervisor. Next item on the agenda is number 10, hold a continued public hearing to consider the certification of vote results for county, county service area three Aptos Seaside and take related actions. Wait. My thing is out of line here. Nine. Okay. Let me go back. Now it's a accessory dwelling, dwelling units. Hold, hold a public hearing, consider approving in concept and ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County, amending Santa Cruz County Code, Chapter thirteen, ten regarding accessory dwelling units. Confirm the proposal is exempt from requirements from the California Environmental Quality Act and take all related actions. Thank you, Chair Hernandez. Mark Connolly. Again, Principal Planner CDI to my right is David Carlson this afternoon. And what we have for you is the ADU ordinance. The accessory dwelling ordinance will provide needed housing for county residents and further the housing goals of the housing element in the county general plan and the housing element. The Planning Commission considered the proposed ordinance in May of this year and unanimously recommended approval. ADUs are by definition created in areas that are already developed and represent a key infill development strategy. So the proposed ordinance before you today, it's really amendments to it to that are intended to align our ADU ordinance in regulations with recent updates to state law and resolve points of confusion in the AD regulations that we already have and to further streamline ADU development in the county. So that's the intention of this. And with that, I'll turn it over to David Carlson for the presentation.
Thank you. In the next slide, I'll provide some brief background and history of state ADU law and the county's ordinance. And then the slides after that, we'll review and summarize several key aspects of the ordinance that's presented in the staff report and that will be followed by the recommended action. So this county's ADU regulations have been in place for many years, going back to 1983 in response to numerous state laws passed in 2019 and 2020. In publication of the first version of the state ADU handbook, the county's ADU regulations were updated in 2021. And since that time, additional state ADU laws have been enacted and the ADU handbook has been updated a couple more times. So to keep up with state ADU law, the proposed ordinance amendments were brought to the Planning Commission in October of 2024. And since that time, we received additional correspondence on the proposed amendments, including detailed comments on the existing ordinance and the proposed amendments from the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. And in January of this year, HCD published that latest update of the statewide ADU handbook. So the proposed, proposed ordinance amendments have been further updated in response to this input and guidance from HCD to align with state law. And in May of this year, the Planning Commission, as Mark mentioned, recommended the board adopt the proposed ordinance amendments. So now getting into some of the key updates, revised language and would clarify that under state law, ADU allowances are per lot, not per single family dwelling. And ordinance language is updated to be consistent with guidance in the updated ADU handbook that would allow one conversion ADU, one JADU or junior accessory dwelling unit and one attached or detached ADU or up to three ADUs on a lot with an existing or proposed single family dwelling. This compares to the county's existing ordinance that allows two ADUs on a lot. One ADU could be either a conversion attached or detached ADU and that, and then one junior accessory dwelling unit, which is defined as an ADU that's completely within the walls of an existing single family dwelling. The ordinance is updated to clarify the number of ADUs allowed on multifamily dwelling sites. So on parcels with proposed multifamily dwellings, up to two detached ADUs are allowed. And then on parcels with existing multifamily dwellings, the number of detached ADUs has been increased from two to not more than eight detached ADUs or not more than the existing number of multifamily units, whichever is less. Also in a, on existing multifamily dwelling lots, conversion of up to 25% of existing livable space to ADUs is allowed. But language is added to the ordinance that this is only allowed in existing multifamily dwellings, not proposed projects. So this slide just summarizes all the various existing size standards for junior accessory dwelling units or JADUs and the various types of ADUs. But the change to the ordinance language would clarify that 50% of the size of the existing primary dwelling can be used as a maximum unit size for attached ADUs, but only if it does not restrict an ADU size to less than 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet for ADUs with more than one bedroom. So revised language refers to the larger of that percentage or the minimum square foot allowance. And also throughout the ordinance, you'll find additional references to an ADU no more than 800 square feet with four foot side and rear setbacks and meeting height standards. And these are generally exempt from many of the requirements that apply to other types of ADUs, such as parking requirements and other objective standards. They're commonly referred to as government code six, six, three, two, three units. That's where they're found in the government code. So while objective standards can be applied to most ADUs, objective standards. So while objective standards can be applied to most ADUs, objective standards cannot be applied to Government Code 66323 units, except in the coastal zone. So language is added to this, to a section of the ordinance referring to objective standards, which are defined in state AD law as a standard that involves no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the applicant or proponent and the public official prior to submittal. So that, that's an objective standard. And they're, they're too numerous to list here because they exist throughout the county code and general plan. But some examples are building and fire codes, zoning setbacks, and environmental setbacks contained in Title 16 of the county code, which contain the environmental and resource protection standards. Language is added to reflect new state laws regarding height of an ADU near transit and the height of a detached ADU associated with a multifamily dwelling. Ordinance language is updated to define ADUs that are exempt from providing parking, including JADUs, conversion ADUs, and ADUs in these locations near transit stops, car share, or in a historic district. And then again, the Government Code 66323 units are exempt from parking requirements. Language is added, removing the owner occupancy requirement for ADUs, but not for JADUs. So all the same language regarding occupancy in the ordinance is retained, but for JADUs only. And also, the language in this section is modified to clarify that state ADU law does not restrict a junior or JADU from short-term rental occupancy and provides a reference to the county's soon-to-be-updated short-term rental program that may include the use of a structure with a JADU as a short-term rental. Those updates will be on the board's agenda in August. And finally, this slide just lists some other areas of the ordinance that are proposed to be amended as required to be consistent with state ADU law, as it's all explained in the staff report. Staff can address any questions board members have about these or any of the other amendments presented here in the staff report. And that leads to the last slide, which is the staff recommendation to conduct a public hearing to review the proposed amendments to the accessory dwelling unit regulations, adopt the attached resolution, recommend that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to file the California Environmental Quality Act notice of exemption with the clerk of the board, and adopt the ordinance modifying county code regarding accessory dwelling units.
With that, I'll open it up to the public for public input. Anyone like to address something on this item?
Britton Matts, Britton Architects, I actually really appreciate that these two things were together. Because I want to clarify for the Board of Supervisors, coastal policy does not supersede state law. Coastal Act does, but not coastal policy. This last hearing was about policy and saying that the policy superseded SB 9. It does not. And when we get to ADUs, exactly the same thing. Policy cannot supersede an ADU. The coastal act can, and it has to be specific language. So it has to be objective. So this is a confusion that this legislation has been working on. So this is where I'm going to go back to. There's even some things in this, like requiring a will serve letter. State law says you can't require a will serve letter for housing. I'm respectfully going, this stuff is getting really sloppy. And I'm trying to be respectful about it, but I'm like going, you're not getting the truth. And I'm going to go back to the other house. He wasn't proposing a subdivision. You can do two houses without a subdivision, just as you can do an ADU without a subdivision. So things are getting a bit out of control here. I have a project where we're doing an ADU where staff is saying, I have to reduce the size of the house in order to do the ADU or detach it. Why isn't this in front of you? And they're saying it's because of Chapter 16. Well, Chapter 16 is geologic hazards. If you mitigate the hazard, it's done. You're over. That 1610 also contains some underground anti-development rules back from the patent era is true. It has stuff like you can't subdivide. And I'm like, well, there's no geologic basis for it. Why is it in Chapter 16? And that chapter gets superseded by SB 9 and ADU and SB 478, SB 9, because the legislation isn't dumb. They know when your jurisdictions are doing exactly what ours is doing, trying to get around it.
Thank you. Anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Mondo, your microphone's now available.
Okay, I would just want to encourage the board to take a moment and say yes and thank you, and do anything we can to encourage you guys to help us develop these small, affordable housing that can really make a difference in our community. It's been an absolute joy of mine to work with almost all of you on, on this and your campaigns and your primaries. Because we as a community, we are going to support candidates who are going to allow us, especially the small homeowners, so that we can build the housing for our family, for our friends, and also hire the same people that we're going to need the next time we have a disaster, a fire, or an earthquake or whatever. We hire the same small mom and pop plumbers and, and electricians and carpenters that we need to keep in business and keep in this community so that we can continue to maintain what we have. So thank you for this. And moving forward, you know, this legislation has been brought on by the state. And we have the option as a board and as a community to make these even better and more affordable for us to build here in this community. And over the next year or so, I look forward to working with you guys to present you with some ideas so we can lower the cost of our construction, we keep our schools open, we can keep our, our wonderful people that we need to keep in our community so they're not moving away. Thank you, guys.
You have no further speaker, Chair.
With that, I'll bring back to the board for any comments. Supervisor Koenig.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, staff, for all your hard work on this. You know, talk about complexity, you know, we're sort of, I mean, and this is not, I'm not blaming staff. I think that just, you know, again, we are dealing with changing state laws, input from multiple state agencies. And it's, I mean, reflected in the complexity of this ADU ordinance where you've got sometimes, I mean, at least subsections at least five deep, you know? And so while I respect the intent of what we're trying to do here to ultimately make it easier for people to build. I mean, we really are just adding so much, so much nuance to the code that I don't, I think there's probably more effective ways to go about it. I think that if we're really going to want to see like significant increase in housing, that we're going to have to simplify the code and consider something along the lines of Cambridge-style zoning reform, where they really sort of just said, you know, within the urban area, four to six stories by right, any residential zone. And we don't care how you chop it up, right? I mean, here we've got subsections for JADUs, detached ADUs, new conversion ADUs. I mean, just so much nuance. It's, it's incredibly complex. But it's before us today, and maybe we can make things incrementally better. I do have a few questions. The first is, where does this leave tiny homes on wheels? They could, they only be used as a primary dwelling? I mean, I understand this came actually as state direction. And I'm a little bit confused, given that the state generally wants, it seems to be pro-housing, HCD. Why would they want to take this option off the table?
I think it's better to say it's confusing, not you're confused. Because it, yes, this HCD advised us that a tiny home on wheels does not meet the definition of the state definition of an ADU because it's not a permanent structure. And they have the authority to do that review of our ordinance and give us that direction because we're, we're required to submit this ordinance to them for their review. We're free to adopt a separate ordinance allowing tiny homes on wheels as a primary dwelling, and that's what we've done, and that's on the books. But we're going to have to amend that ordinance to remove the references to tiny, tiny homes on wheels as ADUs.
Yeah. And any insight into why they would want to take that option off the table? I mean, it's not like you're not making, you are making permanent infrastructure improvements if you put in whatever it is, septic connection, sewer connection, water, electric, I mean, even just the pad, right?
We've, we've received guidance in the past from HCD that indicated that tiny homes on wheels could be used as ADUs. So that has changed.
Gotcha. All right. Well, look forward to addressing our tiny homes on wheels ordinance separately. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, just to add to that, too, I think this started with HCD agreeing that they could be ADUs. And to answer your question of why, all things point to the fact that they're mobile, that you could permit it, and maybe you count it as a housing unit in your jurisdiction, maybe towards your arena, and then it's gone tomorrow. So their thing is kind of like, well, you know, we can't really regulate them in a location for certain. So let's not allow them. That's kind of where it's kind of led to, that we think they're, they're trying to get to because they're mobile units. They're not permanently affixed to the ground and connected and that kind of thing. So that's why.
Right. But again, the infrastructure, there's infrastructure there that is immobile. I mean, if we get a sense that HCD's concern is us counting it towards, counting tiny homes on wheels towards arena. If we some, if we said we're not going to count them for the purposes of arena, could we still?
I, I don't think there's going to be a problem with us counting them towards our arena. I don't, I, I don't think they're going to challenge us on that. In fact, they advised us during the development of our separate ordinance that allows them as primary units on how to structure that ordinance to provide that sense of permanency and, and infrastructure is part of that and monitoring and that sort of thing. So we've, we included those, that advice into our, the other ordinance that allows tiny homes on wheels as primary dwellings. So we feel pretty confident that, that we can continue to count them towards our arena.
Okay. I mean, how?
There hasn't been very many of them, though.
Right. I mean, is this like one comment by one person at HCD? Is there, can we, is this something where if we took a stand here and said, no, we are going to keep it in, like, the whole ordinance gets overturned?
Well, again, this ordinance need is, state law requires us to submit this ordinance to HCD for them to, to review. And then if they point out corrections that are needed in the ordinance, we have the option of making those corrections or adopting a resolution explaining why we think our ordinance is in compliance with state law. And then after that, it's back in the hands of HCD to determine whether that's acceptable to them. Or like the final step, if there's an impasse, is they have the option of referring us to the Attorney General for enforcement.
Okay. I do have some other questions, so I'll move on. The size limit for a junior ADU of 500 square feet, how did we land on 500 square feet? It seems like there's other parts of the code specifically referring to like 66323 units, where it's more like 800 square foot kind of minimum standard. What, why?
That is, that's right out of state law.
For JADUs.
For JADUs. That's, that's from state law. Yeah.
Okay. And then could you clarify the, the height limits for me? So, I mean, basically it's 16 feet within the urban area, but 18 feet near transit. You can get a little, a couple extra feet if you're going to match the roof pitch. But I mean, does that? And I think there's some other provisions, although maybe not in this section, like, are we limiting ADUs to basically one story?
It, it, it doesn't preclude a two-story ADU.
I mean, sure, but I mean, you, okay, sure, for a conversion ADU, but like a new detached ADU, effectively you need 10 feet per story, right? So you can't really get to 20 feet with these height limits. Is there?
Yeah, that height, so the basic height limit of 16 feet, that only applies within the urban services line. So outside the urban services line, you would just be subject to our normal height standards for the zone district, which is up to 28 feet for a first house. So theoretically do a two-story ADU outside the urban.
Outside the urban services line. It just seems strange to me that like even near a high-performing transit stop, you can't, I mean, you're still at 18, you can't get to two stories. I mean, I understand we're trying to incrementally add housing, but like that might be just a little too incremental. If you can't actually put two stories on, you know, what's going to be at least a million dollars plus for a parcel, it's probably just, projects just aren't going to happen. So I, I'm interested in, in changing that.
There is a, there is a, you know, a route in the ordinance to increase height. It's that, it's Section D, that section where billing height's up to five feet in excess of any applicable zoning standard, but in no case exceeding 28 feet may be allowed, subject to design review findings, development permit findings, and coastal view protection standards, that sort of thing. So it'd be a discretionary review. It doesn't absolutely prohibit sticking to that 16-foot height. It's just that if you want to go over that, you would be into these other discretionary processes.
Yeah, I see. Okay. And the last question, are the owner occupancy requirements on JADUs also required by the state?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, one last question. The maximum size for a detached ADUs outside, or on parcels of an acre or more, right? There's a 1,200 square foot restriction. I mean, I think this has been in our ordinance since inception. Is there any?
That's from state law, too.
That's in state law as well?
This whole exercise has pretty much been incorporating state law into our ordinance. I, I could summarize it that way.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess we should just approve what the state recommends.
Supervisor Martinez.
Thank you for bringing this forward. You know, I see this as, even though it looks like a tangled web and it's highly complicated, it's intended to simplify the process for people who are hoping to build ADUs by having some consistency between the new state law and the state handbook and our local ordinances, so our zoning. So I appreciate that intent, especially because ADU development is very important for my district. There are very few options for District 5 to increase our supply of housing or affordable housing or contribute to the Rena goals, and, and we want to. And even with these changes, there are still going to be a number of challenges to developing ADUs in parts of the valley. But that said, you know, I appreciate, you know, the sentiment of the caller earlier and just really, I think there's just agreement among the board that we're, we want to streamline our ability to increase housing stock in this county. We need to. We're depending on it for so many reasons. So I'm supportive of this action. The one question I had was more around kind of communication of any of these changes or just further community outreach around incentivizing ADU development. If this is a handbook, if this is, you know, or based on a handbook, if this is about making things easier, do you, have you given any thought to the communication plan? And, you know, is there any?
Well, we're, as a result of this action, we're going to do a major update of the ADU website because that information all needs to be updated and consistent with the ordinance. There's also some other information that were required by state law to publish on our website about ADU pre-approved plans and that sort of thing, and information about legalizing unpermitted ADUs. So we'll be adding all of that information to our website. And we could even do some outreach around that and, and publicizing those updates, I think.
Great. Well, I'd be happy to work with you and sort of cater it to valley residents if, if that would be helpful to you. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Cummings.
Yeah, I mean, this is really just aligning county law with state law. So just want to thank you guys for your help on this. I don't really have anything else to say. I think it's pretty straightforward. The, the one thing that may be good for us to track over time or get some feedback on is just how many people are moving forward with getting ADUs after these laws have been passed, so we can get a sense of, are these laws actually resulting in the creation of more housing? And then attached versus detached, because on, when I was actually sitting on the Coastal Commission, one of the concerns, one the commissioners had was, are people going to use some of these streamlined ADU laws just to put additions onto their house that normally wouldn't have been allowed? Because once you go in and inspect. Because once you go in and inspect, you know, they could just illegally not pull permits and put a door and then now they have a, you know, a huge addition onto their house. So, you know, it's it's helpful. It'd be interesting for us to see over time, is this leading to the production more housing or, you know, are we not really seeing these being used for housing? So that concludes my comments.
Supervisor Cummings, I can report that it is, has resulted in an increase in ADU construction. Pretty substantial increase since 2020. This this year, there's, we're seeing a little bit of drop off, but the curve is going up for sure.
Great. Thanks.
I know I had two, we have the general plan annual report where we include ADU productions. So we can certainly share that and make that kind of a point of emphasis when we bring that to you annually.
Thank you. Hey, I'm going to ask again because I'm still confused about the height limit. So you're saying that in this particular ordinance, that there's a height limit of an ADU at 18 feet?
Well, as as Supervisor Koenig pointed out, there's a series of permutations to the height limits. The basic height limit is 16 feet within the urban services line. Outside the urban services line, the height limit is just that whatever the height limit is for that zone district.
Okay.
And then there's some other height restrictions regarding ADUs built above detached garages or ADUs near transit lines or ADUs on multifamily dwelling sites.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you know, I represent part of Capitola and I think there's been a couple built there that were well over 18 feet. So that's why I'm kind of scratching my head. So maybe it was in one of those areas that you're talking about. I just, I guess what I'm trying to do here is to make sure that we can actually get these things built. You know, I don't want to put up more barriers or make it more complicated than it needs to be.
And also remember, too, we alluded earlier in the presentation, we have that area in the code that gives somebody the option to pursue a discretionary action if they want to go up above the five, above the five feet. So, you know, that does take out the ministerial quicker process, puts them through design review. But if somebody really wanted the height for some kind of design reason and maybe room, sure, they could do that, too. So that could be another reason.
Okay. And then this is just a random question, which I could probably ask anytime, but I'm going to ask it now. For people that like, you know, I live in a rural area where many of my neighbors have extra people living on their property, right? That they're helping. They're either friends or they're sick or there are a lot of different reasons. But they have, a couple of them have trailers, you know, with electricity, et cetera. Are those able to be permitted as livable spaces ongoing?
A travel trailer? No.
Or like, um, no?
No.
Why?
I think the biggest reason is they don't really fit into, you know, a category of a habitable space that we would permit. Probably what you're talking about is really governed by the vehicle code. So it's an RV and then maybe has the government code restrictions of parking and whatnot. So it gets really complicated and almost impossible to regulate them as a jurisdiction issue permits for their existence. So.
Okay. Well, I think we need to look at that because in our rural area, I'm sure in District Five and certain, well, certainly, yeah, those of us who have very rural areas, this, this is happening in a lot of places and there's, there are people living there, people on oxygen. You know, people that have nowhere else to go. And so I I do think that we should try to make it easier for people to stay in those locations.
Yeah, the tiny home on wheels is probably a good option for those kind of folks, too. And get a permit for that.
There's, there's just different definitions for different types of 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 these kinds of structures. A travel trailer doesn't meet the definition of a permanent housing unit. So that's kind of the main reason.
Right. But if it's been on a property for 20 years and somebody's living in it, I mean, it's not going anywhere, you know? So anyway, that's another whole issue. I'll be supporting this today. I'll make a motion to approve if there hasn't been one yet.
Could I just ask one final question? So kind of just drilling back a tiny bit into this height or size requirement that the state may have set. So our code in what's before us today says new construction ADUs detached for parcel sizes less than one acre, ADs would be limited to 850 square feet for a studio or one bedroom, 1,000 square feet for two or more bedrooms. And for parcel size greater than or equal to one acre, the maximum size would be 1,200 square feet. What of that is all of that restricted by the state or is there any flexibility there in our local ordinance?
Well, that's all out of state law. Those, all those size limits are are directly.
Including for the parcel size? Not for the parcel. I mean, like, could we say, for example, that 1,200 square feet is the limit, whether it's an acre parcel or a 5,000 square foot parcel? Yes, you could.
Yeah, that'd be at the discretion of the board. Sure, you could make that that size of the property discretion discretionary call and add that into the ordinance an option.
I would, I would say that just the history of this ordinance is that that all the planning commission hearings and that occurred originally starting in 2021, that that's where this, that's where that came from. So those parcel size limits came out of our local process originally.
Okay, I would with what, I mean, the idea being that on smaller parcels, we wanted smaller buildings. I mean, I'm just thinking, we need, we need to accommodate families, right? And, you know, you can't, it's pretty hard to accommodate a family in an 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet, 1,200 square feet starting to become doable. But I mean, ultimately, if we want to create housing for families, then we should just create more flexibility. So I'd be supportive of just saying the maximum size for any detached ADU is 1,200 square feet, regardless of the parcel size. And also in just removing any height restrictions within this ordinance and saying, you know, it's going to default to whatever the zone district is. I'll make that as a motion if there's, if it's, if it's clear enough, I can go, I can explain the subsection if there's a second.
Supervisor, just before you get a second, second, well, let me see if there's a second.
A second.
Okay. To make those kind of changes, those are major changes that would have to go back to the planning commission to be reviewed. I don't, I don't, I don't, unless somebody can, unless staff corrects me otherwise, that kind of issue was not considered at the planning commission and this is not something that you could adopt today. Let me put it, let me put it that way. It would be something that you would be asking, you would be rejecting this ordinance today and giving staff specific direction around what you would like to see. And then we would go back and say, okay, does this have to go back to the planning commission? Is there any additional environmental review that has to be done and the like? But I just wanted to clarify that for the board that it's, it's not something that you could just snap your fingers and adopt today.
I would agree with counsel on that. And the other thing I would say, too, is public outreach. So you is, you may have constituents that, you know, would support this and it might be constituents that are very much against it. So 28-foot, you know, ADU in your backyard, 1,200 square feet, if you have a 5,000 square foot lot, may not be what everybody wants. So I would strongly recommend that, you know, this is something that's a big deal. It's, we'd have to go back, start our outreach and, you know, go through the planning commission, get input. All of it.
Yeah, I understand we need to bring it back for a new first read that those are substantial changes. But I mean, we're the final decision-making body. I mean, isn't it up to us whether we want to send it to our planning commission?
No, there, 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 there are certain, uh, planning commission is responsible to look at any zoning changes under state law. And and if, if the planning commission hasn't had an opportunity to look at the thing that the board is recommending, it needs to go back to the planning commission to have them look at it and make a recommendation to your, to your board. That's just like kind of standard protocol that's provided in state law. I think it's like six, five, oh, one, oh, or something like that.
So can I, if we're digging deeper, could I recommend that we form a ad hoc committee next year with Supervisor Koenig carrying that, working with you guys to work on the next revamps and next ordinances on ADUs?
I'm not volunteering for an ad hoc subcommittee, but I appreciate the sentiment.
I have one more question real quick. So on parcels that are larger than, like, I don't know, half an acre, you can, you can build a second unit at 1,200 square feet, correct?
Through.
Like in the rural areas?
Yes, but not through the ministerial process. So you're limited under our ordinance, but that does not limit you from applying for.
Is it 1,200? Is that the maximum square footage on the rural parcels?
You could even apply for discretionary review to even exceed the 1,200 maximum, but it would no longer be a ministerial review.
Okay.
That's what we're doing here with this ordinance is creating those regulations for ministerial.
So we do have a motion in a second. It's different direction from, could you repeat it?
Okay. So, I mean, well, effectively, we would have to send this back. So I believe the motion, if we, I guess I'll restate it for the board's sake would be to return this to the planning commission to consider the ordinance with the following changes. Removing the height restrictions within the specific ordinance such that the underlying zone districts determine the height and making it so that the maximum size for any new construction ADU detached is 1,200 square feet, regardless of parcel size.
I'd like to ask a question of probably of staff to make that, well, I guess, what's the implications of delaying the ordinances before us today? Are we on any state deadline or anything like that? And also to make that change, would you recommend that we adopt the ordinance that's before us and go about a second process to make additional changes? Or would you rather go back and have another go at this?
I'll take it to you. Yes. Yeah, I, we would recommend that you approve this ordinance as is today. And then if you have other major changes, to go back to the planning commission with additional direction, because really that's a total redo. There's going to be a lot of controversy that this, this is not a small thing. Not that to say it's not a good idea, but it's not, I would say that it would be much better. This is state law. All we're doing is conforming with state law. We have to do that. So we would recommend that you approve this ordinance. And then if you want to make other major changes, come back with direction. We'll take it back to the planning commission, have the environmental review, have neighborhood meetings and do all that other stuff that that we need to do. Okay. And the, I won't be supporting this motion, just to let you know.
I mean, I, I'll withdraw the motion. I think I I sort of disagree with the whole need for public outreach. I mean, that's our job as public officials. We put our reputation on the line with every vote. You know, I hear county council saying the requirements to send it to the planning commission. We could do that. I also disagree that it'd be necessarily like super easy to make a whole nother set of ordinance changes versus, you know, one more review by the planning commission. But all that said, I think these are relatively, again, way too much complexity here, right? And we're not, this is not a large enough incremental gain for me to really want to like have this fight. I think we need to look at something more substantial. And so that's why I'm withdrawing this motion. I don't think there's enough benefit for the effort right through this, through this avenue at the moment. But yeah, so I'll, I'm happy to support the recommended actions.
So before we have a, another motion, I didn't have the opportunity to speak as well. I want to thank you guys for all the work that you guys done on this. You know, I, I think, I forgot who it was already, but someone mentioned to do a count on the ADUs. I think ADU kind of dashboard thing that we had earlier today with, with with planning would be good so we can keep monitoring how many ADUs are coming up. You know, whether it's every four months, six months, three times a year, four times a year, something like that, so that we know how many are going up. You know, one of the things that would be good is to demystify this process for people, right? People create either like checklists or checkoff lists where they can make sure they got their Ps and Qs in accordance with our ordinances and, you know, local plans that we got to do here. Some communities even create like five to six pre-plans that are pre-approved. I know that in Napa, they even do some, you know, more, some ADUs that are pre-plans that are like historic in character to to kind of keep their downtown historic look with their ADUs on the back. But it'd be good if at some point we can, you know, basically copy what they're doing in some of these things so that we can have, you know, different types of, you know, five different types of ADUs that, you know, are usually the go-tos and have them in the pre-plan list and a checkoff list for people that just want to create their own custom one. But they, they got to meet that checklist, right? Other than that, that's it for me.
I'll move on.
Well, I was just going to, for the purpose of the chair and in is, we do have that. So on our website today, there are three models that are pre-approved ADU plans. Completely UBC checked through the plumbing code and the building code and everything. All you have to do is put that on your site plan. We do have that today. It's a, it's a process we went through in conjunction with a consultant to design it and we helped plan, check it. So we have that for our community members today.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the boards to entertain a motion.
I'll move the recommended actions.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Cummings and then second from Supervisor Martinez. So we can take a roll call vote?
Supervisor Deserpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have on the agenda number 11, hold a public hearing to consider the county service area 48, CSA 48, 2020 and CSA 48. And county service area four, CSA four, fire protection, special benefit assessment, charge reports for fiscal year 2025, 26 and take all related actions. Okay, we have a different person here on my list.
Number 10, sure.
Trying to get ahead of myself here. Okay, wrong one. Next, we have item number 10, holding continued public hearing to consider certification and vote results for county service area three, Aptos C-Scape, and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Christine Hicks, Administrative Services Manager for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, board. As the chair mentioned, this item is regarding county service area number three, Aptos C-Scape and their successful election to increase their benefit assessment rate for fiscal year 2025 and 26 and thereafter. A bit of history, this year on February 11th, following the board's approval of the related engineers report, the election ballots were mailed to the 1,500 affected property owners within the CSA number three, Aptos C-Scape. And then on April 29th and 2025, the board authorized the tabulation of the votes and directed us to continue the public hearing to today for relaying of the election results. And those results are of the 1,500 ballots that were mailed, we received 778 returned to CDI with 426 yes votes and 352 no votes with seven invalid ballots. The weighted election results are 53.08% in favor of the assessment increase. This community majority has agreed to increase their assessment rates. This past election results in additional annual assessment revenue of $80,900 for total annual revenue for the CSA of $161,800. The recommended actions for the board are to accept the certification of the vote, direct CDI to retain the ballots for at least six months and adopt the board item resolution authorizing and leaving the assessment for services within CSA number three. Staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you. I'll take it out to the public to see if anybody would like to address this on this item. See none, anyone online?
No speakers on.
I'll bring it back to the board to entertain a motion.
Move the recommended action.
Second, we got a motion for Supervisor Cummings and a second from Supervisor Koenig. We can take roll call vote?
Supervisor Deserpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now we go to number 11. The next item on the agenda is number 11, hold the public hearing to consider county service area. But yeah, 48, CSA 48, CSA 2020 and county services area four, CSA four, fire protection, special benefit assessment, charge reports for fiscal year 25, 26 and take all related actions. We have Jed Wilson, San Mateo, Santa Cruz County Unit Chief for the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chair Hernandez and board. Chief Wilson, I'm your county fire chief. And you have Sam Filson, your assistant county fire chief here. Standing in for Michael Beaton, who did make the worlds. Just to let everybody know, he let me know he did qualify. So some great news there. Today, we're looking at. Today we're looking at the assessment for CSA 48 and four. And we are requesting that the CPI increase of 2.8 be approved by the Board. So for CSA 48, there's two fees and for CSA four, there's one. So for CSA 48, the first fee would be increased by $2.65 per user. And on the January 20, which is the benefit assessment, we'd see an increase of $4.70 and that's a total of $7.35 per parcel, depending on their fire flow. If it's a larger than single family dwelling, there would be increased cost. For CSA four, when we held the meeting on June 10th, there was some discussion on if it needed to be raised. Based on that input, it is the recommendation that CSA four does not see the 2.8% CPI increase. Their current assessment of $1,630.92 per fire flow is sufficient for them to have their services that they currently have. So in order to complete the proceedings of the above CSAs, it is the recommendation that the Board conduct this public hearing, take testimony and consider objections and protest. And after we have received that, it would go into effect for the August 10 tax rule. Fiscal impact, as I said, it's a total of $7.35 per parcel within CSA 48. The recommendations are that this public hearing is held and upon conclusion that the Board adopt the special benefit assessment change report for CSA 48 2020, CSA 48 and CSA four, Parho Dunes. Happy to answer any questions.
With that, I'll open it up to the public to see if anyone would like to address us on this item. See none here, anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Charlie, your microphone's now available.
Thank you very much, Charlie Edie, ED Consultants, working with Parho Dunes. I just want to express my appreciation to Michael Beaton and Chief Wilson and whomever else was involved in responding to our requests that you relook at the necessity, in this case, the non-necessity of doing a CPI increase for CSA four. So I'm very happy that your staff viewed it the same way we did. There's sufficient money in this year's budget under the recent benefit assessment change that the Parho Dunes owners implemented and voted for to tax themselves to get the full staffing on the service levels for the fire service. So anyway, again, thank you to all who were involved and we appreciate the responsiveness and look forward to continuing to work with the chief and whoever replaces Michael Beaton on future budgets. Thank you.
You have no further speakers online, Chair.
Okay, that, I'll bring it back to the Board to entertain a motion.
Move the recommended actions.
A second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Koenig, a second from Supervisor De Sera. Can we take roll call vote?
Absolutely, Chair Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Martinez? Cummings?
Aye.
De Sera?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. As the final agenda item, this meeting is now adjourned. Try to finish at three o'clock, but.
Recording stopped.
Party, but.